Lemon, meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. Will the clerk please call rule call?
Certainly Supervisor De Sera. Present Cummings.
Here.
Martinez.
Present Koenig.
Here.
And Hernandez.
Present. I'd like to see if any members of the board would like to dedicate today's moment of silence. Well, please join me for a general moment of silence. Now join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask Garcia Carlos Palacios if there's any late additions or deletions to the regular or consent agenda today.
Yes, we do have the following corrections. On the regular agenda, item number 12, there's additional materials. There's a revised attachment 2024 employee recognition awards winners by category. Packet page 187 is replaced. On the consent agenda, item number 23, there's additional materials revised attachment notice of completion. Packet page 331 is replaced. On item number 28, there's additional materials. There's revised memo packet page 452 is replaced. And on item number 36, there's additional materials. There's a new attachment minutes of December 5th, 2024. Insert after packet page 837. That concludes today's corrections.
Thank you. Is there any board member who'd like to remove an item from the consent or onto the regular agenda? Then we'll go to public comment.
I'm sorry Supervisor Chair. And I actually, if possible, would just like a brief explanation of item number 30 under Health and Human Services, our suicide prevention strategic plan. I don't know if staff is here who could speak to that. Thank you.
Okay, we will move that item to 7.1. Actually, if we could get it on the beginning before 7.
Do you need a motion?
No.
No.
6.1. Yes, that's right. 6.1. What number was it again? 30. So this is the opportunity for a public comment for members of the public to speak to us regarding items that are not on the agenda. Items that are on consent agenda, or if you would like to speak to us regarding an item that is on the regular agenda. Please note that you will not be able to speak for a second time when the item is heard. Speakers will be given two minutes. Please come to the line in front of the podium.
Good morning. I'm Bill Beecher from Aptos. I'm here to speak about item three on your agenda. There are four problems with it. By providing last minute updates or new materials at the start of the meeting, it does not allow you, the supervisors to be ready for those items. It does not provide those updates or new materials to the public. We don't have a chance to even know what you're doing. It enables bad behavior by the staff in that they are allowed to be late with the materials. Lastly, it violates your own bylaws 2.38110. You were held to the Brown Act, which requires all materials be ready 72 hours prior to the scheduled meeting. There's a good reason for this 72 hour requirement. It assures that your meetings are open and transparent to the public, the people you serve. The public can therefore be prepared because materials are prepared. I would suggest that you return the materials given to you under item three so that you will comply with the Brown Act. Otherwise, you can be be reported for this violation. I would also suggest that in the future that the staff must have all the materials ready when you publish the meeting notice, a requirement of the Brown Act. If the material is not ready, then that item should be removed from the agenda. This is a new and young board that has inherited this meeting procedure. It's your duty to correct this procedure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Members of the County Board of Supervisors. My name is Ferris Sabat and I serve as the County Superintendent of Schools. I am I'm here to present a letter that was jointly written by all superintendents in Santa Cruz County, where we collectively express our serious concerns with the proposal to permit onsite cannabis consumption lounges in our county. Our primary responsibility is to ensure that our school environments are safe, healthy and supportive for all students. And the proposed introduction of cannabis lounges directly conflicts with these objectives, posing substantial risks to our youth. Research and local data have demonstrated that cannabis use among teens is linked to serious mental health disorders such as psychosis and schizophrenia, and is associated with decreased academic performance and increased dropout rates. Additionally, exposure to cannabis related businesses and advertising leads to greater normalization and increased use among teenagers. Research surveys indicate significant decline in the perception of cannabis as harmful, particularly among Latney youth, which is extremely concerning. We're also worried about the potential rise in impaired driving incidents, especially if those lounges are allowed near schools among common routes during peak school community hours. Despite a general decline in cannabis use among teens, those who continue to use are accessing higher potency products, leading to more severe health consequences. We strongly advise against any actions that might reverse these declining trends. If the board decides to proceed with establishing this cannabis lounges, we insist on the strict implementation of strict of several critical regulations, location and hour restrictions, advertising controls, and mitigation strategies to mandate comprehensive training for lounge employees to prevent youth access and enforce strict consumption limits and oversight. We urge the county board to carefully consider the potential impacts of the health and safety of our young students. Thank you for listening and thank you for your leadership.
Good morning.
Chico. Good morning. My name is Pat Sanchez. I'm superintendent of Live Oak School District. Good to see you again Supervisor Koenig, members of the supervisors, ladies and gentlemen. Just here in support of the letter that Ferris just read into the record. From the standpoint as a public educator for over 34 years, I know what it feels like to have constant unfunded mandates and having public education be the bastion of resolution for all public woes and challenges we have. So as you consider these things, please, please think about the carve outs that are recommended by the joint superintendents of the county and think about our children and how to create that barrier to protect them from these zones, if that's the way it goes. But just wanted to share that from the perspective of a parent and public educator, please take those things into consideration. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alex Miller. I've been a resident of Aptos for the last 39 years. I'm here to speak about the risk of the battery electric storage systems that have been proposed around the county. And the electrification of US homes started in the 1910s and 1920s, and it was 70% complete by the 1930s. We were using knob and tube wiring, which if you've ever renovated a Victorian home, you'd be familiar with the dangers of that. Today we use non metallic wiring. The proponents of lithium battery store large lithium battery storage projects point out that the new batteries, the lithium iron phosphate batteries are much, much safer. It's true, they are a little bit safer, but I would point out that the FAA being a very risk adverse agency of the government still does not allow lithium iron phosphate batteries in aircraft cargo hulls or in the main cabin if they're above a minimum size. Gambling. Gambling of a known problem is disregarding or delaying addressing or accessing risk, relying on luck or favorable circumstances to avoid failures. We know that failures have occurred with battery storage systems. And I would like to see more proactive versus reactive risk taking using best practice and engineering accident prevention, identifying and mitigating future problems through design testing and safety measures, and a commitment to foresight and responsibility of future projects. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lucy Dodson and I'm here because I'm a concerned high school student as well as a concerned driver. According to the crash rankings in 2022, Santa Cruz was the second worst in the state for impaired driving and the third for under 21 impaired driving. This is incredibly concerning statistics and I believe that cannabis consumption lounges will only increase that number. And personally, this is very important to me because I've seen the negative effect of cannabis on my peers. I've seen students and tourists smoking while driving. I've seen family, sorry, excuse me, I've seen early weed addiction consume the lives of my closest friends. And I've seen the long terms effect in my family members. Close friends have detailed to me the life changing consequences that the crashes involving impaired driving has left them with. I believe the cannabis consumption lounges will only have a negative effect or will have a negative effect on our community. Effective regulations on things such as over serving mandatory sober drivers in the locations of these lounges are imperative to our community's health. I believe that effective measures like proper trace program for cannabis, as well as mandatory staff training, community outreach programs and regular impaired driving checkpoints are also effective ways to mitigate the negative consequences. Ultimately, though, I don't think we have the proper infrastructure to be able to properly implement this bill. Or excuse me, policy amendment. Thank you so much for hearing my concerns and have a good rest of your day.
Good morning. My name is Michael Spatafor. I'm a business owner in the Seabright area. And my purpose of coming here to talk to you guys today is about the Marie Braid Street project that we all heard about about three weeks ago that was going to start. Last traffic count was 17th on October 17th, 22 of about 17,000 cars going over Murray Street. So those cars are now going to no longer, we're no longer going to have eastbound traffic going into the Seabright neighborhood. All of the Seabright businesses are going to lose all that business. Westbound traffic will be available for three years while it's under construction. But there's a one year span from November 25 to October 26 that the road's going to be closed in both directions. The access roads and both ways are going to be closed under the bridge at certain times. So nobody's going to be able to get around. I know this spans, I know it's a city project. It spans two districts. Highway 7th Avenue already gets backed up the Deeks Market going to Seabright. I don't know what you're going to do about all those cars in the weekend. I don't know what you're going to do. I don't know what any of the businesses are going to do to survive the one way traffic. And when you close down in both ways, we're going to lose all that traffic. And there's about 20 businesses in that area that are going to lose their businesses, basically. We gave the contract. I understand it has to go to the low bid. The low bid, the company with the low bid, its current market value is $59 million. They have been sued by multiple agencies for delays. They've been sued by multiple agencies for underestimating. They've been sued by the Transbay Terminal for falsifying invoices. So how we picked and how we got to this point, I don't understand. We were told that this was, it would be open to two way alternating one way traffic. We were never told it was going to be closed in both directions. And now it's going to be closed in both directions for.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Melissa Schilling. For the last, I guess, nine years I've worked alongside USAID and UNHCR internationally doing bedside education. And then after that, I have been working as a special ed teacher in our community. Nina Ferris, he knows my students. And I'm here today to elevate the issue of teen mental health. I think there was a grand jury report in June 2024. There were quite a few recommendations. Last week I wrote a letter to each of you. I brought copies of it. In case you're not familiar, I'm very concerned about the Department of Social Services. We are not doing enough to meet the needs of our teens in this county. I speak to you as a mom. It's my most important job that I have. And I am urging you, each of you, please reach out to Randy Morris, reach out to Children Protective Services, Behavioral Health. Ask some questions. I will be here every two weeks representing my son who needs support alongside other kids in our county who need a voice. So please, 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 I'm going to give this letter over and please read it. Please help. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mike Weatherford. I'm a resident of Aptos. I'm also the foreperson for this year's grand jury. And I want to thank the supervisors for a proclamation that was issued for this month, making March Grand Jury Awareness Month. Right now, this year's grand jury is very busy working on a variety of different subjects, spanning a variety of local governments. And we're prepared to begin issuing those reports under the supervision of Catherine Hansen, who's the supervising judge. We really appreciate the work that everybody in a variety of the local agencies has has put into answering our questions and helping us with our research. They span anywhere from the sheriff's department to local cities, school districts, other special districts, and the county and the county agencies. And we found throughout our work that the, everybody is really leaning into helping out the citizens of the county in the best interest. And that's very much appreciated. Lastly, you'll see a sign out in front of the building about signing up for next year's grand jury. It's very easy to do. There's a website and we have a QR code and all the other kinds of things. And so we're hoping to get folks applying. We have some outreach events at local public libraries beginning in April. So appreciate your help and assistance in the proclamation. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Karen Delaney. I'm with the Volunteer Center and I'm speaking today in favor of item 31 on the consent agenda as a proud member of the Parlo Valley Collaborative. And we just want to thank you for reminding everyone that true leadership and true community service is still alive and well in this community. If folks haven't looked at the MOU, committing to the principles of accountability, transparency, collaboration, centering community, delivering results and person centered care. I think that's what everybody hopes government will do for them. But in this particular climate, the fact that your staff and your and yourselves are stating that this is how we're going to do business to help the people who need it most in this community is just something we're really grateful for and we're eager to stand with you. Thanks.
Morning. My name is Ken Sterns. I live in Aptos. Morning, Kim. Today's agenda for the Board of Supervisors is to consider allowing customers at cannabis shops to smoke cannabis at established lounges and to expand cannabis sales to produce stands in the county. All members of the board know the intent of cannabis lounges is to get stoned in public with others. Customers in the smoking lounge will inhale carcinogens and exhale dangerous secondhand smoke for the others around them to inhale, possibly including employees of the store. Haven't we spent decades trying to eliminate smoking tobacco because of these very dangers? There is no exhaust system made that will completely eliminate these hazardous particulates in the air while smoking in the lounge. And more importantly, no safe particulate level for cannabis smoke has ever been established by any regulatory body. There is no rapid test method to determine if stone customers have recovered enough to be able to drive unimpaired. Therefore, some will drive stone, so it's just a matter of time before they injure or kill someone in our community. Allowing the sale of cannabis in these produce stands is like selling cigarettes and whiskey in these locations. Cannabis is a controlled substance, a drug, not a vegetable. This ordinance will make vegetable stands more of a target for robberies and even more people get stoned while driving. I cannot see in any way how the possible benefits of passing these ordinances even begins to come close to the health and safety dangers they pose to our community. On February 25th of this year, the board unanimously approved the Health and All Policy Direction and policymaking strategic framework. By passing the Health and All Policies direction, this board has stated their commitment to improve the health and safety of the people in the county. These proposed cannabis ordinances are in direct conflict with the newly adopted health standard, so realistically they cannot be adopted. Your vote on these ordinance will determine your true commitment to this established health policy. Anyone voting in favor of these ordinances will need to explain to the public how these ordinances will benefit not those in the cannabis culture and why their commitment to the Health and All Policies didn't even last for one month. Thank you.
Good morning and thank you for hearing me. I'm Gregory Audino. I live about two miles from Minto Road. There is a documented history of lithium iron phosphate battery energy storage failure. The first LFP best to go online in California in March of 2022, basically three years ago, had a failure incident in April of 2024, less than a year ago. According to the EPRI, there are three fires, there were three fires in LFP battery storage energy systems in Germany in 2024. The LFP system proposed for here, Minto Road, is the same battery technology. Do we have to be the guinea pigs for this industry like Moss Landing was for the older system? That was lithium ion. The industry, New Leaf Energy, is a private business selling a product. They are not regulated enough by the CPUC. They can sell you what they have and tell you anything they want. Of course, they will tell you it's the next gen technology and tell you if it's safe when they can't prove it. The proof is that it is not safe. Do we have to put this technology into Minto Road only to have actually safe technology show up in a few years' time? Newer safe technology is close at hand. We need to take time to allow it. Let's not make Minto Road our experiment gone bad. It will reflect on all of us. Let's be an example of the smart way to do this. I'll repeat that. Let's be an example of the smart way to do this. Pass an emergency ordinance moratorium, please. Thank you.
Good morning and thank you for your service and your time. My name is Tracy Murphy. I'm a longtime Watsonville resident. I'm here on behalf of my family, my friends, my community, and of course, the future. I live 11 miles from the Moss Landing Power Station and obviously deeply concerned about the contaminants yet to be determined in our small vineyard soil, how it will may affect the wine production as well as the consumers' trust in the safety of our product. I'm a strong component of green energy and backup battery storage. My home has solar. I drive an electric vehicle. I embrace technology. It's vital to our future. Harnessing and storing power is critical. Yet I urge caution, a moratorium before approving the three county proposed sites as new best facilities. Right now, we cannot rely on the safety of storing volatile lithium batteries so close to schools and agricultural land or a hospital without all the safety contingencies in place. How do we ensure 24/7 monitoring? Do we have the foam or whatever it is? Do we even know? On hand to prevent what happened in Moss Landing, isn't MIT releasing newer, safer, non lithium batteries within several months? What's the hurry? There's certainly been a lack of transparency to the community as these proposals seem to be rapidly pushing through. I'm confused by some of the data. It appears from researching that not all of the Ts have been crossed, nor the Is appropriately dotted on some of these applications as well in an attempt to quietly and quickly push them through. I've reached out to John Laird, Felipe Hernandez, and the Coastal Commission to get more updated clarification. Many questions and concerns have just not been addressed. It behooves us to slow down, utilize safety and contingency best practices to build these facilities with utmost care. So we don't face terrible.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Valerie Corral. And this marks the 33rd year that I've been standing in front of this board, speaking to cannabis and its acceptance in our community. I've been ill and in bed, but I'm watching across our nation, our rights being eroded and rolled back on a daily basis. So I'm here to probably, and I hope it's the last time, to have to defend the use of cannabis. We're not asking that everybody mandatorily use cannabis as a health and safety issue. It's up to people to make up their own minds as to what they want to do. But I am here to speak to an aspect that's profoundly overlooked and ever since the legalization of recreational use. And it's the community of people who are sick and dying that have been utterly left out, marginalized, as is often the case. And in this case, a situation that allows people to come together, to have community, to find a way to be with one another and out of the isolation of illness is profoundly important. And I think unfortunately overlooked as a very elemental part of a marginalized community. I, I, I see, we were on, many of us were on the CPP before it was reunited and we did not know that it had come together again. So I'm going to make a statement. It does not accurately reflect the opinions of all of the people that were on the CPP. And I think that that's a very important piece that's missing. So before you make a decision, that's based on data that may be skewed. May, and you know how data is, if you've ever taken a statistics class, it can be viewed in many different ways. I think that you would find that through education, not through elimination, you will enlighten people on the best ways to use cannabis. I signed on to Brenda Armstrong's letter and I think it's profoundly important. Thank you for your time and welcome to the new members. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I live in rural Aptos Hills. I'm here again to ask that you put on the board as an agenda as a regular item, follow ups, reports regarding the Vistra fire. You've had nothing on the agenda since January 28th. That is unacceptable. This was a big disaster. And as you're hearing, it affected a lot of people and continues to affect a lot of people. Your board is silent and that's not right. You've held no town halls. That's not right. Why are you so silent on this? Could it be that CAO Palacios? It's on the operations board of Central Coast Community Energy that depends on battery energy? Could it be that Supervisor Martinez also sits on the policy board of 3CE? This is a conflict of interest. I hope it's not driving your silence on this issue. I want to again ask that your board, as a board, send a letter of support for Assembly Member Dawn Addis's AB 303 that will claw back the local control of permitting of these battery energy storage systems. I ask again that you enact an emergency urgency ordinance for a moratorium on lithium ion battery storage technology. You're hearing it from your people, but I don't feel like you're listening. There have been no town halls. I did read through the soil and water sampling. I want to thank your office Supervisor De Sera for providing that. I saw no evidence of. providing that. I saw no evidence of testing for nanoparticles. That was the great work that Professor Ayalo from UCSI did that directly linked what he saw to the fire.
Thank you.
Thank you. The questionable reason.
Hi, I'm Jay Rosella Myers, and I live in District One. And I moved to Santa Cruz in the 70s because I felt like it was a safe, non-toxic environment. I moved from Southern California, which felt very toxic. And we, my husband and I drove all the way to Canada researching communities and felt like Santa Cruz was the place to be. And we love it here. And I do not go online. I don't have a computer. I don't use a cell phone to connect to the internet and all these things for my own personal sanity. And I know a lot of people rely on that technology for their information. I personally want to thank every single one of you and also the people who are serving on the Civil Grand Jury. Each and every year, I did it for a year at the behest of Judge Yance. Even though I'm an artist, I said, well, what do I have to add? And it was the most educational experience that I had had about how the government works or doesn't work. And so I want to acknowledge how complex all these particular issues are. And for me, it is so important to really investigate the toxicity of the ion lithium battery technology. I just talked to my neighbor who's a high-tech person. He installed like a solar light in his yard. You know, it exploded. He says that technology is not safe no matter what. So please, I'll have handouts for you that I will give to the clerk. And please, please consider the safety of all this before you make any decisions about it or unsafety. My husband was exposed to Agent Orange in Vietnam. They didn't know the significance of it for years.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Lass. I live in Aptos, California. I'm here today because I didn't want to let the comments of the supervisors on the ranch camp decision last week, two weeks ago stand out uncontested. On October 6th, you asked the probation department to engage with the community. They did not. You had 40 people tell you that last time. You can tell that probation didn't answer the one gotcha point, which is it's out of our hands if the court assigns a youth to ranch camp. How easy it could have been for them to ask the community at a community forum where that was, that question was posed to the community, what do we do in this case? The court is used as a phrase as if it's some powerful entity, that external entity. But there's only one judge in Santa Cruz County that adjudicates the juvenile cases. We can bring, they're not some faceless, unmovable entity that person can be engaged with to understand when and why they might, that they think that ranch camp is the only answer. You can imagine if this question had been brought up in December, we could have had those conversations and we might have better suggestions now in March. Can you give us that chance? I rewatched a probation department's presentation, and I just saw a lot of misleading questions, statements. And you have to ask yourself why? Not in the gotcha cynical sense of the word why, but in the restorative justice, true curiosity sense of why? When the system goes awry, like why is that? Why is the department and the community not on the same page? The decision last week I thought was not clear, was clear cut, but not in the way that you said it was. The probation department did not do as you asked. And I hope that you can go back. I wanted you to go back and tell them to engage with the community with one or more of you attending these public meetings. So I ask you to please take the item 17 off the consent agenda and direct the probation department to engage with the community in good faith before agreeing to their ordinance. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sherry Paris. I listened to the
If you can bring the mic down.
What?
If you can bring the mic down.
Ah, that better? I listened to the first gentleman who spoke against cannabis bars. And by his logic, I think alcohol bars should be closed also. But cannabis bars are very different than bars that serve alcohol. Cannabis bars generally are much smaller in the number of people who come for them, and they cater to people like me. I have epilepsy and I can't drive. So you're going to, I tend to get socially isolated. Most of the people in cannabis bars are also profoundly handicapped. Many of them can't drive and come with caretakers. If anybody gets too high, they Uber home. I mean, there's, you know, pretty much vigilance. People, people take care of each other in these places. But you're dealing with people who are sick and isolated and finally have a place to come together when you're talking about a cannabis bar. So I would urge you to look at that image rather than looking at the image of a bar that serves alcohol and transposing it onto cannabis. Thank you.
My name's Naomi Takamoto, and I live in SoCal. And I'm the owner of a building in SoCal that is used for cannabis retail and dispensary sales. And my tenant asked me to come and speak because in support, our support of a cannabis lounge in his business. And I was listening to the man who spoke in opposition to it, and I see some merit to some of the things he said, but as the woman before me said, you know, if you're going to have, you know, close all lounges, bars for alcohol or for cannabis, you would the same thing would apply to liquor bars because they're all drugs. They're all in the same category of drugs. But, you know, I think with the responsible management of a cannabis lounge, I personally, I didn't think about the number of people in the community who are suffering from severe illnesses that really benefit from the use of cannabis. I know that our original tenants, they serviced over 2,000 members of the community as a dispensary alone. That was before recreational cannabis was legalized. And those people, you know, they came fairly regularly, and they spoke very highly of the benefits of it. But I can see where, you know, isolation could be a severe problem. These people often came, you know, with walkers, canes, wheelchairs, you know, personal drivers. And so they weren't marginally ill. They suffered from severe debilitating illness. And so I think it's not a bad idea. Hope you will consider it.
Morning, Board. I'm Rob Morgan. I grew up in Santa Cruz. I'm here to support the expansion of cannabis retail to onsite consumption lounges and sales at existing licensed farms within the county. The concerns raised within the health impact assessment material are not arguments for prohibition. They're arguments for responsible regulation. The board has heard from the public in previous meetings and through the public listening sessions that there was lots of support from the community for this item. A regulated market ensures products are tested, labeled, and sold with consumer education, unlike the unregulated market where potency is unchecked. Instead of pushing towards unregulated sources, legal lounges provide a controlled space with trained staff to prevent overconsumption and impaired driving. Tax revenue from legal sales can fund mental health services, drug education, and DUI prevention programs, offsetting costs the county already incurs. Small businesses and local farmers will also benefit from farm stand retail keeping dollars in the community. Youth exposure concerns have been addressed within zoning laws and current county and state retail sales laws, including ID enforcement, just like alcohol regulations. Studies show legalization does not increase teen use. Proper regulation actually makes access harder for minors. I'm familiar with the studies and references cited in the health impact assessment provided to the board, and some are misrepresented or fail to include key conclusions from the original reports. Instead of restrictions that push consumption into private, unregulated settings, let's take a harm reduction approach, enforce safe service training, and existing proper state standards. This is not about encouraging use. It's about ensuring responsible access, boosting local business, and protecting public health through regulation. I strongly urge you to support this item. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Edgar Ibarra Gutiérrez. I am with the Milpa Collective, and I was raised in the city of Watsonville, California. Here to urge this board to pull consent, the consent item number 17 on the agenda. And for further discussion, first and foremost, but to hear more from probation as to what was brought back in regards to the conversation around the ordinance and around the coastal, Redwood Coastal Academy. So that's first and foremost, wanted to put that out there. I don't know if there's any more information that has come out, but has not been shared with the public directly. Second, we sit in deep times of uncertainty from the federal government, and we're seeing extreme budget cuts all across the board. This is an opportunity for at the local level to ensure certainty for young people, especially those that are mostly impacted by the juvenile justice system and the criminal justice system and all the other disparities that impact Black and Brown young people in our county. So I really want to uplift that fact that as supervisors, you do have a role and responsibility to ensure that our future is bright, especially by supporting those young people with the most, that need the most support. On the second part, I want to look at the consent agenda number 24. And I can see that you all are going to be approving an increase to salaries to the deputy probation officers of Santa Cruz County. Keep that in mind that every time young, we come up here and ask for more resources for young people throughout our county, we're always told there is no money. They're, oh, we gotta, we gotta figure out, we gotta apply for grants. But how is it that every single time you guys find money for the probation, so I'm asking you, Señor Palacios, do a better job, find some more money, do your due diligence, and actually find more resources so that our young people in our communities from South County all the way to North County have actually a better opportunity to thrive in our communities. So many things are taking place from environmental disasters to violence in our communities, and we just got to be able to step up and be responsible adults and support our young people in our community. Alabra.
Buenos dias, Board. Elias Gonzalez, born and raised in Watsonville. Yes, like my colleague stated, pulling item 17 from the agenda ideally, right? But if you choose to adopt it, which might be the case here today, right? If you choose to adopt this, we are asking the board to ensure that probation, including community at the table, right? We're continuously hearing about it, but we're not being included at the table. If it is something that's going to happen, let's ensure that we are at the table, right? This is something that has been asked for. We want to be at the table. We want to work in collaboration. We want to be the model site, right, that we talk about, but we don't want to be a model site for incarceration. Right? We want to be a model site that's actually creating the space that's going to be thriving for our young people, as my colleague just stated, right? Also, as we speak, I want to highlight item 24. As you choose to approve this, let's actually start looking at the probation department's cost analysis here, as my colleague also stated. Let's look at where this money is going, what's happening, and what's the effectiveness of the programs, right? Are they being effective? Do we have some research behind it? Is there some evidence-based practices happening behind these practices that they're bringing to the table? Let's ensure that we are spending the money where we need to spend it, right? Putting some of that money back into the community is also public safety. So let's look into those things. Lastly, again, how do we make this the model site that we want to be? Because I think we all want the same deal, right? We want thriving communities, right? How do we come together to build that? How do we come together to build those thriving communities that we're all seeking, right? We don't need no more jails. We don't need no more power plants. We don't need none of that. Let's try to do something differently. But with that being said, thank you. I appreciate you all. Take care.
Hello, my name is Sally Lucier, and I have lived in the San Lorenzo Valley, which includes the small towns of Felton and Ben Lomond and Brookdale and Boulder Creek. I am concerned about the possibility of cannabis lounges along Highway 9. Highway 9 is the major thoroughfare that goes through the San Lorenzo Valley. And I'm concerned about cannabis lounges, both for safety and for health. We have a high school, a middle school, and two elementary schools that are on Highway 9. And I'm very concerned about impaired drivers. And I'm also concerned about the health and safety of our young folk. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Board. My name is Sergio, Milpa intern. I'm looking to pull item 17 on the consent agenda. In Santa Cruz County, we'd like to talk about how unique and a gold standard we are against other counties. Well, today, I hope we are able to make that happen. For probation's reclassification of the Juvenile Hall into the Redwood Coastal Academy, I call upon the board to vote no on the camp. If we want to be the gold standard of the state, we must allow communities to invest into our youth and create LRP's. We can use the fire camps or reignite the Star House program as a way of rehabilitation and build skills for their futures. We can also expand SBA 23 and JJCC subcommittees to allow people who have been impacted by the justice system to attend these meetings. These are the solutions we, as a committee, can create. Some for all of you to vote no on the camp and allow organizations to help our youth. Thank you.
Buenos dias, Chair and Board. Bernie Gomez with Milpa, born in District Four, reside in District Three. So on consent, item number 17, just my comments are, you know, there's, apparently there's two processes, right? Two ways of viewing what supporting young people in the system looks like, in the system looks like, right? We have seen the investment in a department. Yet we still see a large disparity in the incarceration of predominantly brown kids, right? But Black and Brown kids are getting impacted. My thing here is if this ranch camp is, you know, coming forward, we, I think you haven't seen a plan, or at least we haven't seen a plan of what that's going to look like. So to approve something without a plan set forth, you know, like this is what it's going to be, it's kind of like, it's almost kind of responsible. It's like if I was, if I brought a proposal and be like, give me this much money, and then I'll tell you what I'm going to, how I'm going to do it, you know, so. But as a community member, right, as a commissioner at the JJDPC, right, as also a system-impacted individual, and also someone that is just advocating to be a part, right, of that juvenile justice system, right, in a way, you know, from the perspective of the community, I do request that you start thinking about expanding the JJCC and the SBA 23 subcommittees with more community seats that are able to vote. And this will help alleviate that miscommunication or no communication from the community to the Department of Probation, right? We can all come together at that area too and have that dialogue right there. So I think it's a good idea to do that. It is within your purview to do it. So expand those seats. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning, Omar Barrios Nidos. I would like to ask that you guys pull consent agenda 17. And expand the SBA 23 and JJC committees so that the community can be more involved in these processes for these young people. And I ask also that you guys find more money for community-based organizations like Barrios Nidos, like Milpa, and there's many more organizations that are willing to step up to the plate to help our young people heal and to guide them and to mentor them and to be teachers and to be that person that they need in their life. Sitting in juvenile hall, sitting in a ranch camp is not going to help them. They're not getting the help that they need, like the community can step up and help them. You know, this whole process about probation, engaging with the community did not happen. It did not happen. You know, they showed up. They didn't provide any kind of structure, any kind of conversation for the community. So we're asking that in any kind of decision you guys provide or make in the end, that you guys mandate that probation gets engaged with the community. Because we're the ones that know how to work with our young people. We're the ones that are out there in the streets, walking the streets, walking the high schools, meeting them where they're at and know how to engage with these young people. So we're asking that you please, please ask probation to be more involved with the community. Give the community more say so in this process and healing our people. Thank you.
Hi, we're Sharon here. I live in the Fulton area and I just would like to, in regards to the fire up in Moss Landing, we, our car got completely covered with a very thin layer of ash. So that is how far the smoke went. And so I just think as a county, you need to think of the whole county when you make decisions in regarding to that. In regards to all the different opinions about the marijuana. As a parent of young adults, my children were already adults and moved out of the house by the time marijuana became legal in the state. So I had little control over helping them make good, positive, sound decisions in regards to to that particular product. As a result, combined with the capacity to for addictions in our family, they both ended, both of my children ended up with negative mental health effects due to the lackadaisical opinions the younger generation has in regards to this particular product. And so I would just like to encourage you not to do things to add to that. They already have the disbelief that this is a product that is safer than cigarettes. And so that's my two farts on that. At the start of this meeting, I did, it did hit me that there seemed to be a lot of additions or amendments to the to the, to the agenda this particular time seemed to be a lot more than normal. I might warrant trying to figure out why that was, if it is something that was in the control of staff as was applied earlier, or if it was just coincidental, a whole bunch of things, it's just the way life happened. Thank you.
Good morning, board. My name is Terrence Concanon and it is my pleasure and honor to serve this county and our tourism industry as the chief executive officer for Visit Santa Cruz County. I want to take this moment to welcome the two new supervisors, Martinez and De Serpa. Thank you for choosing to serve and anytime you'd like to engage with me and learn more about what we do, I would, I would welcome that. I'd also like to thank, I'd also like to thank retired supervisor McPherson for his service to our board and welcome supervisor Cummings back to our board. I'm looking forward to that very much. And finally, I'd also like to thank Carlos Palacio and his team at the county for presenting Visit Santa Cruz County with a wonderful opportunity to move our offices over to the McPherson Center and new visitor center adjacent to the MA. We are in the midst of going through that and doing some tenant improvements in there. And I can't tell you how excited we are to be moving into that new facility hopefully in July. So thank you all. And one more thing I'd like to say is I know this board appreciates, as I do as a citizen of this county, this completely engaged populace that we have here and the amount of of care that they have for their community and to come up here and speak is not easy for a lot of people. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Good morning. My name is James Young Women. What a beautiful day. It was great to be at the beach. I really don't know what to say, you know, and what can I say, you know, what a stoner's have in common with most academics without calloused hands. They both come up with the best ideas, but they're too stoned or stuck in their books to actually do something about it. So, you know, we have this thing called a constitution, excuse me, our Declaration of Independence. Just going to read part of it. I think it's kind of important. "We hold these truths to be self evident that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these lie, that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are initiated among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." So we're, the United States is off, we're operating on so many different layers of fraud. These supervisors were elected supposedly, but they're controlled by unelected, internationally controlled officials. There couldn't be any more fraud than that going on in our government. The amount of harm that's going on is tremendous. You know, this is a time when we, boy, I'm going to change the subject. This is an amazing time to be a human being. I can't believe how special it is to be almost sixty and thinking that I could clearly go on for quite a bit of time for nine different actions that are happening during my lifetime. It's amazing. So why are all these accelerations happening? Why was the Declaration of Independence written? You know, the goals of the Illuminati are quite similar to what was disseminated in nineteen forty six by Brock Chisholm. In order to to achieve world government is first to remove from the minds of men their individuality, their loyalty, the family, family traditions and nationality. So let's all work together. It's nicer than I was thinking it was going to be. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nina Aldino. I don't really think any of us want to live under the shadow of an industrial sized lithium vest that industry experts and their sales reps assure us will never burn as badly as Vistra's toxic disaster. I don't think any of us want to wake up every day thinking, geez, I sure hope that clean energy beast down the road is going to behave itself today. Otherwise, we might have a small toxic lithium battery fire by lunchtime. That's why some of us are listening to the sales pitches coming from the lithium based battery energy storage sector. And what are those sales pitches? The fires will be small. The fires will be rare. The files will be more controllable, except of course during a high wind event as New Leaf Energy's fire response plan alludes to over and over. The toxic footprint will be negligible. This is a much safer battery technology. But I think all of us would agree that our community deserves safe, not safer. Research states the second generation LFP battery is actually prone to much more toxic fires. So does that mean that the risk of a smaller but substantially more toxic fire is safer? The issue is lithium itself. It's too volatile for grid scale application. It breaks down the heat of charging and discharging cycles and that lithium chemistry breaks down battery components and housings. They weaken, vent, burn, explode. The energy sector is shaping public policy dialogue about net zero goals into an exclusive choice between lithium battery X and lithium battery Y. The real question we need to be asking is how do we partner with battery technologies capable of grid scale energy storage that's free of lithium fire risk and that will be commercialized as fast as possible? I ask you please to slow our best developments down, enact an urgency ordinance moratorium, convene a town hall, invite the people you represent to a dialogue about a Santa Cruz County that will be a true leader and truly safe, clean energy solutions. Thank you.
Is there anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Call in user eight two zero four. Your microphone is now available. As a reminder, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself.
Hi, good morning. I live in South County and only thing the Moss Landing battery storage fire has taught us is that we don't want this technology embedded in our neighborhood. From the board, three items are being asked of you. The first is an emergency ordinance calling for the moratorium on lithium ion battery energy storage sites in Santa Cruz County. The acronym for that is BES. The second, that the board of supervisors collectively support Assembly Bill three oh three put forth by Assemblywoman Dawn Addis, giving local control back to all of us. Number three, Moss Landing has highlighted the present and potential toxic fallout of batteries, battery storage sites. And we do not consent to them in our communities. We want Santa Cruz County to be declared a best free zone. Thank you for that.
Andrea, your microphone is now available.
Thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Andrea Carlos Willey. I'm the Impact and Resource Development Officer at Pajaro Valley Unified School District. As a partner of the Pajaro Valley Collaborative, our district is speaking in support of item number thirty one, which would formally establish a partnership between the Pajaro Valley Collaborative and the county. Since twenty twenty, the Pajaro Valley Collaborative has been at its core an inclusive collective impact movement grounded in equity and social justice for the Pajaro Valley. We consistently prioritize health and wellness, economic mobility and civic engagement. We lift up community over individual organizations and by doing so foster interdependence and belonging among nonprofits and government agencies to better enable us to achieve a thriving Pajaro Valley. We are an all volunteer and grant funded movement and we are deeply aligned through common action, resource acquisition, mutual accountability and common authority. We work through committees and work groups. We review local data to determine indicators that require action and align our efforts to create meaningful impact on those three complex social areas I mentioned. We are excited to know that staff has recommended that the county join us in these efforts to partner by adopting this agreement. Thank you again so much, Chair and members of the board for your ongoing commitment to addressing health and socioeconomic inequities experienced by residents of the Pajaro Valley. Thank you so much.
Lynn, your microphone is now available.
Thank you, Chair and members of the board. I'm Dr. Lynn Silver, pediatrician, speaking on behalf of the Public Health Institute. I'm also Professor UCSF and chaired the California High Potency Cannabis Scientific Committee convened by the state last year. I speak in opposition to onsite consumption lounges and farmer produce stand sale of cannabis. As the school superintendent safely noted, our cannabis policy must balance access with protecting our youth and public health from adverse effects. The proposed policy, despite the effort to lessen, ignore public health concerns and weaken Santa Cruz's leadership in ensuring smoke free air for future generations. Smoking on farms is not the same as wine tasting and the county should not build its tourism on psychoactive drugs. Cannabis is no ordinary commodity. It should not be treated as such. No one should go to jail for its possession. No one is proposing prohibition, but no one should land in the hospital or be exposed to smoke to keep their jobs. Our public policy should prioritize health over industry profit. These proposals fail that test. The cannabis lounges I have seen observed in California are not Amsterdam cafes or filled with handicapped people. They are heavily used by young adult daily users who can afford expensive settings and often have lineups of ultra high potency dab rigs and so many high potency concentrates. Potency in fact remains unchecked in California, even in the legal market. Our road injuries are increasing. Cannabis use disorder in users has doubled. Cannabis induced psychosis has skyrocketed. Family after family has come to me with distressing stories of heartbreaking severe cannabis induced psychosis, sometimes leading to death. Any increase in tax revenues will be eaten up by public safety, educational and other consequences. These proposals are deeply unwise. Instead, the county should consider rigorous enforcement against intoxicating hemp in the illicit industry and limiting the number of retail licenses so those licenses can succeed. Our letter has other recommendations. Thank you.
Leslie, your microphone is now available.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Leslie Petenso. I'm a business owner and I live in SoCal. I'm speaking to you today to urge you to commit beyond a vote for the ranch camp ordinance to further work towards goals of SBA two three to reduce and then eliminate racial and economic disparities and reduce the use of confinement in the juvenile justice system by utilizing community based responses and interventions. I believe that we can meet these goals here in Santa Cruz County if we work together. It will require a commitment from all of us. One of the immediate opportunities we have to meet the goals of SBA two three is to expand the membership of the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council and the SBA two three Subcommittee to include additional community members with lived experience in the justice system. This is one important step in advancing equity, one of our county's core values. Additionally, going forward, these committees and community partners should play a significant role in the development of a comprehensive plan for the more vulnerable youth of Santa Cruz County. Both of these community oversight committees were not engaged in probation's process, but were informed of the proposal following the first presentation to the board on October eighth. These actions contradict probation's stated values to collaborate with community partners and the youth and families who are most impacted by their policies. I urge probation to act in accordance with these principles and to correct this now by authentically partnering with these committees and the community. There is research stating that any amount of incarceration causes harm. Let's commit to restorative practices, proven wraparound services and community based solutions. I do support the additional direction that was recorded in the February twenty fifth meeting minutes and know that we will hold you accountable to follow through. Thank you.
Krista, your microphone is now available.
Thank you so much. I'm calling on behalf of Stetson Road. It's item number thirty eight. I moved to the road right before that fun winter event where we ended up with snow and a lot of atmospheric rivers. Obviously, that really impacted our roads up in the mountains, but Stetson Road had a massive washout. I've had an ongoing conversation with Public Works and the county since twenty twenty three. I effectively dedicated my maternity leave to calling individuals in Public Works and emailing the county. Supervisor Koenig probably knows my name fairly well because I'm active in in trying to communicate with the county to let them know that this road is important to us and we, we need transportation, we need basic infrastructure and we need the, the county to approve fixing our road. It doesn't just impact the people who live on the road. It impacts people past our road as well. And those people have been vocal too. I don't know whether this was a plot by Amazon to spread awareness, but we ended up with an Amazon driver dropping about, I don't know, a hundred packages at the crossing for the washout and sending a picture to many in the county saying, your package has been dropped in a secure location. They're getting confused in terms of how to drive through our roads. They already were confused before and now it's just added to the problem. Throughout this communication, there have been wonderful people who've been trying to move things forward, but things have just stalled, installed, installed, and we need movement, please. We need our road fixed for safety in case of fire, in case of any kind of devastating issue. We're, we're stuck. So please move forward, item thirty eight. Thank you.
Call in user one. Your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett, in order to prevent future guaranteed fires and chemical poisoning like that from Moss Landing, you really must adopt an urgency moratorium on these sites. They need to be banned. To learn about the connection of these battery storage sites to AI, come to a meeting tonight at Loudon Nelson Center, six o'clock. It's titled, "The National Real ID," and I'll read from the flyer. Real ID's long term goal is to have a one stop shop for personal data, which includes health, digital wallets and banking. Having all your information on your cell phone, which is the goal of Real ID, is being sold as convenience, but it's really about control. The Real ID is a national ID system, not just a driver's license upgrade. It opens the door to expanded government tracking and control. Digital IDs and biometric surveillance are being integrated into airport security and beyond. To help facilitate this program, massive AI farms are being built, which require more electricity and lithium ion battery storage sites. A Real ID style app like Vidia was launched in Ukraine in twenty twenty. I don't know if I have time to read all this. And it was built in partnership with the United States and is poised to be shared with other countries on the sidelines of the 2020.
Nancy, your microphone is now available.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Falstick and I'm the Director of Rehanna Racion, Pajaro Valley Climate Action. We work to achieve climate justice through community-driven solutions. And today I'm speaking in support of item thirty one as one of the partners in the Pajaro Valley Collaborative, and this item would formally establish a partnership between the Pajaro Valley Collaborative and Santa Cruz County. So the Pajaro Valley Collaborative is a community-based collective impact movement composed of both nonprofits and public institutions serving the Pajaro Valley. This collaborative came together in 2020 in response to the disproportionate impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the local Latinee communities. We are committed to evolving beyond crisis management to form a permanent collaboration. As the Pajaro Valley Collaborative focuses on addressing these long-term priority areas, we continue to respond to emerging needs, including policy changes now happening at the federal level. It's really clear that now more than ever, we need partnerships like the Pajaro Valley Collaborative to protect health and wellness, to ensure economic mobility, and deepen civic engagement while responding to our residents' needs. Thank you very much.
Tim, your microphone is now available.
All right. Thank you very much. Tim Delaney here. I'm supportive of the cannabis items, just so you know. And also, I'm opposed to having lithium battery storage facilities here in Santa Cruz County and also Monterey County down south. Right now, I mean, folks, really, you know, heavy metals, that's kind of rough stuff to try to get out of soil and air. And it's interesting, when you think about it, you know, like around Chernobyl, that's radiation. I guess they use cannabis plants to uptake some of the radiation out of the soils around those environments. You know, it's very well known that certain plants could be very good for uptake of radiation, and maybe that's so for heavy metals as well. But whatever the case is, you know, it's clear that these companies that are trying to come into our community, they don't have protocols for, you know, dealing with the fire and dealing with the aftermath and how to clean up the huge mess. So it's an absolute no for me in regards to having these sorts of plants around our community. I think it would be very damaging. So, other issue, tool C, cabar. So, the Trump administration, I'm a little irritated with them. I just don't like them. And so honestly, folks that are in the Republican Party at this point in time, you know, maybe it would be a good thing if they all got out with their MAGA hats and picked up all the garbage on the West Coast, on our freeways, and the Hawaiian Islands, and then the Tahoe Basin as well. That would be very nice, you know? They should put some skin in the game and get out there and help clean up our environment. So that's, those are some of my thoughts for the day. And I know I'm a little disorganized here today, but anyways, thank you very much for all your hard work, and that's about all I have to say right now. You take it easy.
Carol, your microphone is now available.
Hi, this is Carol Bjorn, and I wanted to say thank you to James for reading the Constitution. I think that's an incredibly important reminder for our panel that we're speaking before. And also, I want to thank Nina for your comments about the Vistor Fire, the Moss Landing Fire, and thank you to caller, the first caller, and then the gentleman who just spoke, and thank you also to Marilyn Garrett for speaking about this. So yeah, that's primarily why I'm here to speak as well. There was a large group of us that spoke at your meeting two weeks ago demanding several things: town halls, an emergency ordinance for a moratorium on any proposed best facilities, a scientific panel that would not have any conflicts of interest, that has expertise in this area prior to any best storage facilities moving forward. So I just wanted to follow up and see how that's coming. I'm hoping that all these things are on the agenda very quickly. I hope you all are having town halls. Have you talked to the victims of the Moss Landing, Vistor Fire? I have. I was on a call last night with a woman who has children and animals. Her cat is quite ill. She has a nonstop cough. People have lost their businesses. I don't think we want to be placing these types of facilities across the street from the public high school and right down the road from our public hospital. Think of the disaster that will occur. It's not, it's not an if, it's a when. These things are highly flammable, highly explosive, they can't be made safer. It's too much risk to take on. So please listen to the people, please be present for public comments. I'm very sad that Monica and Justin got up. You guys need to be present for public comments. So please listen and listen to what we're saying. Vote on these items. It's incredibly important.
Jasmine, your microphone is now available. Jasmine, we're not able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so sorry. Good morning Chairman of Nandis and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Jasmine Nahedan. I'm the CEO of Pajaro Valley Prevention and Student Assistance, and I'm here as a partner of the Pajaro Valley Collaborative, speaking in support of item thirty one, which would formally establish a partnership between the Pajaro Valley Collaborative and the county. The PVC is a community-based collective impact movement composed of nonprofits and public institutions serving the Pajaro Valley with a priority focus on improving health and wellness, economic mobility, and civic engagement. I think we've already heard many reasons why we want the county to partner with us. We thank you for your commitment to address the health and socioeconomic inequities experienced by residents in the Pajaro Valley and look forward to our continued partnership. I'm also here to speak on the cannabis lounges, and as the CEO of Pajaro Valley Prevention and Student Assistance, we stand firmly against this. We are very concerned about the youth exposure and social norming of cannabis use in our communities, and we really want folks to slow down and think about the impacts on our youth and provide more space for youth to address these issues and share their perspective. And again, I'm also here to speak on the consent agenda, item number seventeen. Again, we are requesting that probation actually engage with community stakeholders, not just Community Action Board, but there's many other organizations that continue to partner and work with youth in our community. We want more community engagement. We want to explore the development of less restrictive programs. We would love to see the cost analysis. What are the costs of incarcerating youth in juvenile hall? Where does the funding for juvenile probation really go? And what guardrails are in place to ensure that allocated funds are being spent appropriately? I also want to ask the expansion of the JJCC and the SB eight two three subcommittees. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Michelle, your microphone is now available.
Okay, good morning. I just wanted to also bring up that we were waiting to see what the town hall for the B E S S plants were. We still haven't seen it. There's been, it's been very quiet. Another thing I wanted to bring up is when these fires happen, especially in the locations you want it, the only opportunity is a shelter in place. I did find out from some teachers that some of your schools in Watsonville don't even have, they have broken windows, they can't even seal up the windows. So it puts your, the children at risk for not being able to even properly close the windows. As we know, that's not even a real solution, but there's a lot of things that you guys will have to take in consideration. And one of the things we know from us going through the Moss Landing one is that we are holding those accountable that are pushing through these technologies without involving the public. This is what happened in 2019 with Moss Landing, and there is no way your communities are going to let this happen. We are very involved, we're watching your agendas, we're involved with each other. And so if you guys try to sneak this through, there will be repercussions. You know, and you guys might have Board of Supervisors insurance, but just know, whatever happens with these fires is on your back. So we really need you guys to use the resources of everything our groups are finding out. Look at the heavy metals in all the soils. Use that, use the coastal commission for your agricultural areas. Fight with us. Protect your community. Protect our community. Thank you.
You have no further speakers online Chair.
With that, I'll bring it back to the board and see if there's any questions, comments on the consent agenda. Supervisor Cummings?
Thank you Chair, and I just want to appreciate all the comments that were made. As it relates to item number seventeen regarding the ranch camps, I mean, we did have a very extensive discussion. We heard a lot from the community at our last board meeting, and I hope that probation is out there, and I know our CEO is here today hearing the concerns and complaints that are coming up about this. And so I just hope that, you know, we can continue to have probation meet with the community. I'll make myself available to come to those meetings as well, just so that, you know, we can all like be at the table together and hearing from both sides and figuring out how we can, you know, look at our current system of corrections as it relates to youth and how we can improve that and provide other opportunities moving forward. But I think today, as I mentioned before, we had a long conversation at our last meeting, and so I'm just hoping that we can continue making progress on this and continuing to move forward. Item number twenty eight, I had a question about this one. This is regarding at-large appointments. I believe there are some changes made. One of the concerns that I had regarding this item is that it wasn't clear in the agenda report whether some of the people who are in those current appointments want to be reappointed and what the process will be to have applications go out so that if there's other members of the community who want to be in those positions, how they can be appointed. So I just wanted to see if there's any clarification on the additions to that item.
Yes, Supervisor Cummings, there is, when we have corrections like this, we do try and update, we do update the online. This time it was a little confusing the way it was available, but it is available online. And we do put a hard copy out in the packet in the hallway. The change that was made was to have the nominations to be received on March twenty fifth and the final appointments on April eighth. So that's the new schedule. Prior to that, the final appointments were going to be made on March twenty fifth. So the change is that rather than final appointments on the twenty fifth of March, nominations will be received on March twenty fifth, and then on April eighth, the final appointments were made. Typically, the Chair works with your staff in the Board's office on these items regarding who wants to be appointed and reappointed, so that we'll have to work with your staff there over there and make sure that it's clear whether they want to be reappointed or not.
Okay, thanks. Item number thirty two, this is approving an agreement with the Housing Authority, increasing by the amount of $200 for the use of Measure K funds for security deposits and housing assistance, and I just want to thank our staff for that use of our funds. I mean, it's really critical that we're helping people stay in their housing, especially low-income people in our community, and helping them to get into housing, and this seems like a very good use of the Measure K funds, especially hearing what people are wanting and really wanting us to try to house people in our community as best we can. I think that many people in our community would appreciate this use of that sales tax measure funds. Also, item number thirty three, it's in agreement with Community Action Board, Santa Cruz County, increasing by the amount of $155,742 to expand transitional age youth housing services. I think this is a great use of funds, especially since some of these services are coming under attack by the federal administration in terms of federal funds that used to be allocated towards these services. So this commitment from the county, I think, is really great. And then finally, item number thirty four, this is approving amendments to agreements with Housing Matters, increasing the amount $160,650 in family transition in Santa Cruz County, increased by the amount of $889,096 for California Works Opportunity and Responsibility Kids Housing Programs. I think, again, this is, you know, just another example of how the county is committed to helping to support lower-income people and trying to, you know, keep people housed. And so just want to thank all the folks who've been involved in these efforts, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you Chair. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to start with comments on item number seventeen. I want to acknowledge that I certainly hear the feedback from the public who feels like probation didn't fully engage the community, and through my comments on that item two weeks ago, I expressed the same concerns. I want to let you know that since then, I have had a meeting with probation and am deeply urging them to continue to engage the community as they advance their efforts to help bring these kids back home. And so I'll be following up on that. And to Supervisor Cummings' point, I also would like to make myself available to anybody who'd like me to participate in those meetings. On item number twenty six, I'd like to thank the Board for considering approving this. This is an item that I put on at the request of members of our trans community and our LGBTQ plus community related to opposing the State Department proposal on passports. This proposal requires those eligible for passport renewal to identify their sex assigned at birth rather than their true gender identity or gender presentation. It's harmful to the mental health of our trans and intersex community members and reflects a larger strategy to basically erase their official existence. This doesn't keep in alignment with our county's commitment to support the LGBTQ plus communities, so I appreciate our consideration of submitting a letter to oppose these changes. On item number thirty one, I am really pleased that the county is formalizing our partnership with the PV Collaborative. In my prior profession, I was fortunate to attend many of those meetings, and I've seen some really incredible and transformational work happen in the South County. The county has played a role in many of those meetings, but I'm really excited to formalize that role and really be a true partner at the table, so thank you for that. And finally, on item number thirty two, our Housing Authority contract with Measure K, just like Supervisor Cummings shared, I really think this is truly in the spirit of what the voters wanted when they passed Measure K. It's an opportunity to invest locally with security deposits and to support our community in getting housed and staying housed here with the rising cost of living. So thank you for that commitment of funding. Thank you Chair.
Anyone else? Yes, Chair. Supervisor Corning?
Thank you. On item twenty one, approving the agreement with HomeAway.com for collection remittance of transient occupancy taxes. Just wanted to thank the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector for continuing to expand the system-level solutions to make sure the county gets all of the tax revenue it's owed and to shift responsibility to the hosting platforms, which ultimately are much easier to work with as larger entities than going after every single vacation rental one by one. And we certainly incorporated the same approach in some of the suggestions that we'll be talking about later today. And also, I want to say I'm fairly confident, because of efforts like this, that we are in fact collecting transient occupancy tax from the vast majority of short-term rentals operating in the county. Although I've consistently heard concerns from folks that we are not, I'm fairly confident that we are. On item thirty two, also wanted to say this, $200,000 for security deposit and housing assistance. I want to thank the voters who approved Measure K. Really, the only reason we're able to talk about these kinds of significant investments today in an extremely challenging funding environment is because voters said that this kind of money available for housing and other county programs is important, and so volunteered to provide, to support that sales tax and provide that additional funding. And finally, on item thirty eight, approving plans specifications and engineers estimate for Stetson Road Storm Damage Repair Project. Want to thank Public Works for getting these plans done and ready to go out to bid, as we heard from members of the public. This has just been extremely challenging. It's caused really long diversion for many folks, having to drive around this washout for, it's going on two years now, and I would hope to get this work done soon and hopefully, given with the storms coming in later this week, we don't see too much more storm damage and we're able to pay for this ultimately with the cash that we have on hand through contingencies rather than having to take on any more debt. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Serpa?
Thank you. I apologize for my voice. I've been sick since I came back from Washington DC. I'd like to address item seventeen and thank the public for coming up again as speaking since we had a very robust discussion about this item last time and we were all in support. Thank you. I have met with Milpa and I- I have met with Milpa, and I want to thank them for their time. They have also followed up with an email, which I have forwarded to the Director of Probation. And and I know there will be good collaboration in the future with all community people who are very concerned about our youth. And so I thank you for your concern. Thank you for the meeting. I want to bring everybody's highest attention to item number twenty-seven and thank the Commission on Disabilities for a very comprehensive report. I'm a little bit sad that this is sort of buried in the consent agenda because I think there's a lot of important things there. I have appointed or about to appoint my second person to the Commission on Disabilities, who I think will represent people with mobility issues very, very well. I appreciated that there was a discussion in this report about adding more housing for people, ADA housing for people with disabilities to our housing stock. So thank you for this, for the great report. Thank you to everybody that called in. This is item thirty-one, Paharo Valley Collaborative. As I've represented children, families, youth, students, teachers, staff in the Paharo Valley for many, many years. I appreciate the work of the collaborative. Not only did they rise to the occasion during the COVID pandemic, but also during the Paharo Valley floods. They were instrumental in getting services to people who really needed it. And so the expertise in that group cannot be underestimated. So thank you to everybody who's in the collaborative and who called in. And then finally, item thirty-nine. This is a crosswalks upgrade. I want to thank the county for making sure we have safe crosswalks. And and maybe this is a personal matter, but I have a couple of areas in the Paharo Valley on Freedom Boulevard that really need to have a crosswalk there for safety. There's been multiple people over the years who have been hit and in fact, killed there. And I'd like to improve the safety. There's a neighborhood that crosses the Freedom Boulevard to get to the Quick Stop across the street. And so I want to look into that. So if somebody could help me know how to put that on on our agenda, I'd like that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So on item seventeen, I believe that we previously gave board direction to continue to meet with the stakeholders and address their concerns. And I hope that continues throughout the process. And I'd be willing to attend any South County meetings as well. With item thirty-one, I echo the comments of the public. Happy that we're doing this PV collaborative and, you know, putting money behind it as well. And with the Supervisor, the Serpa raised a concern about about pedestrian crossing. I had a group of students that actually I met with me about this same issue. So I'd be willing to help you with that as well. And that concludes my comments with that. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, we had a motion from Supervisor Koenig and a second from.
I was gonna say what the exception right number thirty that was pulled.
Yes. As now six point one and a second from Supervisor DeSerpas. Can we take roll call?
Supervisor DeSerpas. I. Cummings.
I.
Martinez.
Hi.
Koenig.
I.
Hernandez.
I. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have item six point one, which is thirty. Accept and file the Santa Cruz County Suicide Prevention Strategic Plan Update.
And I I want to just apologize. Normally, I would let you know that I was going to pull this. And so I apologize for that. But considering that we have sort of a drying up potentially of federal funding, this is such an important item to many people in our community. I unfortunately witnessed three suicides at Aptos High about a decade ago. And and so I want to make sure that we have a comprehensive prevention strategy in place, and it sounds like this is it. So I'd just like to hear a little more about it.
Yeah, absolutely. No worries. Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. Karen Kern, interim Behavioral Health Director, Health Services Agency. We came before you in two thousand nineteen, June of two thousand nineteen with a strategic, our first suicide prevention strategic plan. And at that time, it was reviewed and approved by the board. We then had COVID. And then coming out of COVID, we started tracking suicide, suicide rates in our county. We were at, let's see, thirteen per one hundred thousand in two thousand twenty-one. And then in two thousand twenty-three, we went up to seventeen point one per one hundred thousand in our county. So we mobilized and talked about updating our suicide prevention plan. Had two grants, a grant through SAMSA titled Building Hope and Safety. And I presented a report on that grant for you guys in January. And then another grant through the California Department of Public Health. And the grants were really aimed at helping us develop and update our plan and then also provide some specific training and supports to the community. Let's see. The plan is, oh, we had a committee to that got together. It was formed comprised of members from Behavioral Health Department, Public Health, Veterans Administration, Office of Education, and then Family Services Agency, Suicide Prevention Services. And then we had a consultant to support us in developing the plan. The plan is structured around five key strategic aims. The first is about maintaining and building a local suicide prevention infrastructure. And there's three goals under that. Maintaining an advisory group to provide leadership and support necessary partnerships. Collect and annually review data to better understand and address the problem and impact, and then explore and coordinate funding and other resources to sustain the efforts. The second aim is about protective factors in promoting wellness and prevention and reducing stigma. The two goals under that aim are to develop and implement bilingual public messaging events and media communications, inclusive of nine eight eight. And the second goal is to develop and implement a plan to continue offering prevention education and training for community members and a wide range of helpers. And there were multiple trainings through the Building Hope and Safety Grant, which you guys put your details in the report I submitted in January. The third goal is around intervention, which is increasing early identification of suicide risk and promoting connection to services. And there's four four goals under this aim. The first is to formalize use of evidence-based tools like the Columbia Suicide Risk Assessment and the Stanley Brown Safety Plan. The second goal is to create a system map of crisis services in support of the Crisis Now implementation. The third is to develop and disseminate supportive resources for individuals who have had a past suicide attempt in the effort to prevent a future attempt. And then the fourth is to increase the effectiveness of treatment for people suffering from serious thoughts of self-harm by providing countywide training to behavioral health professionals on the collaborative assessment of management of suicidality or the CAMHS. And we're offering our first training in April of this year. The fourth aim is around means safety, so creating safe environments by reducing access to lethal means. The three goals under that aim are to partner with local gun shops and firing range owners and local law enforcement agencies to increase awareness of suicide prevention efforts, warning signs, and available resources. The second goal is disseminate information through local health departments to community partners about available overdose prevention resources, methods, medications to counteract overdose, such as naloxone. And then to distribute means safety information and tools to providers and community members. And under the Building Hope and Safety Grant, we were also able to purchase some lock boxes for firearms or medication. And we've been distributing those through various public fairs and farmers markets throughout the community. And then our fourth aim, I'm sorry, our fifth aim is postvention. So really supporting people for who have experienced a suicide loss in their family. Those goals include distributing kits such as the local outreach to suicide survivor or loss packets, developing a loss response team so that we have individuals that are available to go work with people who have experienced a loss in their family, and then increasing the availability of local providers to support survivors of suicide through specialized training and resources. This group developed this plan that's before you today. It went through our Mental Health Advisory Board meeting in August of two thousand twenty-four and opened for public comment, and then closed the following month in September, two thousand twenty-four, in the Mental Health Advisory Board. And then our recommendations are to encourage continued dissemination, adoptive of adoption of this plan by local organizations and governing boards, continue to identify and build collaboration and partnerships at regional level, and then building up the Suicide Awareness Committee with additional representation to reflect the geography and diversity of Santa Cruz County. Any questions?
Any board questions?
That's excellent. Thank you very much. Of the seventeen point one suicides in two thousand twenty-one, is that our most recent data?
It's two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty, okay, so. How many were under the age of eighteen?
Have to get that for you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for that. I appreciate you bringing this to a higher level for the public to understand.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? We'll bring back to board for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Supervisor DeSerpas and a second from Supervisor Martinez. Can we get a roll call?
Supervisor Koenig.
I.
Martinez.
I.
Cummings.
I.
DeSerpas.
I.
And Hernandez.
I. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the item on the agenda is item number seven, to consider recommendations of the Short-Term Rental Ad Hoc Subcommittee to consolidate and revise the hosted rental and vacation rental ordinances and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Supervisor Koenig and Supervisor Cummings for the presentation.
You, Chair. Well, we are excited to report on our work from about the last six months as the ad hoc subcommittee. And we'll dive right in with some proposed changes to the short-term rental and vacation rental laws. Next slide, please. So we'll provide a little bit of background, particularly for our new board members on the current short-term rental ordinances that we have and some of the outline they provide for Operation the County. We'll discuss the problems that that led us to seek changes to the ordinance in the first place, a timeline of our activities as the short-term rental ad hoc subcommittee. Then we'll get into some of the nitty-gritty with an overview of the proposed changes, review community feedback, discuss fiscal impacts, and then look at next steps. Next slide. So first of all, a little ordinance history. The initial initial short-term rental, or I should say vacation rental and hosted rental ordinances were established in two thousand and eleven. And really key to that was the establishment of these three zones within the county, these these subzones, the Davenport, Swanton designated area, the Sea Cliff, Aptos, La Selva designated area, and the Live Oak designated area. These were areas where we were seeing higher concentrations of vacation rentals. And so there were specific caps on the number of vacation rentals or unhosed rentals that there could be in each one of these areas, as well as blocks defined with a twenty percent cap limit to to vacation rentals on any given block. There were some small updates made to the ordinance back in the the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one timeframe, mostly around enforceability and the ability to ultimately revoke permits when there was a number of violations. And then, but but I think it's important to note that until the passage of Measure B, which increased transient occupancy taxes, both for hotels and short-term rentals, but particularly it was it was three percent for short-term rentals. Until that time, we didn't have a dedicated code compliance officer to enforce this ordinance. And so I mean, code compliance covers a huge range of issues, including, you know, fires occurring on unmanaged properties in the rural area, all kinds of life-threatening situations. And so unfortunately, this, the topic of short-term rental enforcement consistently fell at the bottom of the list with the additional funds that voters approved. We we, the board said, we really want a dedicated code compliance officer for this. And so really, it's just been in the last couple of years that we've had the insight of someone consistently enforcing the ordinance, and we wanted to be able to incorporate some of those. You know, I mentioned that each one of these three regions has caps, both on a number defined for unhosed rentals and hosted rentals. Countywide, there there is a cap on hosted rentals of two hundred and fifty. However, there is no limit on unhosed rentals countywide. That was another issue that we started to see, that we've seen get worse and worse and that we were seeking to address with an update to the ordinance. And so on September twenty-fourth, the board voted to establish the ad hoc subcommittee to assess assess these issues and recommend regulatory changes to the key objectives being to establish a county-wide cap and also to require hosting platforms only work with permitted rentals. Thanks to the the work of the dedicated code compliance officer, we have identified about seventy rental, short-term rentals that largely are paying transient occupancy taxes but do not have a permit. So whether that's because they haven't bothered to get the permit or don't realize that they need one. And so the easiest way ultimately to address these is is anyone who's not permitted but operating would be simply to cut them off from access to customers and remove them from hosting platforms. And so to do that, having some responsibility on the behalf on of the hosting platforms not to work with unpermitted rentals is essential, and we wanted to include that in the ordinance. We've seen success, for example, in Santa Monica, where they included such a provision and it was upheld in part. Next slide, please. Other problems, I mean, that impacts on housing, I think, were foremost in Supervisor Cummings' mind and I. I mean, we are in a housing crisis. We are the most expensive rental market relative to incomes in the country. And so there's just been an increasing erosion of single-family homes that can sometimes house multiple students or multiple tenants of any kind. And those getting converted to short-term rentals. You know, we've also just seen the increased commodification of housing within, particularly within our region, being so close to Silicon Valley. And homes being sold by two out of vacation rental owners who now live out of the county, don't come over here. And, you know, just continue to to treat these homes purely as investments. And so we want to do something to address that. And and what this image here shows is that, you know, the, you can see the edge of the Live Oak designated area there, which really controlled density. But we're seeing that really, as particular in areas adjacent to some of the designated areas, just as much density and just as much demand to convert the the long-term housing stock to vacation rentals. And while certainly Opel Cliff Drive there has is a place for for many multimillion-dollar homes with with ocean views, the the Bain Nova neighborhood closer to the railroad tracks and Forty-First has traditionally been a, you know, just moderate income, single-family neighborhood. And so you can see that even that is is seeing significant vacation rentals. We also want to do something to to address just consistent community disruptions around parking issues, noise complaints, neighborhood conflicts, all the usual stuff. And and try to just tighten up the record there and and address other regulatory gaps. Next slide. So the subcommittee did have a number of meetings and do a good amount of public outreach and engagement, starting with meetings with the Santa Cruz Association of Realtors, a couple of different events. Then we met individually with the management companies, folks who operate a good number of vacation rentals on, you know, typically on behalf of owners. We met directly with Airbnb and VRBO. We had discussions with permit holders as well as as neighbors or residents who live next to a good number of vacation rentals. We met with Visit Santa Cruz County. And finally, just last week, had a large community meeting where every member of the public was invited to hear feedback on these specific proposals. Next slide.
So I do want to highlight that last December, the Coast Commission, when they were, I'm sorry, December, two thousand twenty-three, the Coast Commission was in Santa Cruz, and we received a report. We had a little workshop on housing and visitor-serving amenities in the coastal zone. And one of the things that they highlighted in one of the presentations that we received was that the non-hosted rentals tend to have the greatest impact on communities in terms of escalating housing price and in terms of reducing housing availability. And what was recommended was really trying to promote hosted rentals, which really are trying to achieve that gap of what Airbnb is essentially for, which is bed and breakfast. Somebody has extra space in their home. They're an empty nester. They want to make a little extra income. They're members of the community, providing them with this kind of economic opportunity is really what should take precedent over trying to create more investment opportunity for out-of-county investors who are looking to just buy up housing stock and convert our housing to commercial use. And so for that reason, when we were looking at our current, because of the fact that there's no cap on on non-hosted rentals, And so for that reason, um, when we were looking at our current, because of the fact that there's no cap on on non-hosted rentals. Um, we noticed that there were about two hundred and seventy permits that either had been approved or applications that were in queue. And so we use that as kind of our cap. Um, so for non-hosted rentals, we're going to cap the number at two hundred and seventy, which would allow for people who currently have permits and people who are currently in queue to receive those permits. Um, and we are not going to be reducing any of the current permits to the people who have permits um throughout the county. Excellent.
Uh, actually, I'll one more point here is just to to clarify what we're looking at. So this is a a dashboard that has um a map of every single vacation rental, but uh or short term rental, both both hosted and unhosted in the county. And so that top number, number eight hundred and sixty three, as you can see, is the combination of all. Um, vacation is also the equivalent of a a another term for unhosted rental that we currently use. And so while it is eight hundred and sixty three countywide, the number of two hundred and seventy permits is really just for outside of the designated areas. And so really, the majority of uh the the existing short term rentals are within the designated area. So that's how we define that number of two hundred and seventy permits is looking at everything outside. And the goal was really to just basically freeze uh where we're at now. Supervisor coming said not to be revoking people's permits. But really just to say, okay, enough's enough. We we think um, we have enough capacity. Next slide. Um, there were some, um, there one particularly nuanced thing within the the Seacliff Aptos La Salva designated area, where there's an exception zone called out. Um, that's the hashed out area here that you can see on the map. This is along um, the Beach Drive, Rio Del Mar Flats, uh Potbelly Beach and a couple of other um areas, it's defined in the code. And um, the way it's defined, it says that uh that if within the exception zone, uh, short term rentals will not count towards block density limits or other caps. However, there was some enough uh enough ambiguity there that staff was interpreting. This to mean that uh the short term rentals would not count towards block caps, but would still count towards these, the total. Uh, cap for the salsa region. Um, and so that led to um just some weird way that that applications were being treated. Um, and so we felt it was, and actually staff asked us to clarify this. So we uh we clarified and reaffirmed that the exception zone is in fact an exception zone. Um, and we would not count any of the vacation rentals uh within the exception zone towards the cap. However, almost half of all the vacation rentals within this zone are in the exception zone, about ninety four uh at the time of uh that that we looked at this. And so what we're suggesting to maintain um sort of the most um, you know, or or had the least impact on this area is rather than now. Opening up ninety four new permits outside of the exception zone, which would effectively happen with this definition. We're saying maybe we should just reduce the um, the cap by ninety four within this area to have minimal impact on housing stock. Next slide.
So kind of in terms of available permits, um, there, one of the things that we've seen is that. While we have, we, well, one, there's been a lot of impacts already expressed by residents and neighborhoods. Um, and especially within the designated areas. And one of, one of the things we also see is that although there are, you know, for example, in the uh Live Oak District. Two hundred and sixty two potential permits that are available for vacation rentals, which are non-hosted. There's only two hundred and two permits being used. And so to kind of um, to meet the needs of the community who have expressed that they already feel that there's overwhelming numbers of vacation rentals within those communities, non-hosted. Uh, we're proposing to reduce um the number of permits by ten year, over five years in these designated areas, the non-used permits. So if there are permits in excess, um, starting in January twenty twenty six, we will start reducing the ten permits per year within those areas. To try to help um, lower the number of potential um, non-hosted vacation rentals that would be in within those areas. Excellent.
Sorry, sorry, I was gonna add one thing here, which is, you know, back in twenty twenty, when the ordinance, um, when changes to ordinance were proposed, I think, uh, it was proposed that. The Live Oak that vacation rentals or unhosted rentals be reduced to two hundred and twenty. And then the coastal commission came back and said, no, it should be two hundred and sixty two. So to kind of avoid, uh, uh, based on current demand and sort of avoid this back and forth, and well, should the cap be two sixty two, should be two forty, should be two twenty, should be two eighty. We figured, okay, well, let's, if if the intent is sort of to freeze the number of vacation rentals that are available today. Let's look at what the actual demand is and then kind of work backwards from there until the cap uh is at the the same level of the actual demand. Next slide. We clarified in the, in the proposed ordinance, um, uh, just the the twenty percent density limit. So right now, staff is approving um new vacation rentals as long as the that that twenty percent hasn't been met. But even if once approving, they'll be greater than twenty percent density on a single block. So for example, if it's a a block is at eighteen percent vacation rentals. And um, and the application would mean that it would now be at twenty four percent uh vacation rentals once approved. We're still approving that. That just seems a little bit weird. It seemed like twenty percent should be twenty percent. Um, and so we clarified that if it's going to, if if a new approval would push that over twenty percent, that we will not approve an application. Um, we've also seen some situations where people are literally being surrounded by vacation rentals. And both of these um screenshots demonstrate that. So uh, on the top, you can see a vacation rental uh above, below and behind somebody. Um, on the yellow bordered picture there, you can see um, again, vacation rentals on both sides directly of someone, as well as on the alleyway, the two homes. Uh, behind them. And keep in mind that the frontage of these homes are often all parking. And so they can see sometimes four SUVs in each, along each one of these parcels. Sometimes that, I mean, completely surrounding someone, they have trouble accessing their home. And so at the end of the day, the, when we talk about a twenty four, seven, three sixty five vacation rental, this is absolutely a commercial zoo. Uh, use in a residential zone. And we need to be, you know, the whole intent of the ordinance is to be sensitive to those impacts on full time residents. Um, and so that's why we included a provision in the um, in this proposal that uh, we wouldn't approve a new permit if it meant that one home was going to be adjacent to more than two. Uh, the vac- unhosted vacation rentals. Excellent. Um, you know, I mentioned holding hosting platforms accountable for working with permitted vacation rentals. Right now, um, you know, we're, we're still, people can get a certificate. Um, and pay their transient occupancy tax even without a permit, even without, uh, you know, us ensuring that they're meeting all these regulations. And as I said, we've identified about seventy folks that are doing just that. And so rather than trying to go after with enforcement actions, every single person, it's a heck of a lot easier just to uh remove access. To the public who's trying to book these vacation rentals for anyone who doesn't actually have a permit. And so um, to do that, we, we included the language around hosting platform accountability and the fact that uh, we would notify hosting platforms of. Folks we've identified operating without a permit, and it's their responsibility to remove those within ten days. Or face administrative penalty of up to one thousand dollars per day per listing. As I mentioned, uh, this is um actually modeled on Santa Monica's ordinance. They upheld that in court. You know, of course, the the hosting platforms tried to say, hey, well, we're not responsible for for the content that people post on our site. We said, well, it's not about the content, it's about who you are working with and you must work with permitted operators. Next slide.
So we, as part of this effort too, one of the things that came to our attention was that there's two, currently, there's two separate codes. One is for hosted rentals, one is for non-hosted rental. And so what we're trying to do is to uh do some cleanup. And where we're, you know, merging these two now into one consolidated ordinance, which is for short term rentals. And this is bringing us into alignment with standard verbiage that's used uh with jurisdictions throughout the state. There's still going to be different considerations for if you run a non-hosted versus if you are not hosted. But we're just going to have those definitions defined within one ordinance, so that when staff is going through and. When members of the public are looking at the code, it's one, they're going to one place, they're not getting confused with two different types of code. So this is just trying to bring um our code into alignment and help streamline updates, improvements for enforcement and clarity within the ordinance. Next slide.
Um, we also included some higher permit standards, uh, particularly that a site visit may be involved. So right now, staff is approving permits without necessarily having going, going and ground truthing, um, you know, what applicants are saying. And uh, we've seen that be problematic, you know, based on whether it's just the safety of uh the room or or the house that's actually being rented. Um, or other issues like um encroachments into the public right of way. We're also requiring a site plan, um, again, particularly for hosted rentals to make, make sure it's clear uh what rooms in a house are actually being rented out. Uh, we also included some stronger ownership verification to make sure to prevent frauds around. Uh, you know, we've heard of people showing up at uh residents' houses and say, hey, we rented your house, what are you doing here? And in fact, it was a scam that someone just got their money off of Craigslist. And yeah, some, some clear permit renewal criteria based on compliance history. Next slide. Um, this is an example of of um, this is not, I don't think, actually a short term rental, but an example of encroachment into the public right of way in terms of parking. So you're not actually allowed to have more than fifty percent of your frontage be devoted to a driveway most of the time. But we've seen in the coastal area consistently, as people will actually convert the rest of the frontage to parking just for their home. And that actually is removing a uh horizontal parking space along the street there for the public to use. Um, and so whether it's sort of um, converting public space to private space, or you know, people just encroaching on public parking with uh, with gardens or vegetation. We think it's pretty clear that those kinds of of uh encroachment should not be tolerated when granting or or shouldn't, you should be um, until addressing those, you shouldn't be eligible to receive a short term rental permit. Um, we also are limiting, are suggesting that we limit short term rental permits to one per parcel. Next slide. Um, and I think probably the the most significant thing we're suggesting as far as just improving reporting and oversight in general is to have a unified hotline. Um, that would be the most prominent thing on every sign. So um, in this case, if you called the beach nest, the number on the beach nest sign there, you'd be connected um with someone at beach nest rentals. Um, and that's great. There's actually there are super responsible operator uh and and answer their calls. But what we heard consistently from the managers is that, well, no one actually calls us, everything's fine. But we heard from residents was, we call all the time and no one picks up. And so uh, when we went to the sheriff's office, we said, well, how many calls are we getting rela- related to vacation rentals? And they said, well, we actually don't know because we don't have a specific code for vacation rentals. Okay, clearly we need to do something differently. Uh, and so having a a unified hotline that everyone calls first, and then the the hotline is basically a service we pay for as a county. They, they will then redirect the call to the sheriff's office or the twenty four seven manager um, or anyone else as needed. Um, but it gives us a consistent record of who called for what reason on what date uh and related to what property. Overall, it's a fairly minor cost to to operate the hotline, uh, and we're suggesting that we would pass that on uh to permit holders. Um, and as you can see, places like uh Monterey, um, already have hotlines like this. Next slide. Um, this is sort of a minor point, but um, we know it to supervisor Cummings' point that we, you know, really hosted rentals are sort of um. Offering a very different kind of experience uh and ultimately help people to stay in their homes in a lot of cases. We did want to look at it, um, some unique cases where we'd expand eligibility if someone wants to move into their ADU and rent out their primary dwelling. Uh, as a way to continue to live in Santa Cruz, that um, that we would permit that. There are state laws that prevent the use of ADUs specifically for um, short term rentals uh themselves. But we felt like this was sort of a, an interesting use case again, that would allow people uh to ultimately afford to to live in an, in our region, which has a very high cost of living. Next slide.
So again, one of the. The biggest um, things that we're trying to promote here is that we want to maintain our housing. Um, within our community for people who live and work within our community. And so um, part of what we discussed um was that when tenants are going to be evicted for the purpose of converting a home to a short term rental, the owner must pay the tenant six months. Rental assistance um for relocation, just knowing how challenging it can be to, you know, pay for moving costs, down payment, first month's rent. And when you've been living somewhere for so long, um, and we feel that, you know, given that the uh amount of money that they're. You know, the, the conversion of residential to commercial for the purposes of investment and for commercial use. But this um seems to be um a reasonable ask for someone who is going to need to um kick tenants out and make them move somewhere else. In addition to that, um, one of the things that we also um have heard from the community that's a concern is the corporatization of vacation rentals in our community. So corporations coming in, buying up multiple houses, getting, you know, four, five, six permits and then just completely, you know, taking um. Housing that should have been built for people to live in and converting it to this commercial use. And so what we're proposing is that no one person or entity shall be issued more than one short term rental permit, either for a hosted rental or non-hosted rental. So the idea being that if you own a second home in the community, you want to convert that to a short term rental. You can do that for one home, but you can't go out and start buying up homes throughout our entire community, converting multiple homes um to short term rentals for, for commercial gain. Ideally, again, we want to allow people this opportunity. But at the same time, we also need to ma- like balance that with how we're going to maintain housing during a housing crisis. Next slide. And so um, again, we had multiple opportunities and multiple engagements with various community sectors. Um, this is a photo from our last meeting, we had a full house of about probably fifty people who attended. Um, and in general, there wasn't really any sentiment of don't do this. Um, I think there was a lot of support for our hotline and accountability, um, density restrictions. Um, there were some concerns around inspections um and economic impacts from potential drawdowns from unused permits. Um, and you know, ultimately, I think supervisor Koenig and I walked away with a sense of feeling like, well, this isn't perfect, it's a, it's a, it's a step forward. While not everybody's happy with everything within there, people are happy with various aspects of what we're proposing. And we're using this, you know, really as a starting point for how we can further address the impacts of short term rentals on our community and preserving our housing stock. Excellent. So fiscal impacts, again, um, there's no reduction to the current permits. We are not taking away any, anyone's permit right now. And I will say that one of the things that really influenced that decision as well was not only the impacts on the fiscal impacts. But the idea that many people have applied for these permits under a certain um idea of what they were gonna, what their expectations were. And so to come in now and say, we're changing the rules, we're going to take your permits away, we didn't think that that would be fair for people who went through the process initially. So we're not going to be eliminating any permits for people who currently have permits. But we did want to be responsive to the impacts on neighborhoods, which is why we've moved forward with the caps today. That we're proposing and the recommendations that we're proposing. Um, but furthermore, we did want to, you know, we didn't know that they could have impacts on visitor serving opportunities within our community. And so we're going to be having discussions with um the county, with the hoteliers, with Visit Santa Cruz, on how we can also support many of the hotels in our community. Because one of the things we have seen is that some of the um hotels in our industry have been negatively impacted. I'm sorry, some of the hotels in our community have been negatively impacted by short term rentals. And so while we're moving forward with putting these caps in, how can we help hotels to be able to be sustainable within our community? Excellent.
If I could add just one, one note on that slide, yeah, actually, one of the um things that brought this issue to my attention. Uh, originally, besides just the general uh, you know, march of of complaints I I hear from residents. Was hearing from a hotel on Portola that wanted to convert to long term rentals. It was sort of like, wait, what? Like, this is where we have the highest density of vacation rentals. Your designated visitor serving, a visitor accommodation, like, why do you now want to go to short term rentals, or or sorry, to long term rentals? And so clearly, we need to do more to support our hotels. You know, just sort of s- stopping the growth of vacation rentals is is one way to do that. But I think that ultimately, we need to look at at ways to encourage investment in hotels. I think we need to be clear eyed that, I mean, as a county, our two biggest industries, we have, we have two billion dollar industries, ag and tourism in this county. And so um, and they provide jobs for a a huge range of people. And so um, anything that we do, I should not destabilize our tourism industry. And in fact, long term, we still want some capacity to grow that industry. But really with with this proposal, we're recognizing that, okay, we want to do that in a way that is not going to aggravate our housing crisis. Um, and that ultimately means uh further investment in hotels rather than vacation rentals.
All right, so next steps, um, today, the board uh has this item for its consideration. Should the board want to move this item forward, the next step would be that it would go to the clinic planning commission for review. Um, around in the March, well, probably the April range. Um, it would have two board hearings for final redo, re- review and adoption after, um, we have recommendations from the planning commission. Then we go to the coastal commission for review. Um, and if there's no significant changes there, then um, it would come back, I believe, to the county for final adoption. And so next step, or next slide. So with that, um, just want to thank everybody for their time on this item. And I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you for the very thorough presentation. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Martinez.
Nice work. Um, thank you to both supervisor Koenig and supervisor Cummings for bringing us this presentation. It's really informative, um, and I like the direction that it's going. Um, like every other coastal community, we struggle with, um, trying to balance the tourism industry and benefit from TOT, but also support our housing, um, challenges. And so in the rural area, we're no different. However, what does set us apart is that, um, we really aren't able to develop large scale affordable housing, like from a land use perspective, that's not allowed. And for a lot of other reasons, it's not a good idea for, uh, different mountainous areas. And so we really rely on ADUs and junior ADUs to add to the housing stock. And so I just have a question for clarity. It might be you guys, or it might be Assistant Director Hanson, who I see here from CDI. Um, just to talk about, um, if I, if I understand correctly, in the proposal, somebody would be able to move into their ADU and then turn their main home into a rental. But does that kind of defeat the purpose? Because then it, it takes a home off the main rental market?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's valid. I mean, it's sort of an edge case, right? And, and let me also state that ADUs cannot, themselves cannot be used as short term rentals by California law. I mean, that was sort of, um, with everything the state has done to make it easier to build ADUs. They said, okay, well, we don't want these to be used for short term rentals. Um, I mean, what we're looking at in this case is it has to be, still be a primary residence of the owner or their family. And so, um, we, we thought, well, that may just be the case where that ADU might not just not even get built otherwise. And this is really still, we, we, we're actually qualifying it as a hosted rental. So, um, you know, yeah, I, I, I hear your concerns, but at the same time, it's possible that this just wouldn't even get built. And, and it's enabling someone to continue to live in the community.
Got it. Um, appreciate the response. Um, yeah, I, I think, um, that's the only area I'm looking at the proposed ordinance that I think probably is kind of, um, kind of ripe for some problems related to the areas in my district where, you know, we are asking and supporting our residents in developing ADUs so we can add to our housing stock up there. So our community can continue to be housed up there. Um, so, so that would be sort of my, my suggestion for, um, adjustments. But other than that, um, I, I'm really happy that you pulled this together. Thank you.
Public, any public comment? On this item?
Well, thank you, Supervisor Cummings and Cunningham. Uh, I think this is a very thoughtful process you went through. I think you came up with a good set of compromises, but also enforcement too. I've lived in this neighborhood for 42 years. I've seen the conversion you've talked about. About every month and a half, we get a letter from something called Via Casa telling us to turn our home into a vacation rental. I'll pass this around, you can read it. I have plenty of them if you want your own copy of it. But the biggest issue has been, uh, there were always vacation rentals in our neighborhood. But once they became, uh, kind of monetized with Airbnb and VRBO, they became businesses. So what you have now are hotels in the middle of neighborhood. Some people are surrounded like you saw, some people aren't. Some people are like us, we're next to a large one. Uh, there's virtually no enforcement on it. With this hotline, we can call. I've called sometimes after big groups have come, they get really loud. And, uh, one of the times I remember, it's kind of funny, I called up and said, oh, yeah, hi, I haven't talked to you for a while, uh, but we've been fired. And so they weren't the people managing it. So a hotline will solve the problem because we're going through all this all the time. The things we saw when we started working on this as a neighborhood in 2009 is a lot of what you're, you've talked about already. Basically, uh, you were going to lose your housing stock, you're going to lose your neighborhood. It was a lose-lose all the way around for Santa Cruz. And now I think with what you have here in this balance is a good approach. You're going to enforce it a little more. You're going to do a lot of other things that should have been years ago. But also thank you for putting an enforcement officer in place. That has not been the case. And thank you, Su. This county administrative officer came up with the idea, I probably shouldn't publicly mention it, but putting a little extra tax on to pay for a lot of the impacts of these, because these are businesses. So anyhow, I don't want to take more of your time. You've had a long meeting so far. But, uh, and I had a nice speech to give, but I put it online so you could read it there. But anyhow, uh, the last thought was, um, we don't have problems with the hosted vacation rentals. It's empty houses that turn into party houses. Thank you.
Again, Terrence Concanon, Chief Executive Officer for Santa Cruz County. I'd like to thank, uh, the board and particularly Supervisor Koenig and Cummings for their hard work in this detailed presentation and, and for involving, um, Visit Santa Cruz County in this process. One thing I do urge the board is that, um, currently our tourism numbers are rising approximately 1.5 to 2% every year. I do anticipate over the years that that will increase year by year. So I do encourage this, uh, this board and the county itself to, uh, to look into ways to, uh, make it easier for hotel development in the unincorporated areas as well as hotel expansion, uh, so that we can, um, again, I've said this before in front of this body, the number one customer of Visit Santa Cruz County are the residents of this county. Because the better this county is for our residents, the better it is for our visitors. But at the same time, because of, I do what I do, I do want to make sure that our visitors are taken care of and that we, that we look forward to this increase in visitation that we will, that we, we will inevitably see and make sure that we are looking at that, uh, with a very keen and critical eye. Thank you.
Anyone online?
Thank you. I'm Fred Deuts. I live on 14th Avenue. I want to thank Supervisors Koenig and Cummings for the work that they've done over the last six months in preparing this draft ordinance that's in front of you. I live in a live oak neighborhood that has been, um, has large numbers of unhosted vacation rentals. Three homes in the immediate vicinity that have been sold have all been converted to unhosted vacation rentals. The last one raised the neighborhood density from below 20% to above 20%. And it created a surrounded neighbor. So I support the current revisions that contain stronger location and density requirements. But our street has already been transformed by allowing more than 20% commercial activities in our residentially zoned neighborhood. And in fact, one that's two doors away from me is listed on VBRO as six bedrooms, four baths, and comfortably accommodates 22 individuals. And per the ordinance, that doesn't include an unlimited number of children. Our history with the vacation rental, uh, posting of a contact phone number has been problematic. There are a number of posted numbers that are not active, that go to voice messages that are never responded to, or not even a number posted. Further calls to the sheriff's office for noise and nuisance complaints go unlogged because there is not a vacation rental way to track them. The result is that when a vacation rental comes up for permit renewal, there is no record of complaints against the sheriff's responses. I strongly support the hotline. It is a new way to go. I have suggested the short term rental permits upon renewal also be inspected. Lot can change in the five years that go on between them. And I hopefully that the ARB and VRBO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone wants to speak, please sign up for this item.
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner. I live in rural Aptos, but there are, um, vacation rentals up there. It, it sometimes does cause a problem with parking primarily because the roads are narrow. There are, um, residents' concerns about, uh, clogging the evacuation routes and also fire danger. I also have, uh, concern that, um, the hotels may be more water efficient for our visitors. And that's something we should be looking at too. Versus a home that may not be as water efficient or as accountable for water efficiency. I support the hotline. I think that's a great idea. In the past, I have urged people to call the sheriff's non-emergency number and they don't want to do that. So having a hotline dedicated for this purpose will be a great improvement. I ask that the residents, um, the parcels around any, uh, vacation rental, hosted or unhosted, be mailed, uh, notice of this hotline. So people are aware of it. Because otherwise, how would you know? Thank you for the good work, Supervisor Koenig and Supervisor Cummings that you've done on this. I, I applaud you for really going out and doing the homework and bringing the public to the table. And I look forward to seeing how the promises that were made in measure B are upheld. It also promised to fix the roads. We'll see that happen. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Jonathan Kolodinsky, South County resident. Want to, um, echo the community's appreciation for your taking on this issue. I think it's important to strike the balance as we, uh, work to orchestrate how our communities operate and live. One thing, um, I didn't hear, uh, mentioned about was areas like the Pajaros Dunes, which are generally occupied at about 75% short term rentals to long term rentals. So I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the considerations as you move forward. Thank you.
Anyone online?
Yes, Chair. Larry, your microphone's now available. As a reminder, Larry, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself. I'm going to go ahead and move on to our next speaker chair. Michelle, your microphone's now available.
Yeah, great presentation. Um, one thing that's really important, being next to all these, um, vacation rentals, again, with those number of cars, people are coming in to vacation. They come in with large groups. Remember please that you guys also have allowed for 3,000 new apartments to be coming into Santa Cruz as well. That has an impact, a huge impact on Highway One and the traffic that we're already experiencing. Already the, um, beach traffic that's coming in from over the hill and all these vacation rentals. It's making it very hard for the residents to even get back and forth on one. And I know with these new lanes going in, there's still more for buses. Uh, remember the buses are clean. They still have a lot of unsavory people sometimes riding them. And everybody that lives in this area has to be able to work. And most people can't make a living wage here in Santa Cruz County. So again, please also put the impact of our roads, because four extra cars per house is huge. Even for these apartments, even if you're not providing parking, people are going to have cars. We have nowhere to park them. We already have problems. So if you could just also include that in the study. And maybe you should look at the people in line for the permits. Because again, there should be a moratorium on the number of vacation rentals. Because we keep hearing about this housing crisis, make them full rental, like long-term rentals. Uh, we don't need more people buying houses and just using them for rental properties for short terms. It's, it's just a little bit, uh, much for this, uh, small coastal communities. Thank you.
Larry, if you're now able to connect, your microphone is now available. Larry, we're unable to hear you if you're speaking. Here, we have no further speakers. It appears Larry's not able to connect.
Thank you. So, you know, with all the neighborhood concerns that have been raised and over 800, um, vacation rentals in total and about almost 300 in vacation rentals in the impacted areas, um, and I'll be supporting this because it is a balanced approach. And I believe it'll help us with alleviating some of the, the housing shortage that we're trying to address. And so I'd look to my board for a entertaining motion.
And I have comments, if that's okay. I don't know if you guys want to make a motion first and then I can comment after. Okay. The unified hotline is great. First of all, thanks for the presentation. It was a very complicated backup and I really wanted to talk to you. I wanted to go to the community meeting, but I couldn't because you guys were already brown acted together. So I'm really grateful to have this conversation today and, um, just bear with me. So the, um, the definition of an unhosted rental, does that include a rental that's being managed by property management? Or is that a hosted? I'm unclear.
Yeah, tip, typically that would be a property that's managed by, um, a management company.
Unhosted?
Unhosted. Yeah. I mean, in fact, um, like, one of the gray areas was, well, what if you own your home, leave on the weekends and rent the whole house out? Is that hosted or unhosted? And we did clarify that, we consider that unhosted because no host is on site.
Okay, thank you. Um, what percentage, what, what percentage are we actually talking about? It's like 1%, right? Of all of our housing stock is in, um, vacation rentals? Is that correct?
I don't know the exact percentage myself. I, I mean, I've heard that number thrown out there.
Yeah.
And I think that even, even one, I mean, it's also probably worth looking at, like, well, what percentage of new home sales are, you know, involve a conversion to a vacation rental? And, um, you know, obviously the, the impacts are not even throughout the county. There's probably more within coastal areas and in particular, like that slide showed, uh, areas that are sort of adjacent, um, to some of the existing designated areas. Um, but, I mean, we have seen consistently homes that, uh, you know, were converted, where tenants lost their, long-term tenants lost their housing. Um, and, um, you know, even like homes, for example, in my district, like in, on, on Madison Lane, not near the coast at all, you know, nice, single family home. We're waiting for the new family to move in. Oh wait, that's a, just got converted to a vacation rental too. So, you know, even though it, it, it is still significant, particularly when there's a housing crisis. And, you know, every, every unit is valuable.
Certainly. Yeah, go ahead.
If I can follow up and just add to that. I think when we think about, it's, from what we've heard from some of the folks in the real estate industry, they've thrown out the number of, it's about 1% of our housing stock. But I think we need to think more deeply about if that's 1,000 homes, how much time would it take to replace 1,000 homes in this community? And it would take probably a decade or more. I mean, we don't see housing production at such a higher rate to where, and we have a housing crisis. So, um, we don't see the housing production at such a rate where it's like, well, it's okay that we're converting these residential uses to commercial uses because we're just going to see more housing come online. And what we're really saying is that we're having, um, a, a, a significant portion of our housing stock being converted from residential use to commercial use. And then, and one pushback that I said to, um, some of the folks in the real estate industry was that, you know, you think about it, it says, you know, if there's 1,000 homes, that's 1,000 individuals. It's like oftentimes those are families of multiple individuals. Um, there's many, like I, for example, live with two other people and there's many households where people who are working in our community will just be renting a room. So if you have a three bedroom house, that's, you know, three people who will no longer be able to, you know, live in that, that, um, house as a long-term rental. And so I think that it's, it's easy to say it's 1%, but we really start thinking about, like, what does that actually mean in terms of who is living in our community? It can be many more people who would have the opportunity to live here, who no longer would have that option.
Thanks. Uh, I am, I am aware of those issues for sure. Um, you know, I think another problem which we're not talking about here is the ownership of people from over the hill where there's tremendous wealth have come here and bought second homes and are not renting them out at all to anybody. They're just keeping them vacant. Um, that's a, I think, even potentially a bigger problem because then we're not realizing really any TOT or economic benefit except for maybe increased property taxes, right? So I think that is that sort of the elephant in the room we're not talking about. Uh, one of the things that, uh, you know, I'll just say that I'm concerned about is the economic impact during this downturn, um, likely in our county revenue. Um, it is one of our only economic drivers, agriculture, tourism. And to cap and then remove 10 per year, I, I am concerned about the loss of income to our county and especially with the threat of losing our federal funding in many ways. It's going to be a very difficult time. So I think the timing is not the greatest. I am an objection to six months rent provided, um, by somebody who would want to, to, to have to evict a tenant for whatever reason. That's more than any other jurisdiction in this county. That's more than the housing authority, um, would provide for somebody being evicted from a housing authority unit. would provide for somebody being evicted from a housing authority unit. It just doesn't make that, that just seems very punitive. And I absolutely understand that it's very hard to find housing. And when, and Justin, when you said supervisor Cummings, when you said how hard it would be, take a decade to build a thousand units. Well, I hope not. We need to build forty-five hundred very, in eight years. So let's get going on that. We need more housing. That's the real issue here. I would like also, I, I mean, maybe you guys, the former board had already received a report. I would like to see a report in front of us to talk about the parcels that we're rezoning for housing upcoming. I want to know the timelines, how does it work? And, and how to make that happen so that we could get housing built as soon as possible for our residents. Hotline is great. Sorry, I'm looking over my notes.
While you're looking through your notes, the housing elements really goes into detail about where the new housing development priorities are.
Right. And I think it's important for us to receive a report here and so the public can hear too. Because there's a bunch of misinformation out there currently. And, you know, I just say too, you know, regarding the parking of multiple cars, you know, in these neighborhoods, people are having such a hard time affording the rents that multiple people, as you just talked about, have to sort of rent homes together. And I think that is impacting our neighborhoods. Okay, those are my, those are my comments and questions. Thank you.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board for to entertain a motion.
So I'll go ahead and, and make the motion for the recommended actions. I'd actually like to suggest one additional recommended action that gets at this point of ensuring continued capacity in our tourism economy. And that is to direct planning staff to report back with options for a hotel overlay district that would facilitate the expansion or establishment of hotels, including in areas outside of the urban services line, such as Chaminade or Brookdale Lodge, no later than September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So this, I think, speaks to the long-term capacity again of the tourism industry in our community. You know, and speaking with the folks from Santa Cruz, it seems like we've got probably enough vacation rental capacity for the next few, three to five years. And then after that, we could start to see some crunch. And so if we start planning now to allow hotels to expand. And I, I know, for example, in my district, Chaminade has expressed interest in some, some additional investments. Then, you know, I think we, we could catch up with that. I mean, the other thing I would just point out for, for Supervisor De Sera, you know, certainly, you know, hear your concerns about economic impacts. And again, that's why we've really tried to thread the needle on this and not start revoking a bunch of permits. I mean, I can tell you, we certainly had members of the public say, hey, we should limit every one of these to, you know, no more than ninety days, right? Per vacation rental. And, and that would probably have caused chaos and a huge impact certainly on county revenues as well. I mean, certainly one area that I could propose a tweak would be even in the number of short, unhosted rentals considered in the, the Solsta. You know, we sort of, what we're bringing forward here is what we felt like would be kind of status quo. But if you feel that there should be additional capacity for, for growth there, you know, we're, I know I, I for one would probably defer to your opinion because it's your district.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll second the motion and just say as well that this, you know, this is a Supervisor Koenig and I, it took us a long time to try to come up with the proposal that's before us today. We took it around to the community. We've had overwhelming support here today for it, which is, you know, why we're trying to bring it forward and we have a balanced approach here. I would say that, you know, this is going to go to the planning commission and it's going to come back to us. And so I think there are opportunities for tweaks to be made along the way. But this is kind of, you know, based on our engagement and our trying to balance the community interest here. Kind of what we felt like would be most accepted by the community, just given the lack of opposition that's been here. You know, it really just shows the, the work that went into us to try to find a balance. Because there are people in this room who I know would appreciate us just eliminating, like even chopping in half the number of short-term rentals. I'm not a big fan of them personally, and I think that hosted should be the way to go. But we know that there's, you know, a lot of different people with a lot of different opinions. And we feel like this is, you know, really trying to, to not make everybody happy, but move us in the right direction.
I was gonna ask a question about the motion. Supervisor Koenig, can you clarify, I just don't think I heard it. Were you asking the planning commission to review the hotel plan or the staff?
Asking staff to report back with options for a hotel overlay district. And, you know, the right, that basically would be a zoning that we could apply that says we want to see a hotel developed in this area or facilitate further expansion. I mean, I can explain, you know, for example, Chaminade is located just outside the urban services line and therefore subject to a whole host of restrictions on their expansion at the same, even though they have a sewer connection, right? And so, you know, we're not going to amend our urban services line or radically change the general plan. I don't think we want to do that, but at the same time, we want to facilitate continued investment of, of that location. And, yeah, so what we're asking your staff to come back for with some options on that.
All right, thanks. And also, I just want to acknowledge, we didn't talk about that quite yet in today's agenda. But I'm assuming with county council support, it's okay to add that to an amendment, even though it wasn't agendized?
Yes, it's okay to add that as a, as a recommended action because your board isn't, isn't really taking action on anything. You're just asking basically for staff recommendation for further follow-up.
Thank you. I'd support that. I was also gonna ask if you'd consider a friendly amendment to ask the planning commission to review the impact of allowing residents to move into the ADU and converting the main house into a short-term residential. Just to see the impact on our overall housing stock, particularly, you know, outside the urban services line.
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Thank you.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Koenig and a second from Supervisor Cummings and some amendments.
Certainly Supervisor. Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say maybe that, to clarify, the section in the hosted rental, it's seven C I, which is under hosted rental and the code consideration on hosted rentals with legal dwelling units and allowing people to live in the dwelling unit and, and rent out their home. And so the impacts on that, under that section, seems like that would be, but I'm just trying to call out the exact portion of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Supervisor De Sera. Aye. Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Koenig.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next agenda item is number eight, to consider approving in concept ordinance amending section seven point one, one thirty, point zero thirty and seven, and seven point one thirty, one ten of the Santa Cruz County code regarding retail commercial cannabis operations and approve the Environmental Quality Act notice of exemption and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Sam LaForte and Malady Serino.
Good morning, Chair. Chair Hernandez and Board members. I'm Sam LaForte, Canvas Licensing Office Manager. I'm here to present on items eight and nine. I'll begin with a brief background on the items, then focus on the proposed amendments to cannabis consumption for item eight for existing retailers, then pause for public comment and we'll move on to item nine after the board acts. I got it. In November twenty twenty-three, the board considered cannabis issues in the light of sustainable growth, economic development, and responsible regulations to seek alignment with the sustainability plan updates. This spurred a robust discussion at the board that led to directing staff to seek community input on potential program changes. Staff worked with board members to identify key community members and groups to do targeted public outreach. Staff also worked with our public information officer to advertise meetings via Nextdoor, Facebook, X, and press releases. These advertisements reached over fifteen thousand one hundred combined views and eighty community members attended, as well as C O staff and HSA staff. On June fourth, staff provided the board a report on the public listening sessions the board requested. And this board had a thorough discussion on the items, especially feedback and themes from community members as detailed in that board letter. The board then directed staff to draft ordinances related to the November board memo. Today's presentation is related to the aspects associated with allowing consumption at existing retailers and retail farms. On October twenty-ninth, the draft ordinance changes were reviewed with the public and the board. And that public discussion led to additional direction, which proposed limiting cannabis flower sales at farms and the board requesting options for cannabis lounge locations. In summary, the board first proposed these changes in November twenty twenty-three. And this meeting marks the ninth public meeting on these topics. Moving on to the proposed code amendments to allow cannabis consumption at existing retailers. The proposed changes will allow cannabis retailers the option of pursuing consumption via a license amendment. There are technical requirements to prevent consumption lounges from being detectable via scent and worker protections to ensure these businesses comply with California smoke-free workplace requirements. Those protections include prohibiting workers from being required to go into areas where inhalable products are being consumed. And the consumption lounges must remain in negative pressure so that no air escapes these rooms. Next, we'll go into some research finding on consumption lounges. So we completed interviews with thirteen operators, operators of consumption lounges. And they consistently mentioned these spaces' primary benefit was educating folks on cannabis use. This graphic is from a rural Sacramento county who mentioned their monthly senior event is one of their most popular. And it's all about staff and community members learning from one another on how to use cannabis and what to expect from the various products and how they can help with their mental and physical health. Many said the space was symbiotic with local farms because those farmers' products are highlighted through farmers' market events and farm takeovers, similar to tap takeovers at breweries and beer houses. These are attractive to tourists because they provide a safe, comfortable place to consume cannabis, as mentioned by many of the operators, and it's likely the only legal place any tourist can consume cannabis when traveling. Now, lounge economics were not as easy to assess as we would have liked because most of the cannabis retailers with lounges entered the market with both operations intact. And they only use one point-of-sale software. So the lounge operators were able to provide us valuable information on their businesses. And we spoke with operators from Eureka, Weed, Ukiah, Tahoe, Ileton, Lamoore, and quite a few others, and researched several others online. The operators in tourist areas, they noted that twenty-five to thirty percent of their sales are lounge-derived. And those located outside of tourist areas noted ten to fifteen percent of their sales were lounge-derived. Lounge-derived meaning customers became regulars because of the lounge or they are tourists looking for a safe, comfortable place to consume. Now, cannabis tourism is a driver with fifty percent of millennials noting that recreational cannabis availability is a deciding factor in their travel and leisure choices. And forty-three percent of millennials say they've chosen a destination because cannabis was legal there. Around twenty percent of American leisure travelers are interested in cannabis-related experience, but that number jumps to sixty-two percent when the survey data is narrowed to adults making over fifty thousand a year. A cannabis tourism market, the value in twenty twenty-one was seventeen, seventeen point one billion dollars, with four point five billion dollars in direct sales and twelve point six billion in non-cannabis spending. Consumption is the missing piece of our legal market, as many operators said. And currently, the only place someone can legally consume is a private residence. Modesto has embraced cannabis tourism as they created the Motown Canapass. The CEO of Visit Modesto noted that the app delivered an immediate eleven percent boost to local retailers and overnight stays within Modesto. The app includes the do's and don'ts of cannabis, focusing on public and personal safety while providing discounts to local theaters, restaurants, and shops. We do anticipate a potential boost to CBT during the tourist season and potentially to TOT. Cannabis business tax and trans occupancy tax, to be clear for the public. So cannabis tourism will likely lead to an influx of non-cannabis tourist spending as tourists spending, spend an average of two dollars and eighty cents on ancillary spending for every dollar spent on cannabis. This will result in additional work for staff and we may need to adjust the license fee structure to accommodate this business type. I'm happy to answer any questions the board or the public has on the proposed amendments. Thank you.
I'm gonna check you out to the public for public comment on this item. If there's anyone wishing to address us on this item, please come up to the podium.
I can still say good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. I'm Denaldo Hernandez. I'm a physician here in Santa Cruz. I reside in Santa Cruz. And by way of background, I'm the past president of the California Medical Association. And in fact, my journey in organized medicine started as a consequence of walking through my neighborhood to work where someone decided to put a marijuana dispensary or cannabis dispensary, medicinal cannabis dispensary next to a daycare center. What was interesting about that cannabis dispensary is it focused on ice cream-based related products across the street from Dominican Hospital. What I asked you to really consider this is in terms of where you place these locations and why it becomes important. And I also, by way of background, I was in a group of physicians that voted in favor of removing our opposition in organized medicine against decriminalization, thus paving the way for that to occur. When Gavin Newsom came here on my invite in two thousand sixteen, he talked about dispensaries, they would be regulated, they'd be, be taken care of, and they would also be safe in terms of making sure that cannabis would not be used in a manner which would allow it from these heavy machinery or driving. A lot of locations in our county are going, by definition, are going to require individuals drive to these localities. The data right now indicates, and there is a positive data, given the time that with that decriminalization, now legalization has occurred. There is no great methodology, which tells how much one is intoxicated by the level of THC that they've consumed. The data is lacking. It's just not there. Furthermore, products that are currently being available, both by consumption, by smoking or by consumption, by consumables in an oral manner, have very, very high levels of THC now. They're much, much more potent than when we first envisioned what was going forward. So I would ask this board to really consider that. I work at Dominican Hospital. I take care of patients on a daily basis that come in with substance use disorder and with cannabis use disorder issues. It is real. It's there. And we really need to be careful as we proceed going forward. The promise of revenues coming in for substance use disorder has not been manifested. And that needs to be taken into consideration as well. I thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name is Scott Garner. I'm a captain with the Scotts Valley Police Department. As a twenty-seven-year first responder in Santa Cruz County, I humbly request that you guys consider the following community safety red flags before moving forward with this motion. Unlike alcohol, there's no widely accepted equipment or legal standard to determine marijuana intoxication. Law enforcement officers cannot rely on breathalyzers or specific blood alcohol concentrations like the point oh eight blood alcohol levels as we do with alcohol. This requires a specially trained certified officer, as called a drug recognition expert, which is four-plus weeks of specific training to get to that point. The impacts of marijuana compared to alcohol also are delayed. So a person who may believe they're okay to drive as they continue to drive could get more impaired. Scotts Valley and Highway Nine are already high-risk routes with winding roads, frequent collisions, bicyclists, pedestrians, students, and limited safe pullout areas. Adding marijuana lounges increases the likelihood of impaired driving in these areas, particularly connected to Highway Seventeen. While alcohol DUIs remain a challenge for us, officers at least have the tools to detect and prosecute impaired drivers. Without similar tools for marijuana, the law enforcement is at a major disadvantage in keeping our roadway safe. I heard one comment earlier about getting rid of bars to accommodate this and make it equivalent to the marijuana. What it really is, is getting rid of the BAC, the point oh eight comparison. You would still have bars. You just wouldn't have a way to detect or monitor what is the legal limit. Marijuana lounges mean a higher probability of impaired drivers, leading to increased strain on local law enforcement and emergency services. In Santa Cruz County alone, we average about four DUI arrests a day with alcohol. That's including the billions of dollars in education that we spend and the, and the ride shares and all the programs and support for that, right? So you just pick up the phone and call somebody, but we still have four DUIs a day. Until there's a reliable way to measure marijuana impairment, improving smoking, lounges, and premature and places an unnecessary burden on public safety resources and community safety. The county should prioritize road safety and capabilities, enforcement capabilities before expanding access to public marijuana consumption. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Grant Bowles. I'm a lieutenant with the California Highway Patrol and assigned to the Santa Cruz area. And I've been on the highway patrol for twenty-two years and seventeen years within Santa Cruz County. I want to provide a few statistics. In twenty twenty-four, we arrested over one thousand DUI drivers. And of those one thousand one hundred and fifty were drug-related arrest. This requires additional training, which the captain just spoke of. CHP officers receive about a hundred and fifty hours of basic DUI training. hours of basic DUI training, and currently we have five DRE officers, which do the advanced evaluation and detention of marijuana impaired drivers. As the captain spoke of, there's no presumptive limits for marijuana, as with alcohol, so that requires a DRE to do an evaluation for the successful prosecution of DUI drivers in court. The Santa Cruz area has a high number of collisions involving bicyclists, pedestrians, and impaired drivers, and this adds another traffic safety issue. We have a saying that predictable is preventable, and this is a predictable public safety issue, and the CHP Santa Cruz area does not support these lounges. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi, Pat Malo. I've had the pleasure of working on cannabis issues for over a decade now with many, if not all of you. And this thing, I think, has, you know, been in the works for quite a bit. We've had many conversations with all of you, with the community. There's been many, many opportunities to build in whatever safeguards we need to build into this thing to keep going forward. And I think that's what's lost in a lot of these conversations is that we're not coming out of a vacuum where there is no cannabis and debating whether we should have it or not. In many ways, this is the least amount of cannabis that has been in Santa Cruz County in, you know, years and years and years. And we often associate the problems with unregulated cannabis, which I would argue that a lot of the issues that we're just spoken about with DUIs and such, that cannabis probably wasn't purchased at a, you know, licensed dispensary in town, because still, to this day, most of the cannabis that's purchased is not from licensed dispensaries. There's hemp shops and underground things because we've made the regulations so arduous that no one can participate in it. We used to have a huge industry in this community that I know all of you know about, and it used to benefit all sorts of normal people, and it was a way that everyone survived. And so we've made that so arduous that no one's participating anymore. We've created more problems with the outside of the regulatory market from having the regulations be unworkable. So I know that it's, you know, it's fun and it feels good to build in all of these extra measures, and, you know, I think that a lot of the time we create the same problem that we're trying to deal with by making it too arduous. And right now, dispensaries, whether or not you think they're rolling in dough, they're not. Some of them are closing, I believe, and we need to do every single thing we can to advantage this experiment called licensed legal cannabis in Santa Cruz, so it doesn't fail. Thank you.
If anyone wants to speak to that, please line up or sit in the front row so that we can do it in a time expedient way. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Nordahl. Excuse me. And I just want to express my support for the consumption lounges, more just as Team Santa Cruz Cannabis. Anything that helps benefit this industry and especially providing positive experiences with cannabis, I think is a good thing. And I just want to state that one of the key components of cannabis consumption really is the social aspect and being able to be with other people. A lot of times, and cannabis, for a lot of people, it's a way to unwind. Some people don't like alcohol or other activities, so cannabis seems to be a safe, productive way to actually unwind and get to know other people and have a nice social experience. And one of our crises that's going on right now is we kind of have a loneliness crisis just in society. So anything that encourages social community in a responsible, professional way, I think is actually a good thing. Whether you're a fan of cannabis or not, there are a lot of people who just cannabis is their thing, and there are a lot of cannabis enthusiasts, and I think making it more of a social, communal, non-stigmatized activity and where we have a safe place is going to be a good thing where a lot of people can benefit. And as far as the driving safety, I agree, do not want to see any driving. So as far as measures to make sure people aren't driving immediately after a lounge experience, I think is a good thing and support that. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Now, John Kulodinsky, cannabis operator. Again, thank you for taking on this issue. I know that the evolution of the cannabis industry in our community over the last decade plus has been a very contentious issue, and I applaud your leadership in working through the difficult decision-making process to strike the balance between bringing a community together, ensuring that there's safe access, and in general, protecting the amazing county that we all share together. You know, as Supervisor DeSerpia mentioned, you know, our major economic drivers are agriculture and tourism, and I think this is an opportunity to really highlight the uniqueness of what, one of the ways that makes Santa Cruz unique and allowing us to be able to share that with not only members of our community, but also the greater population in a very positive way. What we're talking about is creating safe access and opportunities to educate customers in a real-world, hands-on situation. I can't think of a better way to ensure that we keep people out of the hospitals by creating a safe space where people can share experiences and learn together how this medicine is best used for their personal needs. The goal of consumption is to create a safe space where members of the community and beyond can share and learn all the ways that cannabis can improve their lives. It's a modality for attracting tourism and creating community, ensuring responsible cannabis use. I think we should shift away from this narrative of suppressing our constituents from collectively congregating and pushing cannabis back into the darkness to a new paradigm where we celebrate the individuality of both cannabis and the humans that use it. This is a vital step in creating responsible cannabis use in our community, and I hope you seriously consider this. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks, Sam, for presenting this amendment, and thank you to the board for your consideration. I'm James Cunningham. I'm the founder of Fog City Farms and now the Fog Bank Dispensary in SoCal. Fog City Farms is a local producer, manufacturer, distributor of cannabis products in the legal market. These are safe and tested products that we take a lot of pride in producing locally by local people that are all members of this community. Now that we're in the retail space, what we've experienced is that the average age of folks that are coming and visiting our dispensary is between like 30 and 50 years old. So we're not advocates of marketing towards young people, and we're definitely not even drawing them into our dispensaries, you know. So obviously, there's other methods of acquiring these products in the market, and what these do is they enable us to provide a safe and secure place to provide education on the product, which is our main goal. And that also, you know, the county is protecting us as local businesses by enabling us to do this because it differentiates us from the rest of the greater industry, which is significantly oversaturated, tremendously oversaturated. There's producers in this state that are producing more themselves than the entire state could ever consume, you know. So that shows you what your local operators are up against, and us being able to rely on our local community and provide education and show what differentiates us to our consumers and create consumer loyalty on a local basis can help insulate us from the rest of the market and create stability in this community. And so we appreciate you guys for considering it.
We can hold the applause and allow the speakers to speak on the podium.
Hello. My name is Helen Seifert. I'm a relatively new bud tender at Big Peet's and Felton. I've lived in Santa Cruz Mountains my entire life, and I love the community. And I never realized how many elderly people actually use cannabis to help them with their daily lives and pain, and a lot of them, they don't have places to smoke. And this would be a great opportunity so they can have a safe space for themselves to be at, because I know my dad, he, because it wasn't legal back in the day, he got in trouble a lot, even though he was a medical user. And I don't want to see that happen to a family member that might just need it to take care of some pain, and then something happens to them. When I was listening to other people's talk, I also heard about Highway 17 and how the dangers and everything. And growing up, I grew up on 17. I live off of 17, and I can tell you, the thing that scares people the most is the road and people just not being comfortable driving. Yes, there's drugs involved. Yes, there's statistics like that, but just by an outside perspective and just observing, it's just people scared of the roads, scared of circumstances, and just scared of life sometimes. And like, everyone has their own issues, and I am very thankful that you guys are even thinking about the idea of this because it will help our community, at least I think in my eyes. I love our community, and I'm really thankful that you guys are open to the opportunity for this. Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, supervisors. Thank you so much for your consideration today. My name is Bailey, and I am the Marketing Director for Treehouse and The Hook dispensaries in Capitola and Watsonville in SoCal. And I'm here to voice my strong support for allowing licensed cannabis consumption lounges in Santa Cruz County. Currently, adults 21 and over can legally purchase cannabis, yet they lack legal spaces to consume it outside of their homes. This creates a void, if you will, in our community. Consumption lounges offer a regulated and responsible solution. These spaces would feature strict ID checks, proper ventilation, no alcohol policies, promoting safe and legal use. Research from states with legalized cannabis shows no significant increases in teen use or DUIs. Lounges could further enhance public safety by providing designated consumption areas and safe transportation options. Economically, the benefits are clear. West Hollywood projects 5.5 million in annual tax revenue from its cannabis lounges. Santa Cruz, already a cannabis-friendly destination, could see similar gains, boosting tourism, creating jobs, and supporting local businesses. This aligns with our county's progressive values while keeping consumption responsible. More than that, these lounges would foster community restoration and wellness, similarly to cafes, wellness studios, or tea houses. They provide a safe and welcoming space for people to relax, connect with each other, and enjoy cannabis responsibly. Santa Cruz has led the way in wellness, culture, and personal freedom. Approving this ordinance modernizes our policies, benefits both consumers and community. I urge the board to move forward and treat cannabis fairly, just like other regulated industries. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Bryce Perriessa. I am one of the co-founders of Treehouse Dispensary. I got my paper. I wanted to just touch on a couple of topics that I feel are kind of important and imperative of this conversation. And, you know, there's a lot of concerned community members, members of public health, that are validly concerned about substance use in our community, especially amongst young people. And I think it is a shared concern of those of us in the cannabis industry, as well as of any of us that are parents, of which I am one. I think what often gets lost in that conversation is it's convoluted that legal recreational cannabis is actually contributing to a lot of these issues. I think what's been overwhelmingly shown since legalization, both locally here in Santa Cruz and is validated by the Healthy Kids Survey, where almost every single metric of youth use of drugs and alcohol has gone down substantially since 2015. We're at half of the rates for grade 11 for current cannabis use within 30 days when they were, when the survey took place. We're from a high of 46% down to 26% for non-traditional schooling. So, you know, what has been shown overwhelmingly over and over again is that regulated and legalized cannabis actually decreases youth consumption. And that is a point, when you look at the broad set of data, whether it's from the American Psychiatric Association, whether it's from the Centers for Disease Control, or whether it's from our own local surveys, that overwhelmingly shows that that's the case. And so I think it's important just to note that these lounges are going to be for adults. We're not proliferating new normalization of cannabis by having new spots pop up throughout the county. They're already at retail dispensaries or co-located on adjoining parcels. We can't advertise to minors. We don't advertise to minors. There's not an abundance of cannabis advertising that you're seeing now because we have prohibitions that severely restrict how we communicate these things. So this is just a sensible escalation of current cannabis policy and gives adults somewhere safe to consume. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online?
Yes, sure. Genoa, your microphone is now available. Thank you. Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Genoa Brown. I'm a local business owner, educator, and mother. I want to begin by acknowledging that the normalization of cannabis use and substance use in general can be frightening, especially as a parent and community member. I live and work on the Tanyary Arts Campus, and after six years of waiting and unstable housing, my family has finally found our home in one of the most important and vibrant communities in this town. However, living in this community means I cannot ignore the reality around me. Our unhoused neighbors, many times very publicly, are suffering from mental health and substance use disorders. This crisis is not abstract for me. I keep Narcan in my classroom on campus. Last year, I had to use it to save a man's life right in the parking lot of my home and business. He was actively overdosing, actively dying. For those of us who live and work in these spaces, exposure to substance use, safe, legal, illegal, and unsafe is a constant reality for adults and children alike. Because of this, I have the privilege, I don't have the privilege of shielding my children from the realities of substance use. Instead, I have regular conversations with my eight- and 15-year-old about fentanyl, alcohol, cannabis, caffeine, what have you, what they are, how they affect the body, and what safe and unsafe use looks like. They see firsthand the real-life consequences of untreated mental illness, substance use disorders, including an economic disparities. Shielding children from these realities is a privilege. Access to resources is a privilege. Privacy is a privilege, just as safe, private, and legal access to cannabis is a privilege. If we are truly concerned about substance use, why do we ignore visible suffering on our streets and the data on a more, on a far more widely available substance such as alcohol? Access to safe, legal cannabis for adults is not the cause of our community's struggles. When we scapegoat others in an effort to ease our fears, we lose the opportunity to come together to learn and to address the real causes of suffering: untreated mental illness, systemic economic disparities, and lack of resources. Instead of turning away, let's focus on real solutions. Larry, your microphone's now available. Larry, we're unable to hear you.
Can you advise him how to do it, too?
I am seeing that he's unmuting, but it seems like he's having some kind of technical difficulty on his end. I'm going to go ahead and move to the next speaker. Nadia, your microphone is now available.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nadia Alami. I am an adolescent medical provider in the community, and I'm just calling to weigh in on this conversation. I'm hearing a lot of people from the business side say that, you know, these are safe spaces for folks using cannabis. I just, you know, being in the public health space and seeing patients come in every day, I don't know how we're defining safe. You know, cannabis is not legal at the federal level, so we're not really studying some of these very highly potent products that are being consumed and sold and marketed at these places. I know that there has been talk about not marketing to younger kids or adolescents, but if you go on the websites, I mean, these things are packaged in Skittles packages, 100-milligram gummies. Again, that is not a safe product for anyone, let alone a young person. So I think the ask really from public health is, let's not be naive that these places, let's not tout this as like, this is a safe and responsible thing to do. I think what's safe and responsible is to look at these products and see what the effects might be, not only on young people, which we know has an impact, is leading to, what I see in my clinic, psychosis, untreatable depression, cannabis hyperemesis. You guys, these are things I see every week. I'm having the hardest time trying to treat my patients, and I work with adolescents, so I recognize it's not legal, but I will tell you, a majority, actually, every single one of my patients that I ask, where do you get it? They're getting it from the dispensary. So as much as you don't want to think, okay, well, it's not legal, and we're trying to protect them, that's where they're getting it. And so let's not have a farce. If you're wanting the economic benefit, yes, you will get it, but I think it's going to be at the cost of public health. So let's look at these products and figure out a way to regulate them if you are going to provide these spaces so folks are consuming in a safe way. Thank you.
Johnny, your microphone's now available. As a reminder, it's *6 to mute or unmute yourself.
As a reminder, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself. I'm gonna move to the next speaker. Mac, your microphone's now available. Hello? Hello, we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm, so I just speak my piece. That's.
Yes, your, your comment has begun.
Okay, um, hi, my name is Mac and I definitely support the cannabis consumption lounges. I, I think as an adult who doesn't drink alcohol and doesn't like to be in bar spaces, um, I'm really excited for a space that I can go where people will be, um, relatively coherent and, um, just feels like a safe space. That will be created in a town that doesn't have very many options for late night, um, situations. Also, I do see that there will be economic benefits from having consumption lounges in Santa Cruz. Um, it will drive tourism, increase tax revenue and create jobs. And there's examples in Hollywood where they are creating 5.5 annually in tax, new tax revenue with the consumption lounges. I do know that, you know, I've been to many cannabis stores and there are very strict ID checks. I, I remember when I first started going, I was like, wow, this is kind of annoying. Just, um, how regulated the, the cannabis stores are. So I do not fear that there will be an issue with young people getting in easily. Am I still good to go?
Yes, you have, you have approximately 20 seconds.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Yes, and it seems as if the evidence does not support concerns about youth access DUIs or public health harms. And as I said, I believe though, that a regulated cannabis consumption lounge will provide adults with a legal safe space to consume and reduce public.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm gonna circle back to our two callers that were unable to connect to see if they're able to connect now. Larry, your microphone's now available.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, finally I got connected. Boy, this is a hassle. Am I able to speak now or what?
Yes, your comment has begun.
Okay, uh, Board of Supervisors, thank you for listening. I tried to get on here earlier with your, um, ADU conversation. My question is for that newcomer, oh, you're all transplants. I was born and raised here, third generation. You're all transplants, so I don't know what interest you have in our community. Justin Cummings, as a Coastal Commission Chairman, you adopted an ordinance banning all legal residences in RVs, uh, trailers, uh, motorhomes, whatever in the county. Do you realize you impacted thousands of people, making them homeless?
That's not on the agenda item right now. Please speak on the agenda item that's right now.
Okay, on the agenda item right now, I'm too stoned to talk to you. God damn you people. Get the hell out of my town.
Thank you. Thank you.
Johnny, your microphone is now available.
For its regulated legal recreational use. In addition, I'm also a gainfully employed professional in cannabis industry, which stands as the largest legal cannabis market, not only in the US but globally. Uh, three major points I'd like to mention, um, in favor of the consumption lounges in the community. One is going to be the, uh, boosting the local economy and tourism. Santa Cruz thrives on tourism and cannabis lounges are for safe, legal and social space for both locals and visitors to enjoy cannabis responsibly. Uh, just like breweries and wine tasting rooms drive revenue, lounges create jobs, increase tax revenue and attract cannabis tourism, keeping, uh, dollars circulating within our community. With no legal spaces, um, to consume, many residents and visitors are forced to consume in public parks, spaces, even vehicles, creating potential safety concerns. A dedicated lounge ensures safe off-street consumption prevents DUIs and provides education on responsible use. Thirdly is the equity and social experience. Not everyone has a private space where they can legally consume renters, tourists. Those share in, uh, in shared housing deserve a welcoming place to enjoy cannabis, learn about it, just like alcohol, consumers have bars. Lounges foster community inclusivity and cannabis education, strengthening Santa Cruz's identity as a progressive and cannabis-friendly city. That's about it. Thank you so much for your time.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Thank you. I'll bring you back to the board. Uh, just for the record, I was born and raised in Santa Cruz County. Spent many, you know, my youth in Santa Cruz as well. Uh, any, any board members that have any comments, questions, Supervisor Cummings?
Yeah, before I make my comments and questions, I just want to see if staff could follow up on some of the comments that were made, if there's anything that you have in response to some of the information that came out, the comments that came out of the community.
Is there something specific you want, a question, you have a question about?
I just saw you all scribbling away. Wasn't sure if there was.
Just taking notes so we understand the concerns that have been raised by the public.
Okay, great. Um, first of all, I want to thank the staff for all their extensive outreach. I mean, I think one thing that we should be aware of is that since this has come to our board, um, you know, it's been two years of ongoing outreach with a variety of members throughout the community. And I know that just from engaging with members in the cannabis community and other, um, members, um, throughout the community, that these conversations have been in progress for a very long time. And I think that what's being proposed here is, is a pilot, right? I mean, I think that, um, back in the day when legalization was moving forward, there was a lot of, you know, the sky's going to fall if this happens. And what we've seen since then is that has not been the case. Um, and what I have, I can say from experience in this community is that the retailers who exist here are extremely responsible. They take, um, their businesses and their, um, commitments to ensuring its safety very seriously. And so, um, you know, I think that we need to continue as we move forward to ensure that the operators are gonna operate in a safe way, um, to ensure that, um, you know, products aren't getting into the hands of children and that we are, um, operating in a way that's going to be compatible with our community. Because, um, I think to some of the comments that have been made, there have been negative stigmas for a very long time around people who use cannabis. But what we do know is that there are people in this community who use this as medication. I mean, that's how this whole movement started in the first place was because of the fact that, you know, when cannabis was illegally, was, was made illegal initially, it was all about racism and it was all about arresting black and brown people and people who were leftists who got into the, those kinds of substances. And, um, today and what we've seen over time is that there's a lot of, um, medicinal benefits from this. And a lot of the research that could have happened in the past has been lost due to illegal, illegalization of these types of products. I share the same concerns that have been brought up around trying to reduce access for children. And I think that one point that was made is that kids can go on Instagram and online and buy a lot of, a variety of these different kinds of products. And so I think that we need to start thinking about, you know, if we want to protect children in our community, where are they accessing these products the most? And part of that is figuring out how we can reduce the sales and access to children to these products online. There were some, I want to shift gears a little because I know that there were some attachments with some statistics that I wasn't, I really comfortable with and I kind of read into some of the documents and then decided to like just do some searches on my own. And I just want to highlight a few things because I think there's, um, some of the information came to be skewed in a certain way. And I want to make sure that there's also, you know, opportunities for us to hear other forms of information that are out there. Um, the National Institute of Health, um, submitted a report, December 17th, 2024, reported use of most drugs among adolescents remained low in 2024. I'm just gonna read a little bit of this because I know there's, we got, there's another, other items we need to consider. But after declining significantly during the 20, the COVID-19 pandemic, substance use among adolescents has continued to hold steady at lowered levels for the fourth year in a row, according to the latest results from the Monitoring of the Future Survey, which is funded by the National Institute of Health. These recent data continue to document stable and declining trends in the use of most drugs among young people. And there's a quote from one of the doctors, "This trend in the reduction of substance use among teenagers is unprecedented," said Nora D. Valkow, MD, Director of National Institute of Health, National Institute on Drug Abuse. "We must continue to investigate factors that contribute to this lowered risk substance abuse to tailor interventions to support the continuation of this trend." And, um, one of the things to highlight, um, that was also in that report is that the number one, um, substance that's used among youth is alcohol. And we continue to proliferate breweries, wineries and bars throughout our communities. And that is the number one substance that youth are getting into. And again, I've said this at other meetings when this has come up, you can walk into a, a kid can walk into a gas station and immediately have access to alcohol in terms of their ability to just open up one of the fridges, take a bottle of alcohol out and run out the door if they really wanted to. To get into a dispensary, you have to go through such a line of defense there. It is, is extremely difficult for kids to even get inside a dispensary to get access to these kinds of products. So I think that's something worth keeping in mind as well. Another study that was done, California Youth Cannabis Use, 2013 to 2019, um, what it shows and what this highlighted too, was that, um, when we look at cannabis use across the United States, it is lowest in the state of California amongst youth. So in state, in a state where cannabis has been, you know, medical cannabis has been an option for a very long time. We have a lower cannabis youth, use among youth when compared to the other states throughout the country. And, you know, finally, we're going to talk about it in another presentation, but what we've seen here locally even is that cannabis use among youth has, has been declining over time. And I think that really, um, is testament to the amazing work that our county staff does around education. And I see this opportunity to have these lounges as another way of providing educational opportunities because of the fact that, to the credit and so some of the information that's been provided, we are seeing, um, products that have higher levels of cannabis. We are seeing products that some people have never seen before in terms of tinctures and different types of edibles. And these types of lounges will allow people the opportunity to kind of learn in the presence of someone who's educated and professional in this field, like what they're getting themselves into. They can help them, walk them through the process of consuming these products in a way that they're not over-consuming them. And so I see that educational aspect as well. And then I just want to make one point because I know that there was some study that showed like a 400% increase in DUIs after the passage of, after legalization in Canada. Um, I had some questions around that because it was percentages and not raw numbers. But when looking here locally, to California, um, there was the, um, the California Department of Motor Vehicles, 2022 Annual Report of the California DUI Management Information System. And what they showed in that report is that if you looked at, and they had DUIs going back from 2010 to 2020. And what you see is that, um, in terms of DUI arrests back in 2010, we were at 195,879 DUI arrests in the state of California in 2020, 95,957. And that trend continued to decrease and is continuing to, to decrease over time. And even when, and you see 2016 when the legalization occurred, there was a tiny little blip up and then it just continued to go back down. And I think effective education is what's going to help us continue down that trend. And when we talk about Santa Cruz within that same report, they did show numbers for Santa Cruz County, 2018, 1,508 arrests for DUIs, 2020, 12, 1,288. So the 20% reduction over those two, over that two-year period. And so I think it's important that as we're moving forward, I mean, I think staff's done a great job of doing outreach, getting this information. And we should provide an opportunity to move forward and to continue to track this data over time to see, is this something that's compatible with our community? How can we make it work, working with the industry? Because there's been a lot of tax dollars that have gone towards, um, bringing this item to us today. There's been a lot of outreach done and I think, and I'm going to be supportive and I'm actually happy to make the motion when the time comes to move forward, um, with this ordinance. And I, and I will also say that when this first came to us, I was a little skeptical on how it was brought forward. And I, I want to thank the board and our staff for actually, um, going out and doing the outreach, which I thought was really critical. And, and what for us today, I think really reflects what the community sees as a path forward. So, um, I have to make the motion when the time comes, but thank you very much.
Do I noted? Supervisor DeSerpah?
Thank you. Um, so just, um, it, it for total transparency. When I was three years old, my father was killed in a car crash. That was alcohol related, leaving my mother pregnant and me as a three-year-old, thrusting us immediately into poverty and making our lives much, much harder than they needed to be. I had no medical insurance. I didn't until sometime in my late twenties when I got my first job. Um, my main concern here, uh, is people on the road that are under the influence. The two areas in my district, um, that could potentially have a lounge, jump right out onto SoCal Drive, one of them very close to the junior high. There's no bike lanes in that area. There are a lot of kids on bikes. There's a lot of people trying to get up and down that corridor and it's very, very dangerous. So to have people going into a lounge, getting high and then trying to get out onto SoCal Drive, is not, is not a good idea. And my constituents don't like this idea and I cannot support this today. Thank you.
Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I want to thank you for the presentation. I recognize that I'm joining this board after years of work has gone into developing local cannabis policy. It's really focused on balancing both the economic and community benefit. And while the train left the station years ago, this does not need to be a runaway train. At every stop along the way, it's the job of the board to pause, evaluate the information before us and then make reasons, reasoned decisions on behalf of the community. So the only districts that have cannabis distributors or cannabis retailers are D1, D2 and D5. Since there are two retailers in my district and five retailers in District Two and both Kimber, Supervisor DeSerpah and I are new to the board, um, I hope that you'll give us an opportunity to have our questions answered and our voices heard on this important issue that impacts our residents before coming to a decision. Based on the testimony today, which included our county superintendent, who had a letter signed by every single superintendent in the district stating his opposition and the report from the Health Services Agency, which we're going to hear from later, which I'm looking forward to that report. Actually, for the record, I had hoped we'd have a chance to hear that report before making these decisions about further ordinances because it's just a part of the greater conversation. I'm really having some concerns about the proposal that's in front, in front of us. Regardless, um, you know, those, the letter and the report is about youth access. And I'll acknowledge that the ordinance in front of us is not about youth, but it is about public safety. And my main priority today is about the safety of the thousands of families and people who drive throughout this county every single day, including those along the Highway Nine corridor, those like my own family, because one of these dispensaries is located between my home and my kid's school, which means I drive by it multiple times a day. The proposed ordinance will put more impaired drivers on our roadways, which puts all of us at risk. In my district, these two dispensaries, you know, they're on our main highway, Highway Nine, a windy road. I don't think we need to encourage tourism and visitors to come onto our mountain roads to become impaired and then get back on our mountain roads in their vehicles or their motorcycles and drive along our highways. And so I want to start by thanking, um, Lieutenant Bowles and Captain Garner for being here today. I do have a follow-up question for one of you, if you're still in the audience somewhere. I think you might be there. He's right. If you don't mind coming up, um, I would, thank you for being here. And, um, both of you are under two-minute limit, so I think you went very quickly. But I would like to hear a little bit about the distinction between, um, identifying impaired drivers who are under the influence of alcohol versus marijuana and what, uh, options are available to law enforcement or what challenges. and what options are available to law enforcement or what challenges exist in that testing.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to explain. So first and foremost, it takes a drug recognition expert, which requires, I believe, four additional weeks of specific certified in training and infield certification. And basically, in order to establish PC to arrest on a DUI for marijuana, we have to diagnose how the driving ability was impacted specifically by the marijuana. Whereas with alcohol-related investigations, they're set standards. We know that your body's impacted certain ways through alcohol. We know that, you know, the test to establish those impairments and we know the legal limit. And if you're over that, we know that you're not legally safe to drive. That doesn't exist for marijuana. And so it'd be kind of nice if a lot of that funding that we're talking about would go towards establishing that criteria to help public safety in that measure. We obviously want everybody to be safe. And something that is personal to me is, you know, as a 27-year first responder, I've given death notifications to families multiple times from alcohol-related collisions or marijuana-related collisions. It's not something I ever want to do again. So I just think it's premature to approve it under the circumstances that we just don't have the ability to enforce it. It's very difficult. Another challenge for us is staffing. Everybody's having kind of a staffing crisis. So, you know, in my department, I have one certified DRE, Drug Recognition Expert. He doesn't work 24/7. He's on vacations. He's on holidays and he, you know, typically works a graveyard shift. And so if we have an investigation outside of the time he's working, we have to call him in. While we're under the time constraints of legal detentions, also if he's not available, we have to call mutual aid from allied agencies. So it's a huge cost and staffing issue for us. That answer anything?
That's really helpful. Thank you for being here. And was there anything you wanted to add, Lieutenant Bowles, to that point?
I'll be, I'll be happy to answer any more questions. But again, just the resources that we have available, again, CHP resources are, we have five drug recognition experts. It's professional standard that's difficult to keep up and it really taxes our officers. And to get successful prosecution in this county and most counties in California require the testimony and the the drug recognition expert to provide a test, which takes about an hour on top of a normal DUI evaluation. So it's resources and it's all those things.
Thank you for that. Thank you both for being here. That kind of tees up my next question, and this is actually for members of the board. Because just so everybody knows, to adhere to the Brown Act, I'm not able to speak to my fellow board members until we're up here, which is why I'm asking this question now. And so I wanted to see, you know, given that we just heard from a captain from the city of Scotts Valley that there's resource challenges with enforcement. If either representatives from D4 or D3 had a chance to speak with representatives from the city of Santa Cruz or the city of Watsonville regarding this proposal. And that's because I did that with the city in my jurisdiction. I did speak with Mayor Tim, who opposes this recommendation as well as City of Scotts Valley Police Department. Have either of you heard from the cities in your districts about this proposal?
There'll be none in the city of Watson though. The sheriff said no comment on it.
I mean, to clarify, I guess the question is, we know that people will get in their car and drive from the dispensary or from the consumption lounge throughout the county, right? Like, you know, they'll, they'll drive from becoming from over the hill, they'll drive from SLV through the city of Scotts Valley onto 17. So I guess that was the impact that I was asking about.
Well, I'll just say that in general, one of the things in my experience is that board members aren't supposed to tell cities what to do and city council members aren't supposed to tell the board what to do. And so in that regard, I mean, we are making a decision about something that's occurring in the unincorporated area of Santa Cruz. And so that's what our focus has been in terms of the direction we provided and how we've been engaging with staff. I will say that, you know, I guess the big thing for me is that, you know, legalization has happened. And I think what we're trying to do is to try to create spaces where and educate people on the ways that they can consume these products in a way that's safe. Part of that being that they don't get behind the cars and drive. And, you know, again, I'll point to the fact that we don't have these conversations around alcohol at all. And meanwhile, we continue to see the proliferation of alcohol throughout our community. So I guess if that's to answer your question, I've been really focused on the meeting with the businesses, meeting with people who have concerns. And to be quite frank, I mean, over the two years that we've been having these conversations, we have not been hearing a bunch of pushback from folks, whether it's a city council or otherwise, or a lot of people in the community. It wasn't until very recently, we started hearing these complaints. And so, you know, I'm going based on my experience, the outreach that's been done by the county staff. Because again, when this first came to our attention, I, one of the things that I required was that we go do outreach to understand how the community felt. There were people in the audience at that time who hadn't heard about this. The county staff went out and did their due diligence. They did their work. They brought it back to the staff or brought it back to the board. And decreasingly over time, we heard less and less and less concerns with this. And so that's what's really driving my decisions here today is the work that the county staff has been doing and conducting over the past two years.
And I think a lot of the concerns that have been brought up have been discussed for since pre-pandemic with the C4 Committee. And I think there's been, there's been mutual agreement with the nonprofit partners on the framework of this.
Okay, so it sounds like the city of Watsonville, the city of Santa Cruz haven't had a chance to like weigh in or share if they support this ordinance is what I'm hearing. And then I think this last one is just to clarify, I heard Supervisor Cummings say that this is a pilot project, but I didn't see that this was a pilot project in the proposal, which is correct.
The pilot project is for the retail farm program. This is not a pilot project.
Okay, so given that there's no pilot associated with this from the cannabis licensing office, what is your plan to review, to report back on changes in traffic incidents, drug-related DUIs or anything else related in the vicinity of these sites?
I want to clarify the pilot project associated with this. The board did not proceed with making it a pilot project. This was not a staff decision. That was board direction.
Right, that was my understanding from the last meeting in January. So since this is a full-blown ordinance that, you know, going into, could potentially go into code permanently, is there a opportunity to review in any short period of time? The outcome of the impact?
So we, we always report to the board twice a year. It's required of us. If the board chooses for us to report more frequently, they can direct us to do so. Thanks. That concludes my questions, Chair.
Supervisor Koenig?
Chair. Thank you, Chair. Well, we've heard quite a bit of testimony from, from everyone today. I thank everyone for coming out to speak. So I'll keep my comments relatively brief. I am supportive of the ordinance today for a few reasons. First of all, to me, this is about creating a viable legal framework for cannabis. We've heard consistently from dispensary owners that they're being outcompeted by the black market, which typically involves someone driving to someone's house, sharing cannabis together and someone leaving that situation high. I mean, I also find it like this idea that all of a sudden there's going to be all these high people driving around that there haven't been before, sort of laughable. There's no legal place for tourists to consume cannabis in our community. How do you think they're getting to dispensaries? They're driving. Then they're either probably going to a parking lot nearby or to the beach or to the redwoods and lighting up there. And so if anything, I think having a designated place where people could consume is going to bring more awareness about the fact that maybe they should take an Uber to the dispensary or to the cannabis lounge. Maybe they should ask a friend to pick them up or drive them. So, and for me, more than anything, some of the data that suggests this might be the case is in the health report. It's about this, the Santa Cruz County student marijuana usage. And we've actually seen a consistent decline, almost 20% in the last 16 years among ninth graders, even despite legalization. In fact, that had almost, had no measurable impact whatsoever. And that's because our community already has, cannabis is already prevalent in our community. And so again, this is about creating a viable legal framework, will there be more opportunities for productive social interaction, for education, for monitoring, for messaging, for dosage? Yeah, and we, you know, some member of the public challenges how we could consider this, you know, health in all policies. I think that's exactly it, that we have a viable legal framework where we can actually get this messaging out and where we can actually help monitor people and say, you know what, maybe you should hang out in this lounge for another hour. You look a little debilitated. No one's going to do that when someone's getting high on the beach. So, you know, again, I think that for all those reasons, this is a good thing to move forward with. And, and will help Santa Cruz to share what's unique about this place. And I'm supportive of the actions. I'd also be happy to motion that we include in the regular updates from the cannabis licensing office, some information about whether we've seen any increase in cannabis rate-related DUIs or other potential negative impacts from this policy. That's it.
Additional comment?
I actually, it just reminded me through Supervisor Martinez's question about, has this been brought to the city before? And I'll say that back when I was on the city council, yes, we did start having those conversations. And we were starting to move forward with exploring onsite consumption lounges in the city of Santa Cruz and then the pandemic hit. And so then we had to stop. We were pretty much then just reverting back to essential services. And by the time there was an opportunity to have that conversation open again, my time on the city council was over. I joined the Board of Supervisors and Supervisors. Koenig and Hernandez had brought this forward, which allowed me to explore. But to your point, yes, we had started having those conversations with the city of Santa Cruz when I was on the city council as a city council member. And so, and I don't know, Felipe, if you want to make your comments now, if I should make the motion, then you can make your final comments.
Kind of work.
I'll make the, I'll move the recommended, the staff recommendations for this item with the friendly amendments made by Supervisor Koenig to bring back information during our updates on cannabis DUI-related offenses.
Second.
Would you consider a friendly amendment? A friendly amendment to provide additional direction to the CAO to share the health impact policy statement included in this item with the four incorporated cities and the county office of education to ensure that they're aware of these ordinance changes?
I'm not okay with that because having reviewed it, I think that that information is skewed in some ways. I think that if we were going to do that, I would want to have a longer opportunity and for staff to review that and provide their input on that report because I did hear some concerns. I read through some of the reports. I had some concerns in terms of how the data had been used. There were some misreferences and so I'm not supportive of that.
I believe we do have to, we can't send a document to another city when we haven't even approved it yet or hasn't been before us yet. So maybe you can make that amendment after the item. So we have a motion and second. You know, I'm still in the belief that legal and safe access detours from the black market. And the black market is where the majority of youth are getting their cannabis. There was a report in, over in PBUSD that said that almost 80% of kids can access cannabis on campus on that same day. And that's obviously not a dispensary, right? You know, in when this all began, you know, I think that for me, it was just the amount of black and brown people being disproportionately incarcerated. And, you know, I, I've by the, the number of people that have been have had any kind of run-ins with the law is probably similar or if not more. But the amount of disproportionate arrests have been within the black and brown community. So that's why I wanted to move forward with normalizing and moving forward with just safe access to cannabis. And furthermore, I think ever since 2016, I believe, I don't know if someone can correct me. Both the city of Watsonville changed their policies and the 4C Committee started where they addressed a lot of these concerns that are being raised now. It wasn't just a one-month program. It went well after the pandemic, the C4 Committee meeting regularly to address these concerns. So I think, like I said before, you know, the framework for safe, regulated access has been discussed numerous times. Initially, even when Justin brought up the town halls, I was like, oh, we've vetted this, you know, we've beat this dead horse to death already. But I agreed to it to have further discussions and I attended two of the meetings and I, we didn't get the concern that we're getting at the board today at those public meetings. So I'll be in favor of it too. And we do have a motion and a second.
Before roll call, I have one comment. Thank you for your comments. It sounds like I'm going to be in a minority on this vote. But I want to state some of the reasons that I oppose this. Before I do that, I am going to share that I want to thank the Health Services Agency for the informed report that you put in this packet. And my office will be sending it to those who I recommend because, you know, we trust you as our health agency of the county to be leaders in data and research. And so I feel full confidence in the report that was, that was developed. So I'm not going to be supporting this because, you know, one, as a mom, it doesn't make sense, just doesn't make common sense to invite people onto the roads that I traffic every day with my kids to get impaired and to get back on those roads. Number two, it, we know that people are going to be consuming cannabis in these lounges and then using our county roads to get into the city roads. And, you know, to move on throughout the county and the fact that we haven't reached out and heard from our local cities about the resources it will take for them to enforce this or any concerns they have causes me deep concerns. And three, we heard from our law enforcement leaders that the technology does not exist to test impairment like it does with alcohol. And so for those reasons, I'm not able to support that today.
Thank you, Ben McClure.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
DeSerpah? No. Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez? No. Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes with two dissenting votes from Supervisor Martinez and Supervisor DeSerpah. Chair, we do have a, a time certain presentation at 1:30. And we do have closed session as well. So I recommend you break for closed session and then come back at 1:30. We will do that. So we're, we're going to take a short break for closed session and so we can read our scheduled item for 1:30. So we'll be back at 1:30.
Recording stopped.
Well, now can, well, now convene the scheduled item for 1:30. Our next agenda item is item number 12, presentation on the 2024 Employee Recognition Awards. I'll turn it over to our CEO, Carlos Palacios, for the presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair Hernandez, members of the Board of Supervisors. This is the 2024 Employee Recognition Awards. Each year, the Board of Supervisors presents these awards to recognize and show appreciation to their employees for their outstanding accomplishments while working with the county. The Board recognizes employees in the following areas. Number one, an employee or group of employees who solved an extraordinary problem for the county and/or demonstrated an outstanding accomplishment that furthered the county's goals. Two, an employee or group of employees who found an opportunity for improvement and implemented an innovative idea. Or three, an employee who has demonstrated outstanding effort and service in the past year. Each board member will present proclamations to award recipients in the following categories. General Government, Health Services, Human Services, Justice and Public Safety, and Land Use Regulation. Board members will come down from the dais and stand at the microphone to announce the award recipients. As employees hear their names or the name of their team announced, they should come up to the dais. At the conclusion of the proclamation presentation, a reception will be held adjacent to the board chambers. Everyone is invited to stay through the entirety of, entire entirety of the presentation of the proclamations and join us in the reception. We're going to go ahead and begin the awards ceremony with Supervisor Cummings presenting for the Justice and Public Safety category.
There we go. Even better. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Supervisor Justin Cummings, and the first person we want to honor today is Myrna Guerrero. First award winner in the category, who's the first award winner in this category. Established as a county agency in July, 2022, the Public Defender's Office initially lacked structure administrative workflows for budget management, bill payment, and personnel processes, operating for much of its year without an administrative service manager to oversee these critical functions. In summer of 2023, Myrna joined P D O as its Administrative Services Manager amid significant administrative challenges, immediately stepping into problem-solving mode to address urgent financial and operational needs. Myrna quickly trained a team of new administrative professionals documenting bill payments, personal workflows to stabilize operations, and prevent future disruptions. She also developed and streamlined P D O's hiring and promotion process, ensuring employees were onboarded, evaluated, and promoted efficiently, contributing to the hiring of nearly one-third of the Public Defender's Office currently current staff within a year. Myrna worked closely with county leadership to master the complexities of the county budget process, dedicating long hours to successfully guiding P D O's executive team through the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget cycle. Through Myrna's leadership, P D O completed its first independently proposed budget in the agency's history, marking a milestone in the department's development and financial stability. Myrna Guerrero has exemplified positivity, tenacity, creativity, calm determination, and resilience, making her an invaluable leader in P D O's growth and success. Thank you, Myrna, for your dedication and contributions to the Public Defender's Office, and congratulations on this award.
So Myrna unfortunately is not feeling super well today. I'm Heather Rogers. I'm the public defender and I have the honor of working with Myrna. She had a few words. I want to thank everyone who played a part in nominating me for this award. Your recognition means so much to me, and I'm truly grateful to be seen and appreciated. I genuinely love the work I do, and it's an honor to be a part of this hardworking and dedicated team. The impact we make together is a testament to the collaboration and commitment of everyone involved. Managing admin operations in a department is no small task, but having an incredible admin team and the support of colleagues both within and beyond our department makes it the more rewarding. I'm deeply appreciative of each of you and the role you play in our shared success. Thank you for this recognition. It means a lot to me. Myrna.
All right. And our next awardee is Detective Emma Ramponi. In spring of 2023, Detective Ramponi was tasked with investigating a series of burglaries that occurred at drying facilities for marijuana companies earlier that year. The burglaries were committed by a large group of individuals who stole vast amounts of product while recklessly endangering others. Detective Ramponi thoroughly reviewed reports and hours of video surveillance and conducted interviews, ultimately identifying a key suspect using a parole ankle monitor, ankle monitor database, which led to an arrest warrant and the seizure of critical evidence from the suspect's phone. The evidence revealed multiple other suspects, all of whom had no prioritize Santa Cruz County, prompting Detective Ramponi to collaborate with law enforcement agencies statewide. Through continued investigation and intelligence sharing, Detective Ramponi determined that this burglary group was responsible for fourteen marijuana-related burglaries across Santa Cruz County, including in the cities of Santa Cruz and Watsonville. Her coordination with the Department of Justice and Oakland Police Department led to Operation Sticky Fingers in July of 2024, involving over one hundred officers and resulting in the arrest of twenty-two suspects for felony charges related to marijuana burglaries, as well as the seizure of firearms and hard drugs. Detective Ramponi was credited for her leadership in the operation as her investigation was the callous for its success, demonstrating her commitment to public safety. Despite the demands of this extensive investigation, Detective Ramponi managed her regular caseload and assisted other detectives showcasing exceptional dedication and time management. Her tireless effort has significantly, sorry, enhanced the safety of Santa Cruz County and other California communities, making her truly deserving of this recognition for going far beyond the expected in her work. Thank you, Detective Ramponi, for your exceptional investigative work, dedication, and outstanding contributions to public safety. Okay, so our last award in the category of Justice and Public Safety is being given to the District Attorney Computer Forensics Unit. The District Attorney Computer Forensics Unit comprised of Inspector Jalen Harris, criminalist to Jennifer Bachman, and investigative aide Jennifer Ayala serves as the leading digital forensic resource for all allied law enforcement agencies and justice partners in Santa Cruz County, providing expertise in the acquisition, analysis, and interpretation of digital evidence. Their work plays a critical role in law enforcement investigations and criminal prosecutions by recovering and analyzing digital evidence from computers, mobile devices, and other electronic sources with precision and integrity. They ensure that digital forensic evidence is lawfully and ethically obtained, accurately analyzed, and clearly translated into information that supports just and ethical prosecutions. Managing complex amounts of digital data, the unit effectively organizes and presents critical forensic evidence in court, supporting the prosecution of criminal cases while also contributing to investigations ranging from crimes against children to high-profile criminal incidents. Additionally, the unit has provided life-saving geolocation data to search and rescue teams, aiding in time-sensitive operations and reinforcing public safety efforts. Remaining at the forefront of emerging forensic methodologies and technical advancements, the unit continuously evaluates and refines their processes to stay ahead of the rapidly evolving digital landscape. The unit also provides essential training and consultation to county law enforcement agencies, equipping officers and investigators with the knowledge and skills needed to properly preserve and handle digital data. I want to thank the District Attorney Computer Forensics Unit for their invaluable contributions to the justice system and our community. Congratulations to you all.
Supervisor Martinez?
Good afternoon. What a wonderful, joyous event. So our first honoree in this category of general government is the One Meeting Agenda Management System Implementation Team. This team is comprised of Chief Deputy Clerk of the Board Juliette Rosato, Senior Departmental Administrative Analyst Elizabeth Padilla, and Departmental Administrative Analyst Lisa Ledwith. You're welcome to come on up here while I talk about you. In the county administrative office, the clerk of the Board of Supervisors is responsible for facilitating public meetings, including the creation of agendas and minutes, which are managed through an agenda management system used by approximately twenty departments and several hundred county staff. The previous agenda management system was implemented in 2016, and after more than eight years of use, the county outgrew the system, which often had issues with templates and workflows and produced errors when agendas were published, requiring staff several hours to fix numerous formatting glitches. System support was limited and scheduled to terminate in September, 2025, necessitating the search for a new solution. In January, 2023, a request for proposals for a new agenda management system was released, and the One Meeting Agenda Management System was unanimously selected in June, 2023. Over the past year, the implementation team has dedicated countless hours to completing system discovery, design, development, testing, and training to ensure a smooth transition. Every aspect of the previous system had to be configured for the new One Meeting System, requiring significant time and effort from the members of the team. The team also provided extensive training opportunities to One Meeting users. Please hold. Including drop-in support sessions, tailored training sessions for large departments, and monthly meetings for all users. The implementation of One Meeting, of the One Meeting System is an outstanding example of teamwork, dedication, patience, and service excellence. And this team deserves to be recognized for their commitment and dedication to this project. As somebody using the new system, I'm very appreciative of all your work. Thank you for everything you've given to this project. Congratulations.
Oh, boy. Just a, just a couple people. Just a few people. I wanted to recognize Alan Plikonic from the Information Services Department. He was absolutely critical and crucial in making sure that the system actually does what we want it to do. Mytray Maziar is also in the Information Services Department, who makes sure that all of the videos, all of the streaming, all of the cameras and our community television partners to make sure that everybody can access the meetings we use this system for. And then also our department AMS coordinators. We had a member of our team in every single department making sure that their users knew what they needed to know for the system. So thank you all. It was truly a team effort.
The next award in the general government category is being given to Merrillise Howse. Are you here? Come on up. Where are you? Okay, well, I'm going to keep reading. Merrillise is a buyer in the General Services Department, G S D, and she is receiving this award for her innovative approach of quick tips guides, which are concise and easy-to-understand resources for departmental purchasing staff, providing helpful tips and steps for commonly asked procedural problems. These quick tip guides have become so successful that requests are now coming in from purchasing users asking for them in other specific areas of concern. Prior to the introduction of quick tips guides for departmental purchasing staff, Merrillise implemented department internal procedures within the G S D administration group to establish standardized written guidelines for internal processes. These procedures provide detailed step-by-step instructions for administrative and G S D staff, ensuring clarity and consistency in executing tasks and helping to alleviate frustration and enhance efficiency, particularly for new team members navigating complex workflows. With the proven success of departmental dips is what we call them for sure. So with the proven success of dips, G S D is now expanding their implementation across all divisions to further standardize key procedures and ensure uniform application of recent process changes. The learning tools that Merrillise has created enhance operational consistency, improve training resources, and help to foster a more effective and well-informed workforce. Thank you, Merrillise, for your contribution in strengthening and improving the operational efficiency of the General Services Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all you do. All right. And for a project near and dear to my heart, the Big Basin Water Rescue and Recovery Team. Our last award in the category of general government is being given to the Big Basin Water Rescue and Recovery Team. Come on up. The Big Basin, yes. The Big Basin Water Rescue and Recovery Team is comprised of Fifth District Supervisor Analyst J M Brown, Director of the Office of Response Recovery and Resilience David Reed, Water Resources Program Manager Sierra Ryan, County Public Information Officer Jason Hoppen, Senior Civic Engineer Beatrice Baranco, Treatment Plant Operator Isaac Bohorkes, Assistant Departmental Analyst Renee Inlow, Engineering Associate Renee Hernandez, Assistant County Council Justin Graham, and Assistant County Council Michael De Schmidt. And I'm also going to recognize former Supervisor McPherson in the audience, who was a big part of this as well. Prior to the C Z U Lightning Complex Fire in August, 2020, the privately-owned Big Basin Water Company struggled to serve its six-hundred-plus rural connections, including more than one thousand Boulder Creek residents, as the company frequently incurred water outages, lacked communication with customers, and had poor response to state regulators. Most of the company's infrastructure was damaged or destroyed during the C Z U fire, leaving homeowners whose homes survived the fire with irregular, unsanitary, or no drinking water service, leading many residents to turn to assistance, despite the fact that the county had no jurisdiction over the company. Former Fifth District Supervisor Bruce McPherson's office organized a multi-departmental team, starting with the O R three and the Water Resource Division, to identify partners at the state level who could exercise their regulatory authority to stabilize the crisis. County and state partners met on a regular basis, which contributed to two lawsuits being filed by state agencies against Big Basin Water Company in twenty twenty-three, seeking the appointment of a court receiver to take possession of the company and stabilize it. Supervisor McPherson's office committed fifth district discretionary funds towards the effort to prevent a public health emergency among Big Basin Water customers. And coordination began between the receiver and the county, including the O R three, the Water Division, and the Community Development and Infrastructure Department and County Council. The county successfully applied for a State Department of Water Resources grant to keep the system functioning. And at the end of 2024, the drinking water operation was stabilized, and the ownership transition process for the wastewater treatment plant was almost complete. I want to honor this team for their contribution to there we go again. To the stabilization of the Big Basin Water System and thank them for the enormous impact they have made on the county and the residents of the San Lores Valley and District Five.
Congratulations and thank you. Michael, you, Renee. You. Thank you, Dan Siera. All right. Congratulations.
Next, we have Supervisor De Serafina.
Hi, everybody. I'm sorry for the mask. I was in DC last weekend and must have caught something when I was out there and at the conference. So I'm going to keep my mask on if that's okay. And I'm really sorry. I'm smiling from ear to ear underneath. And I have six pages to read, so hopefully I won't hyperventilate here. The number, the number one is the group to recognize today is the Care Act Implementation Team Behavioral Health Care Team. And the first award category is of health is the Care Act Implementation Team and the Behavioral Health Care Team comprised of Behavioral Health Deputy Director Karen Kern, Behavioral Health Program Manager Brenda Campbell, Behavioral Health Program Coordinator Clayton Conrad, Health Services Agency Communications Officer Sandra Hughes, Director of Holistic Defense Caitlin Becker, Director of Holistic, no, I already said that. No, Director of Holistic Defense Principal Administrative Analyst Sven Stafford, Cannabis Licensing Manager Sam La Forte, and Assistant County Council Katie Walker. Is everybody? and Assistant County Council Katie Walker. Is everybody up here? Bennettville 1338 established the Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment, the Care Act, to provide community-based behavioral health services and support to Californians living with untreated schizophrenia spectrum or other psychotic disorders who meet specific criteria with the goal of preventing hospitalization, incarceration, or conservatorship. The Care Act is based on evidence which demonstrates that many people can stabilize, begin healing, and exit homelessness in a less restrictive, community-based care setting. And to achieve those results, the Care Act places individuals on court-ordered care plan for up to 12 months with the possibility of a 12-month extension. The county established a Care Act Working Group in December 2022, bringing together representatives from Behavioral Health, County Council, the public defender, Superior Court, probation, law enforcement, hospitals, and advocacy groups, with facilitation by the County Administrative Office. In the summer of 2023, the working group formed an implementation team to map processes for each stakeholder, validate workflows, and develop a comprehensive plan for Care Act compliance. The team developed a Care Act budget, integrated it into the 2025, sorry, 2024-25 supplemental budget, and gained valuable insights from pilot counties through presentations and court observations. From Fall '23 to Fall '24, the team conducted extensive outreach, presenting to community groups, government bodies, and stakeholders while also establishing a Care Act webpage and providing training sessions for external partners. Including law enforcement and emergency responders, the Care Court Program successfully launched on December 1st, 2024, with the first petition received in the program's first week and the first court proceeding held the following week. The Care Act Implementation Team and the Behavioral Health Care Team showcased exemplary teamwork, innovation, and dedication as they addressed a critical state mandate with significant implications for public health, safety, and community well-being. And I would also add, and the well-being of the person you're serving. Today, we honor these teams for their contribution to the Care Court Project and thank them immensely for their dedication to the support of our community members. Congratulations.
Hi, everybody. I'm Karen Kern. I'm with Behavioral Health. And I just wanted to take a minute. The rules of this award are such that certain people aren't able to be nominated, but this team is actually bigger than the people here. Ruby Marquez. Part of the team, Heather Rogers, who was here. I don't think, I think she might have left, but, okay. Athena Reese, who is here for Caitlin Becker, but was also part of the team. Megan Maravich, who's with, also with County Council. And then we had Sasha Morgan in Florence Patton with Superior Court. So it really took a village to lift this amazingly complicated piece of legislation, very detailed. And also, I just wanted to say thank you to Sven and the CAO's office because Sven is an excellent cat herder. And without his support, we never would have made it this far. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That's such an important program. I really appreciate everyone's contributions. Uh, next up, we have Kayla Gray. Is Kayla here? Hi, Kayla. So the second award in the category of Health Services is being given to Kayla Gray. In September '23, the Health Services Agency Behavioral Health Division identified a critical need to update its policies and procedures after emergency operations during the CZU Fire. Staff turnover and leadership changes led to disorganized and improperly managed medical records, including abrupt file relocations and the loss of institutional knowledge regarding retention and destruction protocols. Kayla Gray, a program coordinator in Behavioral Health, took the lead on the extensive project to inventory organize and transfer over 1,200 boxes of records to an off-site storage facility while simultaneously updating workflows, policies, and staff training. Though initially planned as a 90-day effort, the project extended to a full year due to the sheer volume of unorganized files, missing labels, and outdated processes. Kayla meticulously reviewed, logged each box of records, often recreating missing lists, reconciling contents with retention protocols, and organized and relabeled all records to meet regulatory requirements, ensuring compliance with state and federal standards. Kayla facilitated the proper destruction of records no longer required, enhancing efficiency, regulatory adherence, and developed updated policies, workflows, and comprehensive training program to ensure future compliance and sustainability of records management practices. Kayla also engaged and secured a contract with an off-site storage vendor, ensuring long-term organization and security of medical records, and she successfully oversaw the first implementation of a new system, including staff training, transition processes, ensuring a seamless adoption across the division. Kayla's exceptional efforts have transformed the Behavioral Health Division's record management system, ensuring compliance, efficiency, and sustainability for the future. Thank you, Kayla, for the incredible commitment and hard work that you demonstrated during this project, and congratulations on this well-deserved award. And finally, I'm sort of, can you guys hear me huffing and puffing? The Communicable Disease Unit, woo! Let's, so this, these are, um, this is one of my favorite units because I've had to interact with them multiple times over the course of my career, unfortunately. Um, so this is, these are comprised of Senior Public Health Investigators Veronica Nolasco and Jeff DiAndrea, if you guys would come up. Oh, yeah, everyone's here. Public Health Nurse Twos, Courtney Talon, Lauren Tranchita, Diane Thomas, Karina Linzer, Indiana Mercado, and Connie Wainwright. Public Health Nurse Threes, Viviana Ortiz, Amy Mesa, Erin Van Dale, Administrative Aid Ivan Avalos, Office Assistant Three Viviana Ortiz, and Program Coordinator Fernando, I don't know how to say your last name, Ariasa? Did I say it kind of? Ariza. In early 2024, the Communicable Disease Unit within the Public Health Division demonstrated exceptional leadership and coordination in addressing two simultaneous public health outbreaks. Can you guess what they are? Shigella and syphilis. Yeet. That primarily impacted individuals experiencing homelessness. The Communicable Disease Unit identified a shigella outbreak in February '24 through proactive investigation of individual cases, enabling swift recognition of the outbreak's rapid spread. And it was this early recognition of the outbreak that facilitated the prompt implementation of critical control measures, supported by partners such as the health centers, environmental health, and emergency preparedness teams. Collaborative efforts ensured that the sanitation guidance and resources were distributed across high-risk settings, including homeless shelters, encampments, um, contributing to the containment of the shigella outbreak. And at the same time, the Communicable Disease Unit grew suspicious of a potential syphilis outbreak in South County area and recognizing the potential severity of untreated syphilis. The Communicable Disease Unit mobilized resources with assistance from partners such as HPHP, Salupar La Gente Housing for Health, County Syringe Services. Um, the unit, in collaboration with local EMS, fire departments, and law enforcement from the cities of Santa Cruz, Capitola, Scotts Valley, and Watsonville, carried out field-based outreach, education, and testing efforts to combat the syphilis outbreak. And these combined efforts reached 141 individuals, testing 127 of them, and identified and treated 28 cases through rapid testing and immediate treatment. Thank you. Because of your effort, we made significant strides in reducing the spread of syphilis in our community. Both outbreaks unfolded during a period when the county was also grappling with a surge in COVID-19 outbreaks in congregate settings such as homeless shelters. And the CD unit's ability to manage these concurrently, these concurrent public health threats while maintaining focus on other critical investigations was remarkable. It was a remarkable achievement, absolutely. I want to commend and thank the exceptional leadership, teamwork, and contributions of the Communicable Disease Unit for their outstanding effort in addressing these outbreaks. Congratulations to you all. With Amy Mesa.
I, I'll keep it really quick. I'm Amy Mesa. I'm one of the supervising public health nurses with the unit. And I, I agree that this group of people is really an elite and stellar work group. And they do amazing work every day. And just like a lot of what happens in public health, when they're, when we're all doing our jobs, nobody knows that we're there. But, um, last year, when, when we were able to help mitigate those two outbreaks mentioned, the only way that we could really make a difference was with the collaboration of all the other county departments that the supervisor mentioned and all of our community partners. And so I just want to recognize all those other folks and to mention that that's true with all public health initiatives. The only way that we can really have an impact is if it's a cooperative process within the community. So, uh, please remember that. And we just want to thank the community every day for helping us do our jobs. Thank you.
Next, we have Supervisor Konek.
All right. I will be presenting awards in the fabulous category of Land Use and Regulatory. The first employee recognition award in the category is given to Kelly Rogers. Kelly, are you here? Come on up. Kelly has served as Aquatics Coordinator since the summer of 2023 and stepped up as interim Aquatics Supervisor between February and June of 2024, demonstrating exceptional leadership and commitment. Kelly spearheaded the launch of a brand-new Winter Junior Guard clinic in late '24, providing young swimmers with opportunities to build confidence and critical water skills, ensuring the long-term growth of the junior guard pipeline. Under Kelly's leadership, the Swim Lesson Program has flourished through diligent staff recruitment, training, and scheduling, offering hundreds of lessons that equip community members with life-saving skills while addressing a crucial public need. Kelly collaborated with County Park Friends to secure pool space for the Learn to Swim Program, providing over 140 free swim lessons to individuals in need, and even taught lessons herself, exemplifying her hands-on dedication to the community. And, and earning her widespread praise for her exceptional instructional abilities, particularly in working with children. Kelly also successfully managed and executed a robust junior guard summer program, instilling vital skills and teamwork in young participants while inspiring both staff and program members. Through her dedication, strategic planning, and expertise, Kelly has ensured full pool operations year-round, providing continuous access for recreational swimmers, lessons, and community programs, while also strengthening water safety education, expanding opportunities for aquatic training and fostering a welcoming environment that benefits individuals of all ages and skill level. Thank you, Kelly, for your unwavering commitment to aquatics programs, water safety, and community engagement. And congratulations on this well-deserved Employee Recognition Award.
Um, I just want to say thank you. Um, it's amazing to be honored for this. I love the work I do and being able to support our community. So, thank you.
And I'll just add, you know, a couple of years ago, we were all wondering how we were going to get back to full staffing at the Aquatics Center. A lot of folks were complaining. And of course, what we now know is we had a secret weapon in Kelly. So thank you, Kelly. Um, all right. The next award in the category of Land Use and Regulatory is being given to Alexandra Corvello. Alexandra, come on up. Alexandra is a planner in the Development Review Section of the Planning Division at the Community Development and Infrastructure Department. And in this role, she analyzes and processes a wide range of development projects for conformance with the County General Plan and zoning ordinance, demonstrating exceptional skill and dedication. And going through lots of paperwork. Um, since joining the team in August 2022, Alexandra has quickly advanced to taking on increasingly complex projects, managing a significant workload with a calm demeanor, high standards, and consistent on-time delivery. In addition to her core responsibilities, Alexandra has proactively identified and implemented process improvements to enhance both efficiency and user experience within the department, including her key role in developing procedures for processing low-level reviews through a new permit type, the zoning clearance, or ZC. With the goal of making the process user-friendly for both customers and staff, Alexandra proposed interactive questionnaire-style application materials that automatically generate detailed pre-filled forms. Alexandra meticulously designed and implemented the entire process. And with support from the Information Services Department, the new ZC procedure is nearly ready for production, promising significant improvements in both user experience and internal processing. Alexandra has expanded this methodology to revamp the submittal appointment process for discretionary applications and report reviews, replacing confusing PDF forms with an intuitive automated system that enhances accuracy and efficiency. Her innovative approach has significantly improved internal workflows, allowing technical support staff to process requests seamlessly, while providing managers with essential tools for workload assessment and project assignment. Oh, wait, there's more. Despite her extensive contributions to process innovation, Alexandra has maintained exceptional productivity in her primary role as a project planner, exemplifying professionalism, efficiency, and dedication to serving the community. We commend you, Alexandra, for your innovative thinking and unwavering commitment to excellence. And thank you for your dedicated public service to the County of Santa Cruz. Congratulations. Nothing need be said. Your, your work speaks for itself. Thank you, Alexandra. Um, and finally, the Mid County Roads Crew is being, the, the last award has been given to the entire Mid County Roads Crew comprised of Maintenance Workers Four, Stephen Garcia, Maintenance Workers Three, Threes, Rafael Gallardo, Steve Scott, Morgan Bouchard, and Taylor Walton, and Maintenance Worker Twos, Anthony Chacon, Caesar Vizcano, Alejandro Rosas Cardenas, Eduardo Morales, and Gabriel Vasquez. Do we have any of this fabulous crew here? Come on up, you guys. Come on up. Please. The Mid County Crew played a vital role in the critical and time-sensitive Paharo River, Monterey County River Mile Eight to Ten Levy Restoration Project, which focused on reinforcing flood protection for the Monterey County side of the Paharo River, benefiting the town of Paharo, an area historically prone to flooding due to levee vulnerabilities. And the Mid County Crew, alongside additional team members, took on this massive undertaking, working with remarkable dedication, days on end and including weekends, to achieve the levy improvements before the winter season. The reconstruction process involved the removal, rebuilding, and reinforcement of the levy with strict adherence to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers specifications, resulting in a more resilient and thoroughly reinforced structure. Every segment was meticulously compacted, then thoroughly cleaned to meet safety and environmental standards, resulting in a reinforced levy designed to withstand the coming years and protect the vulnerable communities. With surveyors guiding the efforts to meet the required final grade, each stage of the reconstruction met the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers' strict specifications, ensuring the new levy would be more resilient against potential flooding. This interim restoration, designed to last five to 10 years, significantly improves the levy system, and its successful completion was crucial in safeguarding the town of Paharo and surrounding communities from the devastating effects of flooding. I want to commend and thank the Mid County Roads Crew for their exceptional dedication, hard work, and outstanding contributions to Paharo River Levy Restoration Project. Congratulations.
So I am the supervisor for this crew and I am accepting the award for Stephen Garcia. And I just want to say, these guys did a great job. We also want to thank the rest of the road crews, South County, North County, Drainage, they all pitched in, helped out. So it was, it was a major effort. These guys did a great job.
Mic check. All right, it's Human Services here.
So the first award is in the category of Human Services being given to the Human Services Department, IT Desktop and Network Support Teams comprised of IT Manager Julia Sheehan, Desktop Support Manager Todd Estabrooks, Network Supervisor Dominic Sasser, Desktop Support Analyst Patrick Blue, Adam Papier, Kelly Beach, Lucas Kapinski and Network Analyst Fred Burr, Marco Late and Stephen Strawn. The Human Services Department, IT Desktops and Network Support Teams demonstrated outstanding commitment to technical expertise throughout their department's relocation from pre-leased buildings in Watsonville to 500 West Ridge Drive. The teams successfully managed complex tasks, including decommissioning servers at leased locations, reinstalling them at the new facility and disassembling and reinstalling over 250 workstations. The teams played a pivotal role in obtaining AV equipment for six conference rooms and actively participated in weekly calls with ISD Nicole Steele and CDI, the CDI Project Manager to coordinate project progress. To facilitate organization, the teams developed an office and cubicle numbering system to coordinate and track equipment placements and they worked closely with the wiring vendor, Rotek, meeting on numerous occasions to oversee wiring tasks and ensuring all work was completed to standard. The teams went above and beyond by working after hours on weekends to facilitate the installation of wiring and equipment, ensuring adherence to the project timeline without disruption. They meticulously tracked and installed peripheral equipment such as phones, printers, monitors, ensuring accuracy and efficiency of all installations. The dedication, technical proficiency and collaborative efforts of the HSD IT Teams was instrumental in their successful setup of the new facility, making them highly deserving of recognition for their exceptional contributions. Thank you for all your hard work on this project and congratulations. We take a quick group picture here with all these guys. Did you want to speak?
They said they sent an email to us for their speech.
My glasses now.
Next is Human Services Department Facility Operations. The next award in Human Services category is being given to Human Services Department Facility Operations Team comprised of Administrative Services Manager Mickey Coco Bus, Facility Managers David Stimson and Maribel Gonzalez. In 2021, the county purchased the 500 West Ridge Building in Watsonville to consolidate leased spaces into county-owned facilities, relocating approximately 285 HSD employees from three South County Buildings and establishing a South County Government Center. The HSD Facility Operations Team exhibited exceptional dedication in managing the complex logistics of the transition, with Mickey, Dave and Maribel all assuming key leadership roles in this project. Beginning in early 2023, the team took charge of nearly all aspects of the move, collaborating with CDI Project Manager Nicole Steele, assisting with furniture selections, visiting vendor warehouses, providing critical feedback on facility signage. The team ensured clear communication by developing detailed move schedules, participating in department road shows to address staff concerns and organizing tours of new building, the new building to familiarize employees of their new workspaces. During the move-in period, the team worked tirelessly with Mickey, Dave putting in long hours, nights and weekends, while Maribel provided essential administrative support and created maps, display boards and directional flags to help aid staff in the transition. The leadership, dedication and meticulous planning demonstrated by HSD Facilities Operation Team was instrumental in the successful relocation of the department, making them truly deserving of this recognition. Congratulations to all. Anybody want to speak? Next is Miranda Shrimmer. Congratulations. The last award in the Human Services category is being given to Miranda Shrimmer, a senior social worker for the Family and Children's Services. Miranda began her journey with the county as a foster parent, bringing in a unique perspective and deep personal commitment for her, for her work in child welfare and has since dedicated herself protecting children from harm and advocating for family reunification. Miranda has pursued excellence in her field by attaining her master's degrees in, in social work and has since served as a highly respected case-carrying social worker at FCS, adhering to the highest state and federal mandates while navigating complex and often crisis-driven situations with professionalism and care. Miranda has played a pivotal role in identifying, developing and utilizing community and agency resources for the benefit of her clients, advocating for necessary services, fostering meaningful engagement between families and social services. Miranda has been an active leader and volunteer in the Fatherhood Advisory Council, bringing her expertise to discussions that uplift the voices of fathers, families and children and ensuring that policies and practices reflect their lived experiences and needs. Miranda's dedication to father engagement has led to tangible success, including her advocacy in child welfare, criminal court, resulting in the reunification of children with their fathers when they have demonstrated significant personal growth and commitment. Miranda consistently goes above and beyond her duties by organizing and participating in community events such as the Fatherhood Appreciation and Community Event and trunk-or-treat, strengthening family connections and promoting positive community engagement. Miranda's extraordinary, extraordinary dedication, tireless advocacy and compassionate service has made a lasting impact on the lives of children and families in Santa Cruz County, strengthening the bonds between social workers and communities they serve. I want to recognize and commend Miranda Shrimmer for her outstanding contributions and unwavering commitment to father engagement and family support in child welfare and thank her for her dedication to public service to the County of Santa Cruz. Congratulations.
I'll stay up here for a second. So next I got a note that I'd like to invite the public to join the board in the hallway for reception honoring the award winners. I'm only giving the board five minutes for this and we have to be back. We have a long agenda. Before we go. Hold on, before we go, we got to quick.
Members of the public can go, but I just, for the board, I wanted to. Item number, so I actually had contacted the chair before the meeting. I'm, we're fortunate to have the Coastal Commission visiting us. Yeah, just giving it a second wide down. Yeah, I actually reached out to the chair prior to the meeting informing him that I would need to leave at 2:30. I, we're fortunate this month to have the Coastal Commission back in the city of Santa, in Santa Cruz County and in particular in the city of Santa Cruz. They're going to be meeting at the Courtyard Marriott. But part of that, having them come here was also to take them on a tour, which I'll be leading this afternoon. And so I'm going to need to leave right now. And so I'm asking whether, if we, if the, I'd like to make a motion to continue item number nine to the next meeting so we can have a full board discussion on that item.
Second, so we got a, got a motion to postpone the item number nine to the next meeting and a second from Supervisor Koenig.
Can I ask a point of order? Is that acceptable? Don't we have to do that at the start of the agenda?
No, you could do it. You could do it now. It's all right to do it now.
Okay.
You, you should, you should ask for public comment on the motion.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the public wishing to make public comment on this item? See none? Anyone online?
We have no speakers online, Chair.
So we got a motion in a second. Motion from Supervisor Koenig, second from Supervisor Cummings. We'll take roll call. Motion from Supervisor Cummings and second from Supervisor Koenig.
Certainly. Supervisor DeSerphe, Cummings.
Hi.
Martinez.
Hi.
Koenig.
Hi.
And Hernandez.
Hi.
Are there any events Supervisor Cummings that, that you would want any of us to attend?
There are no formal events. But if you want to swing by the meeting, they start at 9:00 AM each day. And I believe there's only one item on related to the city of Santa Cruz, coming out of Santa Cruz County, which is the Beach Area Plan, which will be tomorrow afternoon.
There's no reception or anything? Okay, thank you very much.
Before I continue, I think there was some folks that came in for the item number nine. We just voted to move the item for the next agenda meeting. All right, now we can take our recess. Four minutes now. That is number 10. Consider report on preventing underage cannabis use in Santa Cruz County and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Monica Morales, Health Services Agency Director, and Lisa B. Hernandez, County Public Health Officer, and Emily Chung, Director of Public Health Division for the presentation.
Good afternoon, Board. What a great event we had. So appreciate everybody giving us some time to still continue with the discussion. As you requested, we're here with our public health team to provide an update for you guys on prevention of cannabis use amongst youth. I think you'll have a comprehensive presentation from our Director Emily Chung and our Public Health Director, Dr. Hernandez. So with it, I'll just kick it off to them.
Good afternoon, Chair Hernandez and Board of Supervisors. It's a pleasure to speak with you again, this time on youth cannabis use. And want to talk a little bit about the impact specifically to the physical and mental health impacts of youth cannabis use. We know that brain development is a critical time in a youth's development. And when cannabis is used during that time, it can impact the development of the brain and cause impacts, including cognitive impairment. We also see that frequent cannabis use in youth is linked to increased risk for developing psychotic disorders, including schizophrenia. And what we see is the earlier and more use of cannabis increases the risk for those conditions. Chronic cannabis use also affects physical health, contributing to lung and breathing complaints and conditions. And frequent or high potency use causes a condition called Cannabis Hyperemesis Disorder, where youth can present to the emergency room and to, and be hospitalized. Dr. Hernandez, who spoke earlier, spoke about this condition where kids have intractable nausea and vomiting. And the only will cure for that is stopping cannabis use. So the care is really supportive for those kids and the plan is for them to stop using. Beyond the health risk, we see social consequences as well. Frequent cannabis use is associated with lower high school completion rates. And also by the age of 25, we see that income is lower for individuals who use cannabis. In addition, we also see frequent and chronic use can lead to a higher risk of having cannabis use disorder, which is another issue. The cannabis that we know from the past isn't the cannabis that we're seeing now in our community. What we know is that the products that are out in the community have a higher potency level. First, we look at the cannabis plant THC potency levels. In 95, the potency level, average potency level for cannabis plants was about 3%. Now, in 2021, that has risen to 23%. And as cannabis manufacturers have become really knowledgeable in refining and increasing the concentration of cannabis products. And we know that we've seen the increase in the potency in cannabis products as well. Back in seven, 2017, the cannabis potency was about 56% in, sorry, the THC potency was about 20, sorry, 57% in concentrated cannabis products. And some products nowadays are upwards of 99% with THC potency. And some products nowadays are upwards of 99% with THC potency. I thought that was a typo. So I had to look that up. And really, if you look at some of the products out in the community, we see those levels higher than 95% and as high as 99. Local data, and this has been mentioned earlier, has shown that cannabis use in youth has been declining, and that is excellent news. And that has to do with a lot of the supports and efforts in our community. And we can talk a little bit about that if there are questions about that. However, when you look at specific communities, you will see that cannabis rates are higher and in fact double of what we are seeing in the general youth population. So 25% of students who experience chronic sadness also report a use of cannabis in the last 30 days. 21% of youth who face systemic transphobia or homophobia are reporting a past 30-day use of cannabis as well. And that is in contrast to their non-targeted peers where they are seeing that their non-targeted peers only report 11%, of their non-targeted peers report use. And then 24% of 11th grade students that are in non-traditional schools or alternate educational settings report cannabis use. And that is double again of what we see in students that attend traditional school settings. So you see these higher levels in certain communities. What we also see across the board is that students are seeing reduced risk of cannabis. It's being normalized while you're seeing increase in the potency and an increase in the usage for students in certain populations. I'll stop now and hand it over to my colleague, Dr., sorry, made you a doctor, Director Chung.
Thank you as well for the.
Thank you. Thank you for the time for this presentation. This slide tells us a little bit about the local costs of our cannabis use disorder treatment in our county. So this is just Santa Cruz County data from our Behavioral Health Division. Our Behavioral Health Division administers are Substance Use Disorder Services. And thanks to this data, we can see the impacts from primary cannabis use disorder treatment. These data do not include those who may present with secondary or tertiary diagnoses of cannabis use disorder, meaning that we only pull data that for people who show up with this as their main issue for substance use treatment. In the last two fiscal years, each year about one-third of those treated in our county are youth under the age of 25 years of age. And that is, and from year over year, just those two fiscal years, fiscal year 2223 into fiscal year 2324, we saw an increase in youth treatment numbers. In the last fiscal year, youth under the age of 25 with primary diagnosis treatments accounted for over $400,000 in local county share of costs. The local county share of costs are made up of general funds and other local dollars. And the, what is not accounted for there are the reimbursed costs such as through Medi-Cal or other insurance. We show data for all ages as well on the chart on the left because impacts continue into adulthood. Youth may become exposed or begin cannabis use as under the age of 25, but the impacts don't end there where they may persist in use into misuse and require treatment when they become adults. So looking at the holistic view of our impacts are important as we know that the trajectory for cannabis use disorder increases that risk when they start using as a adolescent. What is not included in this slide, data that we don't have easily available to us, are the financial impacts that are broader than just to our county's Behavioral Health Division, which are economic costs to our primary healthcare system, to crime or, or law enforcement issues, to productivity in someone's personal life and work life, and also impaired driving risks and the cost associated there. While it is encouraging that fewer youth are reporting use, which Dr. Hernandez already mentioned, that is a good sign that our community efforts are working. What we are most more concerned about is that youth are using more frequently and with higher potency products and getting more sick and seeking more treatment or needs. This presentation, we hope, is a beginning of a ongoing conversation on improving and enhancing our prevention efforts as a health services agency and as a community as a whole. We know that there are things that are working that are happening within health services through our community partners like schools and community-based organizations. But we provide here some additional recommendations for enhanced prevention programming. When we consider the prevention of youth use and abuse of substances, saturation and exposure do matter. The risk for youth is increased when youth are easily, are easily getting substances and have, and seeing it as normative to use substances. So that to us in public health aligns with our work in policies, systems and environments in which we live and how they impact individuals and communities, particularly now when we're speaking of youth who are impressionable and still developing. We can learn from and apply the best practices that public health professionals have established over the decades in addressing other topics like alcohol and tobacco. There is excellent evidence-based interventions and activities on policy, on education and outreach and enhanced services with our community to reduce exposure and to reduce social norms for these products. So we recommend applying a lot of those best practices to how we address cannabis as cannabis is part of our community. HSA already operates substance use prevention programming, including a Proposition 64 state grant-funded program that we have through October of 2028. We also have other programs that work with responsible alcohol and tobacco retailers. So we have precedent for how do we partner with the local retailer communities around substances that may be harmful to youth if exposed. We know that there is future work that needs to happen that include filling gaps in some of our data and knowledge on local youth cannabis use. Later this year, we'll be embarking on a comprehensive assessment to learn more about youth substance use as a whole and include cannabis and where youth are accessing cannabis, which we have heard and is in our report that the secondary market, black market, is where youth are often reporting they are getting cannabis. Specifically with our youth cannabis use prevention efforts, we already engage and want to continue a robust engagement with a diverse set of community partners such as schools, community-based organizations, our cannabis retailers and farmers, medicinal marijuana advocates and others who already participate in the Community Prevention Partners Coalition, also known as CPP. CPP focuses on preventing substance use disorders and related consequences by reducing Santa Cruz County youth substance use. This is a key coalition to our ongoing efforts to have meaningful opportunities for involvement in, in a multi-sector partnership. We also know the value of working with our law enforcement partners as we look at impaired driving and other areas of concern related to law and hope to be working with them as well as we talk about how to standardize the methodology for understanding impaired driving risks. So again, we thank the board for this opportunity to share some data and some findings related to youth cannabis use and misuse, as well as opportunities in the future that we can continue and hopefully expand.
Thank you for the presentation. We'd like to see if there's any, any comments from the public before we begin.
Thank you, Becky Steinbrenner. I cannot help but reflect on what your board received this morning earlier in the report about suicide. And I just really wonder how youth using these high potency things and seeing that there is a correlation in chronic sadness with its use, how that is correlated with the rise in, in teen suicide. So I really think we need to look at this carefully. Thank you for the information. How did you factor in the financial costs relative to driving impairments and things like that? I would like your source of information and how you, how you added that in. Thank you.
Hello. My name is William Sum. I'm with Bloom Network. We're a local manufacturing distributor in Santa Cruz. And just wanted to highlight some of the stuff about potency. You know, really the cannabinoid profile and how it relates to the terpene profile and the terpene density ratios are what give the effects and cause the flavonoids and how you taste and what you taste in the cannabis. And so, you know, I kind of wanted to give an analogy of something similar. You know, sometimes I want to go to Shanty Shack and try out the, you know, craft brews and have my sours and a flight of sours, if you will. But sometimes I want to go to Venus and I want to have a flight of gin and have increased potency. And so really, I think, you know, the Department of Cannabis Control is now working on a new label where there's more transparency with the label. And something we've done as a brand is we have on all of our labels a QR code that goes right to the testing. So that way that consumer can be informed before they make a purchase and they look at this product. And so I kind of want to just explain that around potency. And I've never seen anything at 99% potency. You know, I've successfully brought at least 1,000 SKUs into the market in the last five years and my average potency is about 60% because there's still plants, lipids, fats and other things and terpenes, right? And really, an increased terpene density is what causes some of these effects. So and we'd like to get more involved. I stayed around because I didn't realize that there was a presentation, item 10, about the youth, right? I was here for item nine, which got pushed, but after I heard this, I wanted to stay, you know, stay around and just figure out what we could do more to as local operators to help educate the youth and, and, you know, make sure that the, the youth know what the, you know, what they're experiencing. But if we could shed any more light on the potency and how the potency plays into play with concentrates, you know, and just make sure the consumer makes informed decisions. So thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ned MacDamar. I'm a pediatrician, neonatologist. I take care of sick babies. I wanted just to emphasize the point that you were making about the battle to undo the normalization of the use of marijuana because no one knows the long-term effects that this is going to have on babies. And there's so many women I meet that are cognitively seem fine and yet they have disfaith, this belief that there's nothing wrong with during their pregnancy or during their breastfeeding, they smoke marijuana. And I encounter that all the time. So I applaud the efforts that, you know, and I'm not an advocate arguing against adults using it. You know, I don't, I'm not crazy that way. But I think there is, there is definitely a mindset among youth today that there's nothing wrong with pot. And we don't know that for developing babies. Thank you.
Anyone online?
We have no speakers online, Chair.
If anyone would like to speak, if anyone would like to speak, please come up to the mic and the podium.
Hi. Did I just say my name or anything like that? Or is it just kind of like?
Sure.
Okay. My name is Gus. I just kind of wanted to say that, I think one guy back there pointed it out about the 99% THC cartridges or something like that. But they're not existing that level of potency within the cannabis industry. But like I said, cartridges are what most likely are being referenced in that scenario because they do contain, I guess, like a purity of 99%. It's kind of like, you know, Breaking Bad. You know, they talk about making like the, the stuff like, you know, like 92%. Yeah, it's, it's like that essentially. But the same kind of effect, you know? But I think the real concern is with the overall plant itself. That alone is reaching heights of 50 to 60% and as time moves on, it's going up to 70 to 80. And that concern really isn't going away. And I mean, like these fine people said here, that it's getting more potent over time. And the more that it does increase potency, to touch back, actually, what that gentleman said back there, it does like cause some confliction with like, I guess, birth defects because people will eventually get to the point where they're doing so much and such a high rate that it's taking away from a lot of their mental function. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lydia Hammack. I live in La Pico and I do use Full Spectrum gummies and vapes for my pain management. I do not drive on it and the kids don't understand that you can't drive on that stuff. You're going to get in a wreck or you're going to talk to a cop that you don't want to talk to. Not one going to help you, one going to put you in jail. So I would think that you need to look at, like he said, the potency and the fact that the full spectrum, the THC, CBN, CBD, all the other stuff, you look at the ratio of those things to like less THC and more CBD, it's more for pain management. And for a person with ADHD and understand kids needing to take that stuff because it kind of mellows you out a bit when you're stressed. And it is important for some kids to have access to that for medical purposes, but they need to not share that with the other kids and you could do something about that by legislation perhaps or education. So that's kind of my thoughts on the whole thing. I'm so glad you guys, so glad you got elected. Really glad. Okay. So basically it's something that's important for you all to discuss and make legislation on and put it in law. And then nobody can get in trouble because they're following the law and pretty much law and order person my whole life. And I like to talk to cops when I want to, but not when I don't want to. So never drive on the stuff. Make sure the kids are pounded in their head. Do not drive on this stuff because you'll wreck your nice little car your parents just bought you for graduation. So just you have to kind of make the kids understand the benefit of it and the benefit of not doing it when they shouldn't be. Like if you need to take it for sleep, you take a half a gummy, a half the dose and you're out for eight hours. And if you're ADHD, you're out for six hours. So basically that's what happens with me. And I think it's just really important that you're addressing this in a public forum so people have an opportunity to speak on it. Thank you so much.
Okay, anybody online?
We have no speakers online, Chair.
Get back to the board for comments, questions?
Sure, quick question. Quick question. So we talked a little bit about the cost of cannabis use disorder and folks identified with a primary diagnosis of cannabis use disorder. In those cases, is that, is cannabis used to sort of like their only diagnosis? Or is it possible that someone also, I mean, it seemed like there's a pretty strong correlation with people experiencing, especially youth, you know, chronic sadness, et cetera. Clearly there's some self-medication going on here. You know, I, right, yeah. So is, when, when we're treating folks with, with a primary diagnosis of cannabis use disorder, does that mean that's the only thing that they're dealing with?
Sure. I can start answering that question, but I would also see if Karen Kern might be willing to speak as well. But the data that we did show is for those who present with a primary diagnosis of cannabis use disorder, meaning that is what they came in for their main treatment need. And so, but that doesn't mean they might not have other issues. So Karen, would you like to?
Yeah. Hi, Karen Kern, Behavioral Health. The, we started out with a data set of actually looking at anybody who had any cannabis use to try to understand, you know, how many people are actually in treatment with a cannabis use disorder. So like Emily said, we only narrowed down to the primary diagnosis of the cannabis use disorder because secondary or tertiary would mean that there's something else that's the main diagnosis. So in that data set that Emily shared with the cost, it's the cost to the drug Medi-Cal organized delivery system for people with a primary diagnosis of cannabis use disorder, both adults and children. And then Emily pulled out the children, under transition age youth or children. They may have another secondary or tertiary diagnosis. But typically the cannabis would have been the primary thing that they came in with. So in other words, the cannabis use was impairing their functioning or impacting their lives in some way that they needed some sort of formal intervention.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. I mean, that was, and we have like that in terms of, I mean, costs. We've seen with inflation, the cost of providing care, like all things has continued to increase. So, and I noticed that you shared that data in terms of costs from year over year. I'd be interested to see if we have that and as far as just like number of patients treated to get a better sense of like how many people are actually impacted by this.
Yeah, that was also on the slide for those who are under.
Yeah, that was also on the slide for those who are under age of 25. And so in 22, 23, 162 clients were under the age of 25. And that's out of 536 total clients with that primary diagnosis. In 23, 24, 193 clients were under age of 25. And out of 572 total clients with the primary diagnosis. So from 22 to 23 to 23, 24, there was an increase of 20, I'm sorry, 31 under age of 25 who were presenting with primary diagnosis.
Great. That's helpful. I mean, I think it's super interesting to have this lens and have this information. You know, of course, as was already discussed earlier, it's interesting that we're seeing, you know, overall uses of use of cannabis among youth go down. And that's really encouraging and kind of speaks to the fact that, you know, our community cannabis has been prevalent for a long time. And I mean, in some ways, maybe we're seeing like the European effect that the more it becomes less, you know, I mean, you can go to a bar and drink at 16 in Europe, right? And so they have less issues with underage drinking maybe because it's just not as cool. So I think it's not as clear cut to say like, the more dispensaries or if we have cannabis loungers, more youth are going to be using. I mean, again, we've seen with legalization that nevertheless, youth rates have been declining. But I do think you've identified something important here, right? Which is, hey, THC rates are increasing and we're more likely to see some of these very serious impacts if youth are exposed to high potency THC. So great. Let's get that message out there. Let's have a targeted information campaign like this, that there are real side effects. You know, share some of these kinds of stories and side effects that people should be looking for as a way to maybe bring some of that concern level back up to a healthy amount where it should be. I mean, and I'll just end by saying, the reason we can even have this conversation is because we have a legal market. I mean, ultimately, I'd be all, I would definitely be interested in looking at a policy that perhaps taxes higher concentration THC products, right? Again, you can only do that when you have a legal market. If it's a black market, you know, we have no power of regulation.
Comments from the board, Supervisor Dserpa?
Thank you for this timely presentation. You've heard me say it before, but I've treated many young people in the emergency room, both here at Dominican and at Salinas Valley with hyperemesis disorder related to their cannabis use. Many of them have very high degrees of anxiety. In addition, some are suicidal. And it's very, very difficult to work with young people to get them to stop using cannabis once they're at that point. Because because truly they have at that point a dependency on the cannabis, but it's causing horrible, horrible symptoms as well. So we have, and sometimes because they're often suicidal as well, we've put them on a 50 and 50 and then sent them into treatment, which costs a lot of money to counties. So anyway, thank you. Thank you Supervisor Martinez for requesting this item. I'm sorry, I do feel like it should have been ordered, should have been the first presentation for us on the agenda today. So thank you for all the good work. We appreciate it.
Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you, our Health Services team for bringing this forward. You know, as somebody who was a partner with HSA on behalf of, when I was working at Compass Community Services, I also saw firsthand the impact of substance use disorder on children and the struggles that we have as a network to treat them, whether that's, you know, effective community engagement, workforce challenges, budget shortfalls. You know, it's a, it's a real challenge that our families and community are facing, particularly in the southern part of our county. And we certainly will, will need to rely on the information that you're bringing forward to help advise on our next steps. It's clear to me, you know, maybe I'll start off by saying, you know, I have no intent on re-litigating the legalization of cannabis. Like that is not at all where I'm coming from as a county supervisor. I feel like my role is to bring forward all of the information when we're making public policy so we can make the most comprehensive and thoughtful decision moving forward. It's like getting to look at all parts of the apple before you take a bite of the apple. And so that's why I wanted to bring this forward as we talk about things like onsite consumption in retailers or in farms, because this is all part of the same conversation at the end of the day. One thing that I really appreciated about your report is there is, you know, a great deal of prevention work recommended in the report related to education, training, justice programming and other aspects. And these would involve our state regulatory agencies, schools, justice agencies, health, nonprofits, parent groups and our cannabis industry. And so the question for me then is, you know, with all of the stakeholders, how do we go about addressing these recommendations without establishing like a massive task force on cannabis use? Because I don't feel prepared to make that motion today because of so many limitations and resources and wanting to have time to really think through it. So I am prepared to make a motion and a next step that might help us start to gather information about the position of our partners. So that way we can then learn and inform our next steps. Because I think you provided some really great recommendations. I don't want them to just sit on a shelf. Were you going to say something? So I move the recommended actions with the following additional direction for the CIO to share this report inclusive of the evidence-based recommendations with the County Office of Education, Public School Superintendents, Law Enforcement Agencies, elected state office holders, cannabis permit holders and our county's youth advisory task force, requesting that they share input to the county by April 30th. And for the CIO to gather that input and provide it in a report back to the board no later than our June 24th Board of Supervisors meeting with recommendations on any county action that could be taken as a result of the input.
A second.
We have a, sorry, we have a motion from Supervisor Martinez and a second from Supervisor Dserpa. There's no more comment.
I'm not prepared to support the additional recommendation. I'll explain why. First of all, I think the report itself, there were a few inconsistencies that were pointed out. I mean, citations that were just to the wrong information as well as, I mean, if you really want to dig into like the information that we're sharing, I don't think this report is quite ready. I mean, even there's, you know, pushback on well, has in California, has the level of THC really been as low as that in 1995? You know, we've, you know, had higher potency cannabis in California for a long time as compared to, for example, Ohio. I mean, I could go through line by line, but I don't think that the report is quite ready for primetime, if you will. And furthermore, I mean, if Supervisor Martinez, if you want to go do this work and talk to these other agencies and jurisdictions, you're welcome to. I don't feel like we need to like mount a crusade. I mean, look into these policies and bring them back to the board. I agree. It's an important topic. I think we've gotten some good ideas here. But I'm just not prepared to turn it into, you know, this massive campaign at this time.
So I think my concern is having to do with staff time. I think we've got limited bandwidth and we have, we have a huge crisis facing us with immigration and obligatory rights with our current administration that we're going to be working on. And some, you know, potential budget deficit with this, with our departments. And so that's concerning for me. But if there's no further comment, we could do roll call vote.
Yeah, I think in response to Supervisor Koenig, this is coming from a place of activating our partners and sharing information with them so that way collectively we can move towards a response. We know that there's a problem. We, the county is advancing public policy that may make the problem worse based on some of the policies that were approved today. And, and really at this point, it's not much of a resource issue for the county to simply ask our partners if they have any input on particularly the evidence-informed recommendations. So even if we wanted to perhaps pull out the science and the data in the report, but really share with them the section that's, you know, how to support our schools, our law enforcement, you know, our media campaigns. And, you know, hear their, their feedback on how we might partner with them on any of these, then we can decide what to do with it. And if we came back on June 24th, the board can decide if we want to task the staff with more work or attach the resources with that.
So any other, further, I mean, board comment?
Staff that they might suggest.
Oh, yeah.
So we have existing coalitions where we could begin that kind of partnership and that kind of assessment of for input. So in terms of staff resource, I think it would be relatively reasonable to accomplish this. And this is part of the work that is also inclusive of the assessment that I mentioned during my presentation that the agency is embarking on really related to broader substance use related topics. And if there are any, I want to also address Supervisor Koenig's, your concerns. If there were any citations that were not clear or any inaccuracies, we're happy to amend the report to make sure that it is accurate. But we would love to know what those were. Thank you.
So we do have a motion and a second and we take roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
No.
Martinez?
Aye.
Dserpa?
Aye.
Hernandez?
No. Motion fails with two dissenting votes from Supervisor Koenig and Hernandez.
I'll move the recommended actions.
Accept report. All second. So we have a motion from Supervisor Koenig and second from Hernandez.
And it includes directing the Health Services Agency and Cannabis Licensing Office to continue collaboration towards prevention of underage cannabis use.
Accepted. We have the original motion with this report. If we can have a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Dserpa?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes. You're on the seat. Next, we have agenda item number 12, consider and discuss qualifications of selected applicants for Measure Q's Citizens Oversight Committee. I'll turn it over to Elisa Benson, Assistant CEO.
Good afternoon, everyone. I promised to keep this very quick. This report back is really about a direction from the board at the January 27th meeting to create an integrated matrix of the nominees that you all have put forward for consideration for the Measure Q Citizen Oversight and Advisory Committee. I am just, I'm not going to go through this slide deck, but I am going to ask Juliette to just go to the matrix, which is, God, that sounds like a sci-fi. Just so you have that in front of you, this is really for you to have the opportunity to see who is being considered by each of the districts. Next steps after this will be for each of your offices to select your final nominee. And then those will be part of the appointment, the package of appointments that you all will consider on March 25th along with the nominations from our city partners. So with that, I'm just going to leave this up for you all to take a look at and discuss as you feel appropriate. And then that's the end of our staff report for today.
Let me take it out to the public first. Is there anyone here that wishes to address on this issue?
Good afternoon. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I did apply. My name's not there and that's all right. I understand. But there is one person, Mr. Dennis Webb, that is nominated twice for both District Two and District Five. So how will, how is this all going to work? I, I listened to your discussion about this earlier when the whole thing came up some time ago. And I share your confusion. How is this going to work? How are you going to decide Supervisor Dserpa if you choose Dennis Webb? Or if Supervisor Martinez chooses Dennis Webb? And also I really do not think it is appropriate to have a supervisor analyst on this committee. I don't think that's right, no matter how well qualified they are. And I think Sandy Brown is great, but I don't think a supervisor's analyst should be on a committee like this. So I look forward to seeing how this all pans out. I'm happy to see a number of fire officials on this because that was a big issue for this measure. And I want to see some fire vegetation projects approved with this money. And I want to see some public public noticing for these meetings so that the public is at the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, board and supervisors. My name is Eric Lombardo. I'm commenting on behalf of the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County. Just want to say thank you to the board and staff, the CIO's office, Department of Parks, OR3 for their work standing up this committee. I believe it's going to really shape up to be an important group for the implementation of Measure Q. We are very supportive at the Land Trust of kind of a speedy formation of the Community Oversight Advisory Board, Citizens Oversight Advisory Board. But also with a focus on a diverse set of personal and professional backgrounds to be selected on the board. We do agree with a focus on fire resiliency, but also a focus on water resiliency, parks and open space and public access and biodiversity. So our hope is that the advisory board that is seated will feature folks with expertise in all of those subjects. So thanks to each of you supervisors for your work on this. And we look forward to seeing the advisory board being stood up and participating in the public process that follows. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online?
Moment, chair. We have no speakers online.
With that, I'll bring back board for questions, comments. I'll start to my left with Supervisor Koenig.
Just a question for the nominees from the cities. Do they, are they just like thoroughly unqualified as far as the different categories or did you not rate them?
That question. So what we'll be doing is when each of the, we are, we are trusting, we inform the cities of the requirements. And that when they went through their own processes, that they had to make sure they were meeting the requirements under the measure. When they forward those names to us as a final selection, we are contacting them and having them fill out the county application. So we are collecting that information as well. Did not have that at the time of this, this writing of this report, but we will definitely have that available as necessary on the 25th.
Thank you.
Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you. Thank you to the staff for putting together this report. Just in case folks in the public weren't aware, because of the Brown Act, the supervisors cannot discuss how we intend to vote or who we're putting forward prior to these public meetings, which is why we asked to have a process where folks submitted nominees so we can see each other's nominees and try to have the most transparent process that we can, which is very difficult due to the Brown Act. And try to have the most well-rounded and diverse selection for the co-op. So I appreciate this process. It's a little unusual. I apologize to the challenges to the staff for trying to figure out how to create this. But for me, I have found it really helpful to see this and it'll help inform my decision as I put forward one nominee. inform my decision as I put forward one nominee. And of course, I want to just express my gratitude to all of the amazing, talented, and committed applicants for the co-op. Whether or not your name is on here, we had just incredible applicants to choose from, and it really shows the interest in, from our community on this topic. And I look forward to engaging the community throughout the course of this funding stream and this process. So I'm ready to do a motion unless, just throw that out there.
Do we have any public, any other comment from Supervisor D'Esirpa, and then we'll bring it?
Yeah, I would echo what Senator Martinez said about the applicants. Thank you, Becky, for your interest and for your application. The two people that I put forward have two things in common. One thing is, they're both very well-versed in forest health. One has a PhD from Colorado State and works in our ag extension on forests in particular. And the other one is one of the family members of Big Creek Lumber, who has a degree in forestry, and has also been the president of the Farm Bureau. So both of these gentlemen have a keen awareness of the importance of preservation of agricultural land, which is also something that's very important to me. And so that's the reason I put those two forward, because I thought they were, you, both of them uniquely qualified. I'm not sure how to make a choice between these two. So that will come later. But anyway, thank you. Thanks for everybody who applied, and who had an interest in this important committee.
I also want to thank all the staff for their presentation, and the Measure Q Committee as well for all their work on this. You know, it was, you're right, Supervisor D'Esirpa, it was difficult to, you know, choose our, our three applicants. It was difficult to choose from all the folks that we had applied for this position. So I'm just, and it's going to be a difficult choice between mine. You know, I got one that's, probably has a high score and all the rubric out of everybody. And collectively, I think I got the highest score between all of them. So it's, makes it a difficult choice for me. But, you know, we'll figure it out. We'll see what else, what other commissions we got for these highly qualified people. That's it for my comment. Supervisor Martinez will bring it back to the board for entertaining motion.
I move to accept and file the report to, the report to consider and discuss qualifications of selected applicants for the Measure Q Citizens Oversight Advisory Committee, and move for all supervisors to submit one nominee from the nominees they put forth today, so that the board can vote to approve these at the March 25 meeting.
Second?
We got a motion from Supervisor Martinez, and a second from Supervisor Koenig. Can we take a roll call vote?
Absolutely.
Supervisor D'Esirpa?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We have more items? Is that it? I conclude our meeting. Meeting adjourned.